Thank you very much. I'm Ian Nemirov. This is the April 28, 2021 meeting of the City of Edina Planning Commission. We're conducting it remotely. Well, hopefully, everyone is... We're all looking forward to getting back into person, some in-person meetings sometime in the, hopefully, not too far future. We're still conducting meetings remotely for health reasons. We have several public hearings tonight. I'll have special instructions for the public hearings when they come up. But otherwise, including regarding how to call in and how we consider matters. Otherwise, welcome to tonight's meeting. And at this point, if I could ask Liz Olsen of the city's planning department to do a roll call. That'd be great.
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
Here.
Commissioner Berube?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
Commissioner Bartling? I'm sorry, Commissioner Bartling? I can see her. Commissioner Elkhair?
Here.
Commissioner Agnew?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
I'm here, but I can't get unmuted. I'm here, but I can't mute.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartling. Chair Nemirov.
Thank you. The meeting agenda was posted on Friday. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
There, it's working now. Now let's go celebrate.
Right. If there are any changes, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda is submitted.
Second. Thank you, Commissioners Berube and Strauss. Ms. Olsen, could you do a roll vote for approval of the agenda?
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Elkhair?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov.
Next on tonight's agenda then is to approve the minutes from our last meeting on April 14. Has everyone had a chance to review them? Are there any changes or questions?
Chair Nemirov, I do have a change that I think we need to make. And this was under the motion for the public hearing C, which was for 6222 Brayburn Circle.
Thanks.
So if you read that, it's a little confusing regardless. It says, Commissioner Berube, move that the planning commission recommend of the requested variance to allow an increase from six to 10. We did not approve an increase from six to 10. So it either needs to say we did not recommend. I think what we were doing was denying the variance. Or denying the accommodation.
I think you just need to add the word denial. I think you just need to add the word to denial after recommend. And then it works.
Recommend denial. Because I think the wording was accommodation. And perhaps it was that wording because we were talking about people who were defined as handicapped. And so maybe there was different verbiage. But either way, it's incorrect.
Ms. Olsen, does that make sense to you? You see what Commissioner Berube is referring to?
Yes, I will update those minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good catch. Are there any other comments or questions regarding the minutes? I just had one small one. I kind of, you know, maybe go through it for... Well, I'll give you my comment in item 6B, sketch 4630 France Avenue. On page it's four and five, there's some bullets. On page five, it just says lakes, roof decks, four. And you know, I assume that's a typo. That number four is a typo. This is nowhere near the materiality of the item Commissioner Berube raised. But maybe just check, see if there's anything else like that. I'm sure no one has, you know. Otherwise, are there any other questions or comments? Or is there a motion for approval?
I move to approve the minutes as modified.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioners Miranda and Berube. Ms. Olsen, could you do a roll vote, please?
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Elkhair?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov.
Aye. Well, and that takes us to 7:07 in our first public hearing of the night, which is a front yard setback variance at 4248 Alden Drive. And first appearing for the city is Emily Bodicker, Assistant City Planner. Welcome, Emily. Good evening.
Thank you, Chair. Let's see here. 4248 Alden Drive is located on the northwest corner of Alden Drive and Morningside Road. The existing home on the lot is a two-story home that was built in 1914 that's oriented towards Alden Drive. The applicant intends to tear down the existing home and rebuild a new two-story home that's also oriented towards Alden Drive. The lot is roughly 50 feet by 200 feet and is a corner lot that requires two front yard setbacks. The required front yard setbacks are equal to the existing front yard setbacks on the homes on either side or the average of the block. The existing house has a non-conforming setback of 10.2 feet along Morningside Road. The average setback of the homes located west of the subject property is 21.3 feet. The applicant is requesting a 6.3-foot variance from that 21.3-foot requirement and is proposing a 15-foot setback along the south property line adjacent to Morningside Road. With the exception of the front yard setback along Morningside Road, the proposed project meets all of the city's zoning requirements. The engineering department has reviewed the application tonight and has included a memo in your packet. As you know, Minnesota statute and the Edina zoning ordinance require that certain conditions are satisfied in order to approve a variance. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 zoning district and complies with the city's zoning standards with the exception of the required front yard setback along Morningside Road. This lot has two required front yard setbacks, which greatly affect the buildable area due to the narrow width of the lot. The circumstances are unique to the subject property and are not self-created by the applicant. The width of the lot and the limitations of the required setbacks are not common to every similarly zoned lot or R1 property in the city. Granting the variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The proposed front yard setback is similar to the setback of the existing home and the project complies with all the other cities' zoning requirements. So tonight's staff's recommendation is to approve a 6.3-foot front yard setback variance for a new home at 4248 Alden Drive, based on the findings and conditions outlined in the staff report. And with that, I can take any questions. Otherwise, Scott Bousin with Great Neighborhood Homes is also on the call and he can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Bodicker. Do any members of the planning commission have... Hi, Mr. Bousin. If you can just wait just one moment, we'll get to you in just a moment. But do any members of the planning commission have any questions for staff?
I have a quick one.
Hi, Commissioner Strauss. Hello.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Emily, we looked at this site previously, should we not?
Yes, there was a variance application that was submitted in June of 2020.
Could you perhaps just highlight what changes were made that is being represented?
So there's a different applicant. The applicant is different, so it's a different plan, different house plan. Based on memory, that house was oriented towards Alden Drive. So the garage faced Alden Drive. That applicant used, instead of using the average of the block for the properties to the west, they used the property directly adjacent to the west. So there was a greater setback variance requested at that time.
Okay. And if my memory was, was it the issue with the drive coming out to Alden on the previous application? Where was the impact of traffic on Alden? Was that? I'm just trying to recollect.
Yeah, there was some concerns about the garage facing Alden Drive. The rest of the homes off of Alden don't have garages that, you know, were facing directly to that extent. There's also some questions on the massing of the house that was presented at that time, the size.
Okay. Thank you, Emily.
Any further questions for staff?
I have a question. This is...
Hello, Commissioner Berube.
Yeah, thank you. So they're requesting a 15-foot setback from the front. Is, or I'm sorry, on Morningside. And do I understand correctly that there isn't a definition for the setback on the front from the city, but we're just taking the average of the houses along the street? And that's how you come to what the average is?
Yep. The required setback is either to match the home adjacent to the property that faces Morningside Road or the average of the block. In this case, there is two properties to the west. So the 21.3-foot setback is the average of those two front yard setbacks.
Gotcha. Okay. Which, okay. Thank you very much.
Any other commissioners with any questions for staff?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, hi, Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you. So I guess, you know, not, I guess, the clarifying question, but also just in case neighbors are tuning in and want to be clear here. So the house that is currently there has a setback that basically intrudes into the... Well, not public, it's closer to the street than what's proposed here, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this is, you know, what would be about five feet from that.
Correct. The existing house has a setback of 10.2 feet and the applicant is proposing a 15-foot setback on the south side, adjacent to Morningside.
This is a good image, but sometimes, you know, it's overlaid over the existing survey. So just want to be clear with understanding that. And then you showed the one aerial.
Yes.
Informative where if you go two houses to the west, that house is awfully close to the street as well. This isn't creating something that looks out of the ordinary compared to its neighbors, at least from how much it comes close to the sidewalk and the street. So I just want to be clear there. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Bodicker? I had one clarifying. Oh, hi. Who is speaking? Commissioner Agnew.
Thank you. So I did go back and review, obviously, the meeting that we had about this about a year ago, as well as the city councils. So just to reiterate, right? And I'm saying this, one, to make sure I'm understanding it correctly, but then to make sure everyone else is on the same page, right? So I think that this went through a couple of iterations or a couple of different motions on the table when we were considering this. And it ultimately was approved by the planning commission last year. And then it went to the city council. And at the city council, that's where it was rejected. And so at that time, it was really about the large driveway and the large garage facing Alden. And it was the impacts to that character of the neighborhood. And so just making sure I'm understanding this all correctly, then they kind of went back to the drawing board because it was rejected. And then this is the proposal that we have in front of us. Is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes. That variance back in 2020 was approved by the planning commission. It was appealed to the city council and ultimately, the city council denied the variance application or the variance request. This has, there's a different applicant. It's a different applicant for tonight's project. So for the project in front of you, it's not the same applicant as the applicant that was proposing that plan at that time.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any further questions for Ms. Bodicker? So I have a clarification. So there's been a little discussion here about the previous application for variance. So the variance last time was for, I believe, 11 feet, was a setback variance. It was not, it didn't, the variance did not have to do with the garage, did not have to do with the massing. The variance was the setback, which I believe was 11 feet. Versus this time, it's 15 feet. The issues with the garage and the massing were issues raised by the planning commission as requirements in order to grant the variance. Now, as stated, it was denied, the variance was denied by council. But the issue, the reason why it became, why it came before the planning commission was not because of the garage or the massing. It was because of the setback that we're looking at. It was a similar setback variances we're looking at right now. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. The difference is this setback is farther from Morningside Road than the past, the previous one. Is that correct, Ms. Bodicker?
Yes, I believe the applicant at that point in time used the property directly to the west. And I think the request was for an 18-foot variance. But it was the setback from the property line, I believe, was around 11 feet.
Yeah, I think they were, I think they were looking for, yeah, 11 feet set. And so the last time, they were looking for an 11-foot setback. This time, looking for a 15-foot setback. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Any other questions? I was going to get the applicant up. Well, Mr. Bousin, welcome. Hello, we look forward to hearing from you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, well, thank you for taking this item up for consideration. We're very excited about this project. You know, we reviewed in detail the previous variance request that was submitted. And we had held several neighbor meetings with the adjacent neighbors and we sent out the neighbor invitation, not only to homes within 500 feet, but also we called the feedback comments and people that were beyond 500 feet. We included them in the invitation as well. So we had a lot of good feedback, you know, neighbors. It's a very eclectic neighborhood. There are people that have lived there for 30 years. There's new families, you know, Morningside.
Mr. Bousin, you faded out just a moment ago. You were talking about the neighborhood and then...
Neighborhood.
Emily, can you hear him?
You know, mostly 50-foot, 200-foot lots of different home styles. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Good.
Went on a cellphone range, I think. Can you hear me now? So I left that on that, you know, it's a neighborhood of eclectic home styles and families of different life stages. And so I got a lot of good feedback from, you know, people that were concerned about the previous application that went in. And, you know, the major points were they were dissatisfied with the previous applicant having the garage facing Alden. There was a lot of concern about, you know, the homes at Alden mostly had house fronts without garages. And they were concerned about the increased traffic on Alden. There's a school down Golden Years Monastery. It's a great school, that there was a lot of pickup traffic going to Alden. They were concerned about another garage door there. And the second thing was the, the previous applicant had the home setback closer to Morningside and it kind of loomed over the sidewalk there and just didn't have the character of other setbacks further. So we took all that into consideration and then we created a side-load garage on Morningside. And then we altered the setback. So we've got our, there's only about 20 feet that's at our requested setback, but the rest of the home jogs back. So we have one portion that's about 33 feet, one portion that's 23 feet. So you get a nice alternated setback. So the home won't just be a big wall at the setback facing Morningside. You get a nice jogging of the architecture and shadow lines and rooms for landscaping. So the feedback I got from the neighbors was positive. And we even met with the neighbor to the, to the north. It was a gentleman that I believe has had some, hasn't been in the home. He's had some issues, some health issues. He was very concerned about his trees. So we set up the storm plan to have our highest point adjacent to where his closest tree is in the yard. So we don't have to dig into the root system in his trees there. So I think our stormwater plan will allow the mature trees that circle the property to be maintained. That's an important part of the character of that existing neighborhood there. So I think we got, I feel good about the feedback and that we really listened to people and we've got a good plan that not only will be, the new homeowner will be happy with, but also the neighbors will welcome.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bousin. Do any members of the planning commission have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Well, there's no requirement. We have questions. We, Mr. Bousin, you've been with us before. You know, we may have more questions later. But if there are no questions for the applicant at that time, I'd like to open this up to a public, the first public hearing of the evening. And if there are people calling in that want to participate, here are the instructions. Call 1-800-374-0221. Enter conference ID 4363588 and press star one and be placed into queue. City staff then will admit you to the call. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. We'll try to let you know when you're approaching the three minutes and we'll let you know if you do hit the three minutes, at which time we'll ask you to conclude promptly. Also, if you do call in, you know, we ask if you can to not just repeat what everyone else said. If we get a bunch of calls and everyone says, "Well, I don't like the trees. I don't like the trees. I don't like the trees." Just an example, I'm not saying that's a niche reader. But it doesn't help us. We are looking for information, but if three people call and all say they don't like something, the same thing, it doesn't really help us get new information for our consideration. So now at this point, I will turn it over to staff and ask, do we have anyone waiting in line to speak?
Hey, Chair Nemirov, this is Dan Reese with Communications. It does look like actually our inter-call service may have gotten disconnected. I'm chatting with them right now. They are trying to dial back as fast as they can. So I would ask that we can wait a moment or two, possibly a minute or so, just to see that we can get them back connected.
Okay, thanks, Dan. You know, it's been a little more than a year since we started working, doing this online. And I, you know, we're still having, you know, the technical issues don't, will never go away. But boy, it sure feels a lot smoother than it did a year ago. It's like, who knew?
So, Mr. Chair, it does look like they are now reconnected. I don't know if you'd like to give those instructions one more time, just to make sure if there are any callers who are on the line you do want to...
Good idea. Good idea. Okay, so here again, here are the instructions if you want to call in. Call 800-374-0221. Enter conference ID 4363588 and press star one. And you have up to three minutes at that point and be placed into queue, of course. So Dan, let me, let us know if you get anybody.
We do, we do have one caller in queue, as I thought we might. So if the operator can please go ahead and unmute the line of Andy Warner. Once, once that happens, he can speak. I believe his line is now open if he would like, Mr. Warner would like to go ahead and speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Hello, Mr. Warner, is that who's calling?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can, okay, great. Yes, yes. This is Andy Warner. I live on Morningside, directly opposite the property. I want to make it quite clear this time, I'm speaking from my cell phone only. Previously, there was, you know, both at the, here, both for the planning commission hearing and at the city council, I was speaking on behalf of a large group of people. But specifically this time, I'm just speaking for myself. Previously, you know, we had said when we had issues with the previous variance request that, you know, we understood that the lot would likely require a variance for a modern house to be built. And I just wanted to call in to follow up on that and basically say, you know, don't, have no objections to this, to this variance request. I think the developer has, you know, tried to address the concerns that were previously raised by both the community and the commission, those being the massing and the curb cut. I think the result, the resulting house is a far better for both the community and frankly, for the homeowners. Makes much better use of light, makes much better use of the south-facing aspect. So I did just have one question though, which was about demolition, actually, which was, is there any check or process you go through for hazardous materials? Because, you know, having a house of the same vintage of the house will be demolished. I know we have asbestos and, you know, we got that remediated. You know, I'm just, so that's an open question. You don't have to answer it now, but if you're able to answer it after the other calls, I'd appreciate that. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Mr. Warner, and we'll get to your question at the conclusion of the calls. Thank you. Hi, Dan, are there any, any...
Several callers are still on the line. I don't know this particular public hearing. So I would encourage maybe about 30 seconds or so, just to let the delay catch up.
Good, good.
We have not had anyone else join the queue to comment, so I think you can go ahead and move forward.
All right, thank you, Dan. So at this point, we can close the public hearing then. For all people watching who only watch occasionally, we're going to, as you probably already gathered, we have a lot of voice votes and we're going to have a lot more of them tonight. That's just by law, how we have to do it to record who voted instead of just having yays and nays. So is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
I second.
Commissioners Berube and Agnew. Ms. Olsen, could you do a roll vote for that, please?
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Elkhair?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov.
So I just want to follow up on Mr. Warner's question. Mr. Bousin, did you hear Mr. Warner's question about processes for safe disposal of hazardous materials? Could you, you probably have something. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. Yes, it's a good, you know, the city of Indiana has got a really good process for creating accountability for disposal of environmental hazards. To get a demolition permit, we provide a survey of all environmental materials that were found in the home. And we also need to provide a certificate of abatement that shows that they've been removed before anything else taken out of the house. So, you know, Mr. Warner spoke to asbestos. So it's, it's the pipe insulation, sometimes some tile in the basement, the plenum on top of the furnace, sometimes under a sink. You'll find asbestos, which was a product that was used for insulation, but it is a environmental hazard. So that'll all get removed. We also remove bulbs, any other material that's in there. We provide a certificate to the city that shows that a licensed abatement company has removed those materials before they issue a demolition permit.
Thank you, Mr. Busen.
Thank you.
Planner Botticker, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? Does that cover it?
That covers it.
Okay, so that brings it up to the planning commission. So any further questions or comments or motions on this matter? Floor is ours. Commissioner Bartling, did you have something? I see you're off mute.
No, I was just getting ready to talk. Nothing special. Looks like Commissioner Strauss does though.
Hi, Jerry, Commissioner Strauss, thank you.
Yeah, I just had a quick comment. It's directed to the developer, Mr. Busen. It's clearly, I think, a result of his engagement with the neighborhood, which has sort of brought this project, I think. Though my recollection, I mean, I did approve the variance last time, but I do, I do recall the number of concerns from the people. I, as I remember, it was on Morningside. And it looks like those issues have been addressed and it's apparent that he did reach out and engaged. And I think that's sort of the template for how these things should, should be presented to the, to the neighborhood. So my compliments. I think it made a difference here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I will, I will talk now, I guess. But just moving on to, to me, I wasn't a part of that and I'm new. But I would have probably said a nay on a garage on Morningside, or Arden as well. It does not fit with the, with the character. On Morningside, though, however, it makes a lot of sense. And I think that architecturally, the design is appropriate in scale and meeting kind of how the neighborhood fits and on both streets. And I personally think that we should approve this. And I, I think it looks great. And the setback too, from 11 to 15, four feet seems small, but it, it's quite a bit in an easement on that corner. And I think it makes a big difference, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartling. Any other commissioners have any questions or anything like that? Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you. Just, you know, looking at the bigger picture here, try to do that when we can. You know, I see maybe the only drawback here is, you know, this is an old neighborhood and this is an old, smaller house that was likely affordable for someone and it's going away to make a bigger one, right? So with that being the, the main drawback that I see, you know, the advantage with approving this is a very thoughtful process that was embarked upon with this developer, this go around with a lot of community. It seems not just like interaction, but actual input that impacted how the house was shaped, how it was designed, like to every bit of articulation. And before this, and I, I might, I think I missed the one last summer, but what I was opposed to was just having space that was overlooking everyone's backyard. So having the garage on this side, if you, if you're looking north, south, like all those backyards are in a row. So having a garage on that side, to me, adds a better recipe for success with the neighbors here. And I support the variance as highlighted in staff report too, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Anyone else with any comments or motions or?
I have a.
Commissioner Berube? Oh, Commissioner Miranda, sure.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, in fact, last year I was the one who brought up the whole garage on, on Alden. And I think this is much improved, as, as other commissioners said, the, the process that they went through with listening to the feedback, both from the planning commission, even though it was approved. The funny thing about their approval was that there were like two factions, some who didn't approve the setback on Morningside and some didn't, who approved the garage on Alden. And so we couldn't get everyone to agree on the same thing. So we ended up approving it. But I'm glad it went to the city council. I'm glad they rethought it. And this project is way better than the one that was there before, both as commissioners have said, you know, because of the massing, the closest to the street and then the garage facing the other street. So I want to applaud the developer for doing a much, much better job than the previous one and the homeowners presumably. So this is, I would definitely move to approve this.
Commissioner Miranda, anyone else? Commissioner Berube?
I, I propose a motion that we approve the 6.3 foot front yard setback variance for the new house at 4248 Alden, subject to the findings outlined in the staff memo and subject to the conditions outlined in the staff memo.
I second.
Commissioner Berube has made a motion. Commissioner Bartling has seconded. Do any other commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Alkire, did you have any? I have brief comments. One is that I, I saw a comment from Better Together that was similarly positive from a neighbor who didn't like the first time and was positive this time. I applaud the developer, as other commissioners have said, for the process that was, that you ran this time. So if no one, anyone else has anything else, otherwise we'll turn over to Ms. Olson to do a roll vote. Ms. Olson, all yours.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda? Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Hey. Well, congratulations, Mr. Busen. Thank you very much for all you've run this process.
Thank you so much. Appreciate everybody's time.
Good luck. Well, that takes us to our second public hearing matter tonight, which is an, an appeal of an administrative decision of 5708 Woodland Lane. And appearing for the city is Assistant Planner Chris Socker. Welcome, Chris. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Actually, the floor will be for the appellant and, and city staff follows. And then we have the property owner and his attorney and the home buyers will be after city staff. So it will be the appellant, Nick Salas, and his neighbor, who is assisting in the first presentation.
Miss, welcome, Mr. Bruce Alice. Hello, Mr. Bruce Alice, or is anyone presenting with, who's presenting with Mr. Bruce Alice?
This is Liz Olson. I don't see Nick on the meeting at this time. He was on earlier.
Todd Karen, who is also a neighbor, he was going to assist and he was on the call as well, I believe.
Yes, I am on the call. I'm just giving Nick a quick text here to see if he's having some issues.
Mr. Karen, if Mr. Bruce Alice isn't available soon, will you be able to?
I, I certainly will, yeah. Let me, let's just, can we give him like 10 or 15 seconds? Because he, he does have the first part prepared and I've got the second. So it'll be, we can wait for about 30 seconds here and see if he can get back on.
Well, it looks like you're able to, to see his screen. Just must be audio issues.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, although you're echoing, you may need to turn off your, your own speakers.
Hang on one second. Is it any better?
Not really. Why, why don't you start?
Best if you hang up. It's best if you hang up your phone if you're on your computer now.
I, I, I'm not on my phone till I know, know.
Are your speakers on in your computer?
Apparently so. Can you hear me now? It's still echoing. Is it echoing?
Yes, it is still echoing.
Yeah. It, it's, it's not too, why don't we give it a shot? And if it gets too bad, we'll ask you to, we'll see if we can make some changes. Why don't you try, why don't you go forward and we'll see if we can handle it and we're hearing you, okay?
Okay. All right. Now, is that going?
Nick, there is an option, this is Liz. There is a separate call in number to the meeting that you were sent in the invitation. If you'd like to call separately and turn off your computer audio.
Sure.
Use your phone for audio. This is Liz. I will separately email that number to Nick now to make sure that he has that in front of him.
Yeah, this is Ian. If anyone else has their, if everyone else can just make sure that your microphone is on mute too, that, just in case.
What's the access code?
Nick, the access code is 1775984610.
Pound?
Yes. You can just press pound at this time again.
Okay. So now I'm on mute.
Then the proposed plan needs 3.15 foot, 3.15 foot variance. We measured 4.15 feet up on the split entry entrance before the house was demolished. We then placed the red line at the elevation 868.05 on the photo. You now have a perspective of where the garage and mudroom of the new home sits on the old home. The staff states the demolished home is not a split level because, and I quote, "front door was on the same level as the main living area." It followed that the first floor was that same floor containing the main living area. We've been told by the city in the property order, we can't display the plans to the public. We don't understand what is the purpose of a public hearing when the public can't see what is proposed. Nonetheless, we blocked the building plan images that follow. The city is claiming the door nearest the garage is the front door of the proposed house. This front door enters into the mudroom, not the main living area. The mudroom is about 175 square feet. How can staff claim the mudroom entrance is the front door when the front door is not on the same level of the main living area? Staff is not using the same front door criteria that it used on the demolished house or the proposed house. Staff report states, and I quote, "it followed that the first floor was the same floor containing the main living area." Unquote. The main living area is about 1,978 square feet and is where the kitchen, great room, et cetera are located. The first floor elevation containing the main living area is 871.72 per the definition staff used on the demolished house. The first floor elevation containing the main living area is 871.72 per the definition staff used on the demolished house. The first floor elevation containing the main living area is 871.72 per the definition staff used on the demolished house. Here is the survey submitted to the city in October or later, which states the first floor elevation is at 871.72. Here is the survey submitted to the city in October or later, which states the first floor elevation is at 871.72. Here is how the front of the proposed home looks submitted to the city in October or later. Here is how the front of the proposed home looks submitted to the city in October or later. Here is the survey submitted to the city in January or later, which states the first floor elevation is at 868.05 now. Here is the survey submitted to the city in January or later, which states the first floor elevation is at 868.05 now. Here is how the front of the proposed house looks submitted to the city in January or later. Here is how the front of the proposed house looks submitted to the city in January or later. On November 18th, I emailed questioning how based on the plan submitted to the city showing a 4.62 On November 18th, I emailed questioning how based on the plan submitted to the city showing a 4.62 first floor elevation difference, it, why it did not need a variance. first floor elevation difference, it, why it did not need a variance. And then on November 18th at 3:52 PM, about an hour and a plus later, And then on November 18th at 3:52 PM, about an hour and a plus later, the assistant planner writes to the builder and states the survey shows the first floor elevation of 871.72. the assistant planner writes to the builder and states the survey shows the first floor elevation of 871.72. Basically, non-compliant needs a variance. Further asked, and I quote, Basically, non-compliant needs a variance. Further asked, and I quote, "Would you please have your designer state clarify the new first floor elevations?" "Would you please have your designer state clarify the new first floor elevations?" Looking at the city approved plant, building plans, Looking at the city approved plant, building plans, the first floor is identified at the 871.72 elevation, the main living area entrance. the first floor is identified at the 871.72 elevation, the main living area entrance. There's a reason the plan's 871.72 elevation is labeled There's a reason the plan's 871.72 elevation is labeled that way as the first floor. In a two and a half story house where the half level consists only of an entry mud area that way as the first floor. In a two and a half story house where the half level consists only of an entry mud area and the two floors above of similar ceiling heights and square footage are the main living areas of the house, and the two floors above of similar ceiling heights and square footage are the main living areas of the house, the top level is known as the second floor and the main living level directly below it is known as the first floor. the top level is known as the second floor and the main living level directly below it is known as the first floor. This is standard correct labeling of floors by architects. This is standard correct labeling of floors by architects. The front elevations submitted to the city are nearly identical except for the siding. The front elevations submitted to the city are nearly identical except for the siding. The two surveys submitted to the city, The two surveys submitted to the city, the proposed residence identical, the only difference is the stated first floor elevation. the proposed residence identical, the only difference is the stated first floor elevation. One item changed, only one item changed. The first floor entrance changed from One item changed, only one item changed. The first floor entrance changed from the main living area front door the main living area front door to the mudroom door near the garage. to the mudroom door near the garage. This is in direct contradiction to the how the first floor was determined by staff on the 5708 demolished house. This is in direct contradiction to the how the first floor was determined by staff on the 5708 demolished house. When we asked the assistant planner, how could the building permit be approved without a variance? When we asked the assistant planner, how could the building permit be approved without a variance? The response we got back is, the existing original home constructed in 1952 is a rambler The response we got back is, the existing original home constructed in 1952 is a rambler and is classified by the assessing department as a rambler. and is classified by the assessing department as a rambler. Well, that answer seemed odd to us, so we searched the code for the word assessor. Well, that answer seemed odd to us, so we searched the code for the word assessor. There are references to the assessor, but none of which have anything to do with the assessor establishing the house type. There are references to the assessor, but none of which have anything to do with the assessor establishing the house type. Nor is there any reference in the code that states the Realtor MLS establishes the house type. Nor is there any reference in the code that states the Realtor MLS establishes the house type. The code always governs. The code always governs. The proposed house needs a 3.15 foot variance if demolished house is a split level The proposed house needs a 3.15 foot variance if demolished house is a split level or a 3.62 variance if demolished house is not a split level. or a 3.62 variance if demolished house is not a split level. Here's how the proposed house, superimposed on the image of the demolished house to scale, clearly higher than one foot Here's how the proposed house, superimposed on the image of the demolished house, to scale, clearly higher than one foot and requiring a variance. and requiring a variance. The rendering that was included in the packet is not inaccurate. The rendering that was included in the packet is not inaccurate. It's not an accurate depiction of the proposed house in this neighborhood as the lot is not flat by any stretch of the imagination. It's not an accurate depiction of the proposed house in this neighborhood as the lot is not flat by any stretch of the imagination. And now I will turn it over to Todd to finish up. We have a few more slides and go ahead, Todd. And now I will turn it over to Todd to finish up. We have a few more slides and go ahead, Todd.
Okay, uh, is it okay if I begin now? Okay, uh, is it okay if I begin now?
Please go ahead. Please go ahead.
Okay, all right, it's making sure that I was being heard. Um, okay, so if I can, um, share. Okay, all right, making sure that I was being heard. Um, okay, so if I can, um, share. Okay, so can my screen be seen at this point? Okay, so can my screen be seen at this point? The supplemental discussion, okay. The supplemental discussion, okay. So, um, the, this, the second part is really just a little bit more addressing the, the mass and scale issue So, um, the, this, the second part is really just a little bit more addressing the, the mass and scale issue, that we have some concerns about. um, that we have some concerns about. Understanding that that might not be specifically what the planning commission is looking at, Understanding that that might not be specifically what the planning commission is looking at, but, um, we just wanted to go through three or four slides to, to give you some idea of, um, of what that does look like. but, um, we just wanted to go through three or four slides to, to give you some idea of, um, of what that does look like. Obviously, as you know, all, um, Obviously, as you know, all, um, all properties must all properties must uh, meet the height, mass and scale of the neighborhood. uh, meet the height, mass and scale of the neighborhood. It's, uh, it's our belief, um, that the proposed structure does not. It's, uh, it's our belief, um, that the proposed structure does not. This is just, uh, again, repeating the slide that Nick had, uh, shown, showing the Um, this is just, uh, again, repeating the slide that Nick had, uh, shown, showing the to scale elevation of the proposed structure at, uh, 5708. to scale elevation of the proposed structure at, uh, 5708. And so this, uh, And so this, uh, this is just showing that the first floor elevation of the proposed structure this is just showing that the first floor elevation of the proposed structure, um, on this red line is on this red line is already, uh, just over three feet higher than, uh, the neighboring property, um, at 5704. already, uh, just over three feet higher than, uh, the neighboring property, um, at 5704. Uh, and then there, there's the issue with the fill in the floodplain, um, and, uh, Uh, and then there, there's the issue with the fill in the floodplain, um, and, uh, you can see on the left, the amount of fill that's going to be required to, you can see on the left, the amount of fill that's going to be required to, to be able to build the structure there. Um, and, uh, to be able to build the structure there. Um, and, uh, it's, it's just going to be really out of place and character with the rest of the homes in the neighborhood, it's, it's just going to be really out of place and character with the rest of the homes in the neighborhood, which there are only three, which makes us a very unique, uh, neighborhood to build in. which there are only three, which makes us a very unique, uh, neighborhood to build in. Um, this is just a reference back to the, um, the issues that Um, this is just a reference back to the, um, the issues that at 5712 that the city council rejected plans to build the home there for the same mass and scale reasons. at 5712 that the city council rejected plans to build the home there for the same mass and scale reasons. And you can see the elevation lines, um, for, is this second white line here that shows where the Um, and you can see the elevation lines, um, for, is this second white line here that shows where the first floor elevation would be on the proposed structure. first floor elevation would be on the proposed structure. It's actually higher, um, than what the proposed structure that the city council already, uh, rejected the plans for It's actually higher, um, than what the proposed structure that the city council already, uh, rejected the plans for based on, um, the mass and scale for the neighborhood. based on, um, the mass and scale for the neighborhood. And then this, this slide is, is just a, is a quote from, uh, some of the city council members about the mass and scale issue. And then this, this slide is, is just a, is a quote from, uh, some of the city council members about the mass and scale issue. Mayor Hovland stated that it's out of character with the neighborhood. Mayor Hovland stated that it's out of character with the neighborhood, um, And you can glance through those and you have these, so you've already had a chance to, um, and you can glance through those and you have these, so you've already had a chance to, um, to review these, um, council member stewards, so that it looks like there's an extra story in there that it's, it's just, to review these, um, council member stewards, so that it looks like there's an extra story in there that it's, it's just, it's just too tall for the neighborhood. it's just too tall for the neighborhood. And then these, these are just some, uh, aerial shots of, uh, the elevation of where the, if you're looking out And then these, these are just some, uh, aerial shots of, uh, the elevation of where the, if you're looking out the second story window of the proposed structure, this is what it looks like looking, uh, north, um, in the neighborhood. the second story window of the proposed structure, this is what it looks like looking, uh, north, um, in the neighborhood. And then this is looking, uh, across the street to the east. And then this is looking, uh, across the street to the east. And then this is just a reference to, the red line is where the, um, And then this is just a reference to, the red line is where the, um, the first floor would be on the proposed structure, which is essentially at the, at the second floor height, um, of the property to the east. the first floor would be on the proposed structure, which is essentially at the, at the second floor height, um, of the property to the east. Uh, and that's it. So, uh, that's the presentation on why we really believe that this property needs to, uh, have a variance, Uh, and that's it. So, uh, that's the presentation on why we really believe that this property needs to, uh, have a variance, um, to be built as the plans have been submitted to the city. um, to be built as the plans have been submitted to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Bosales. Mr. Karen, do any members of planning commission have questions for the appellant? Thank you, Mr. Bosales. Mr. Karen, do any members of planning commission have questions for the appellant?
Chair number of I do, this is David Alkire. Chair number of I do, this is David Alkire.
Hi, Mr. Commissioner Alkire. Hi, Mr. Commissioner Alkire.
Uh, Mr. Karen, thank you for joining us this evening. I just wanted to follow up on Uh, Mr. Karen, thank you for joining us this evening. I just wanted to follow up on one of the things that you mentioned in your presentation. You mentioned the problem of the fill. one of the things that you mentioned in your presentation. You mentioned the problem of the fill. Can you say a little more about what the, the, the problem exactly is with adding fill to that property? Can you say a little more about what the, the, the problem exactly is with adding fill to that property?
Yeah, I'm unmuted. Yeah, the, the, the issue is, number one, this, this hole called the sack always floods. Yeah, I'm unmuted. Yeah, the, the, the issue is, number one, this, this hole called the sack always floods. Uh, the, the, um, the degree to which it floods is different all the time. Uh, the, the, um, the degree to which it floods is different all the time. But there is always that issue, but I fully understand that the property is in compliance with, um, the, uh, watershed district. But there is always that issue, but I fully understand that the property is in compliance with, um, the, uh, watershed district. So that's not, um, particularly a concern. The issue with the fill is just the volume of it. So that's not, um, particularly a concern. The issue with the fill is just the volume of it. Um, and what it does to the, um, to, to the scale of looking at the houses around it. Um, and what it does to the, um, to, to the scale of looking at the houses around it. All the other houses are really down at street level and when you bring in however much fill that's going to require, All the other houses are really down at street level and when you bring in however much fill that's going to require, it just, uh, it speaks to the, the mass and scale of what the property, um, as designed would look like. it just, uh, it speaks to the, the mass and scale of what the property, um, as designed would look like.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the appellant? Thank you. Any other questions for the appellant? So I have a, I have several questions, which I'm trying to decide the right time. So I have a, I have several questions, which I'm trying to decide the right time. I have a question for assistant planner Acker, uh, two, two questions. I have a question for assistant planner Aker, uh, two, two questions. Uh, one is, is the city planning to make a presentation tonight? Uh, one is, is the city planning to make a presentation tonight? Or, or is the plan just let the appellant speak and then have the developer, the homeowner speak? Or, or is the plan just let the appellant speak and then have the developer, the homeowner speak?
Um, the city does have a presentation. Um, the city does have a presentation.
Oh, when would you like to make that? Oh, when would you like to make that?
I would go after, um, the appellants. I would go after, um, the appellants.
Okay, all right. Um, then I don't have any other questions. Does anyone else have any questions for the appellant? Okay, all right. Um, then I don't have any other questions. Does anyone else have any questions for the appellant? Commissioner Alkire? Commissioner Alkire?
Yeah, yeah, I just like, I had one other, uh, quick one, Chair. Yeah, yeah, I just like, I had one other, uh, quick one, Chair. Uh, this is for either appellant, I think. It, just to be clear on terms and terminology from your perspective, Uh, this is for either appellant, I think. It, just to be clear on terms and terminology from your perspective, your presentation, you- your presentation, you-
City planning, building inspections, assessing and the city attorney reviewed the former home and new home plans. It was the consensus that neither are split levered level dwellings and the new home plans were reviewed and conformed to code. A new home permit was issued on February 24th, 2021 and an appeal was received by the city on March 9th, 2021. So regarding the Woodland Lane claim of appeal, um, the, uh, appellant is claiming that the city issued the building permit without fully complying with the UDN's zoning ordinance. And that the former home can be considered, uh, nothing other than a split level dwelling. And that the lowest elevation of the entrance to the dwelling, which is at 863.9, um, sets where the new front, uh, first floor elevation would be and that it can't exceed one foot above or, uh, an elevation of 864.9. City staff does not agree with the appellant's interpretation of the zoning ordinance. Existing and former, and former home was a one-story rambler and the plan is for a two-story home. Neither are considered a split level dwelling. Previous home was a consist, consisted of a rambler built in 1952 and the existing or former home survey indicates that the first floor elevation was at 867.1 as highlighted. Assessing card on the former home indicates that the style of the home was a one-level rambler. So regarding the definitions in the zoning ordinance, a split level dwelling means a dwelling that has two or three stairs and two or four levels. Front entry is on the middle floor between two floors. Staff contends that the front entry of the former home is the upper door and is not between floors. Definition indicates that the front door opens in a foyer or entry area located in a wing off the main house. Staff contends that the front entry of the former home opens into the main house and not in a separate wing. Definition indicates from the front entry, a short flight of stairs leads up to the top floor and another short flight leads down. Staff contends that the front entry of the former home opens into the main house and does not have stairs or other levels. Staff contends the former home staircase access is one continual staircase access from the main floor to the basement and vice versa. The main floor is stacked directly above the basement with the staircase between them along the north garage wall. The staircase has a landing with an exterior door to the outside and a door to the garage. There are no other short flights of stairs accessing floors. Staircase is one continual staircase accessing the main floor to the basement. Going back to the definitions, if a split level dwelling unit is torn down and a new home is built, the first floor elevation of the dwelling unit being the lowest elevation of the entrance to the dwelling excluding entrance to the garage and entrances that do not face the street. Staff contends by definition, the former home is not a split level dwelling unit. Therefore, the lowest elevation of the entrance is not considered the first floor for establishing the first floor of the home. City did not determine that the first floor of the home is the small stairwell landing. Therefore, the city cannot require that the new house be no higher than one foot above the side stairwell landing. The first floor of the former house was higher than the stairwell landing and that set the standard for the new structure. So regarding the new home, the plans are for a two-story house with a full basement that have been reviewed and approved by building inspections, engineering and the planning department and deemed in full compliance with all requirements and zoning ordinances. This compliance table was, um, part of the staff report and I will just briefly cover it. Um, house has a 31.8 foot front yard setback, which is greater than the required city standard of 29.7 feet. The side setbacks meet the 10-foot side yard setback requirements. The rear yard setback or setback from the creek is greater than the 50-foot setback required. Building coverage is a little less than 23%, which, uh, maximum allowable is 25%. The overall building height is measured from average existing grade before the home is torn down. And that maximum is 37 feet, one inch. The proposed height of the building is at 36 feet, nine and three eighths inch. So regardless of where any of the floors are, the basement, the first floor, the second floor, the half story, if they're allowed, um, the overall height can be at 37 feet, one inch. Uh, the maximum allowable, uh, stories is two and a half stories for the house and the house is a two-story house. First floor elevation maximum height is 868.1 and it has been established by the architect that the proposed first floor elevation is at 868.05, which is actually a little less than the maximum allowed. So the proposed survey is showing the new home, highlighted in the box is where the, uh, building inspections plans examiners check to make sure that, uh, the plans that have been submitted actually do, um, add up to the proposed first floor elevation. So they start with the, um, top of foundation elevation, they add the sill plate, the floor trusses and the subfloor and that number should match what the, uh, builder or designer has indicated the first floor, uh, elevation will be and that it should not be any more than one foot above an existing first floor. And so in this instance, it, it, uh, did meet those requirements and it did match up to what the builder or designer had indicated. So this highlighted area on the survey indicates where the first floor elevation of the house has been established by the designer and it's at eight, at, at 860, 8.05, which is lower than, um, the maximum that's allowed. This is an exterior finishes rendering, which was supplied by the property owner and the applicant. And it indicates that the new first- And it indicates that the new first floor elevation was established here in the, beyond the entry area, and it continues to the first floor elevation of the rest of the house. And there's a second floor above. So regarding the new first floor, the zoning ordinance does not define the term first floor. For the purposes of the replacement home, the first floor was established by the architect of the new home, and it is not more than one foot above the former first floor. The architect established the new first floor elevation next with the remainder of the first floor up a set of steps, and with the full second floor above the first floor or main floor. So the new first floor includes that, that area that was established as the first floor elevation, but it also includes the area that is steps up from that area. Since there is no definition for first floor, and there's no, there's a prescribed location where the architect may establish the new first floor of the home. Interior floor plans may have varying floor levels on the main floor. Lack of a first floor definition allows for new home design opportunities that respond to individual property characteristics, such as former home type, grade changes of the property, or having to transition to a lower garage floor elevation or other main floor transitions. So regarding code ambiguity, to the extent that there's ambiguity in a document, it principles dictate that ambiguity is construed against it is construed against the person that has, I'm sorry. It is construed against drafter of the document or government entity propagating the law. City staff takes the position that there is not ambiguity in the city code sections governing the present case. However, to the extent that there is ambiguity in the city code, that ambiguity generally must be construed against the city's ability to regulate or limit the rights of the property owner, and in favor of the property owner's ability to exercise rights associated with their property. Staff's conclusion is that the former home was a one-story rambler, and the new home plan is a two-story home. Neither are considered a split level dwelling. New first floor is less than one foot above the former first floor, and the new home does not require a variance and complies with the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the planning commission uphold staff's administrative decision approval for building permit for a new home and for property located at 5708 Woodland Lane. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have. We also have Dave Kendall, the city attorney, present. And then after, we do have the property owner, Andy Porter, his attorney, David Schooler, and the home buyers are also present, and they may want to add some comments.
Thank you, Ms. Acker. Do any commissioners have questions for Ms. Acker?
Yes, Chair, I might have had one.
Commissioner Alkire?
Just the, the appellant's raised the matter of the variance request at 5712. Ms. Acker, do you have a, do you have a recollection of what that variance request was for?
That request had to do with the first floor elevation, so they needed a variance from that. There was also a new home designed beyond that, which was very similar to the one that was requested for a variance. That home established their new first floor elevation actually lower than, it was, it was a different home. It was a split entry home. So they had to establish their new first floor. They established it at a lower elevation, and then the city did not issue a permit for that. There were two plans. They didn't issue a permit for the second plan because they ran into some flood elevation issues and fill issues, and the basement was considered a floor, so it actually ended up being a three-story home instead of a two-story or two and a half story home. So the city couldn't issue a permit for that, and it went to court.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bartman?
Yes, first of all, I guess I'm a bit confused at why, how, why the, why you are feeling, so in the, I guess, agreement of the appellant, you are, I am fine with saying, I agree that it's not a split level, and there was just an house door that basically did nothing, but it was just on the garage, excuse me, garage level. So the main level was at 867.1 on the floor height, but then I'm getting, you're saying no, but then on the new house, you're allowing the lower level to be the main entry. And I would say I disagree with you on that. I would say that you'd have to, you're okay to call it not a split level, but then you've got to use that as the main floor level. And so I would say that that should be the number that we're going off of. And then not to allow that lower door, which is just a small little entry, no different than the existing house. The only difference I see in the floor plans of this is they have a second level, a true second level on the new house. And I guess that is my thoughts on that. And I do have a question, though. What is the, I assume there's a basement, since that's a code and they're not requiring a variant or getting a variance for that. What is the basement ceiling height?
I guess I don't know off the top of my head. I'm assuming it's probably at least eight and a half feet. I mean, that's generally.
Well, I would say that these developer homes have been 10 feet, nine feet, so they can get full heights, but I would, that's important for me to understand. Because to me, why is this house being raised so high? If it's true, to me, it is being raised four and a half or 4.62 feet, in my opinion, but so I'd like to know what the basement size is. And also, and I guess that's just my, that's my only question, other than what I've said.
Sure, and I, I believe that the, the property owner can answer that question as to the ceiling height of the basement from the basement floor?
We'll get to the property owner in just a moment. Any other commissioners with questions for Planner Acker?
Yes, I have a question for Planner Acker.
Sounds like Commissioner Berube. Welcome.
Thank you. So this is in a floodplain. Regardless of the argument of whether it's a split level, we have different regulations, or at least in the past, we've made different exceptions for houses in floodplains, correct? And remind me what those are, because, because it follows different rules because it, in order to build there, you need to be out of the flood, right?
Right. Anything that's, any basement that's lower than the flood elevation has to be elevated out of the flood zone? The proposed basement elevation is elevated to the point where it is out of the flood zone?
To clarify, that's not an issue in this case. The issue is, basically, is this considered a split level? Or is it considered a rambler? Because it's based on that where you'd consider the front door. And from there, you have the variance.
Consider the, the, the first floor of the old house.
Because it's from that that you create higher or lower, and where you might or might not require variance. Is that correct?
That's where the first floor elevation of the old home would be established. And the city staff reviewed it and contended that the first floor elevation of the old house was at that main floor, and it was not at the doorway that is by the garage.
Anyone else, any other commissioners with questions for staff? So I, Commissioner Bennett?
Just a quick one, Chris, and I might have missed it, but could you just walk through the existing condition of that house one more time? I know you said the main level up top had a full flight of continuous stairs to a basement.
So I'm here, come over here.
I guess, is there a wall that, I might have missed it, so I apologize again. Is there a wall between that garage?
So I make sure.
And the main portion of the house?
Hello, Mr. Schooler, could you, yeah, thank you, thank you. Go on, I couldn't hear you, yeah.
I, I think I know what you're-
You made a request, because I couldn't really hear myself either. So, just to clarify, and I might have missed it, so I apologize. But regardless, this is, this is a tricky, this, this is a maze. It's like trying to understand the end of Inception, honestly. Who's right, who's wrong? So the main level at the top of the old house, that's what we're saying is the existing first floor. That has a continuous stairway to a basement?
Yes.
Stairway, or does that have a landing to where that garage level is? Or is there a, a wall in between that? I, I'm trying to understand that, because it seems to be defining a lot of the situation.
Sure. And I'm wondering if maybe I should share my screen again?
Perhaps.
Yeah, maybe that would help. So.
I was about one slide behind you, still processing everything, so.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, there's a lot going on.
So this is the front elevation of the former house, and you have the main floor portion here. There's a full basement underneath. So they're stacked on top of each other. The only staircase is along the side here where this doorway is, and that's between the garage and where the house is, that has the main floor and the basement underneath. And so you walk through a door and you come down some steps. There's a landing, a doorway that goes out here, and there's a doorway that goes into the garage, and then the staircase continues down into the basement. It is the only staircase that goes up to the main level or goes down to the basement, which doesn't constitute a split entry or a split level dwelling unit. It's the only staircase. It's one continual staircase access from the main floor to the basement and vice versa. So the main floor is stacked on top of the basement, and that is the only staircase accessing both of those levels. Does that answer your question?
It does. Probably confuses me even more, because I live in a four-level split with one continuous stairway. And maybe that's just how it was defined, but there, you go down, go to another portion, go down, and it's too short, too short. Do you go back to one of your defining, the, the slide that defines a split level home? Because I know one was two or four floors, two or two to four floors with short steps between levels.
Would it be this one?
So because of our code, we say from the front entry, a short flight of stairs leads up to the top floor and another short flight leads down. So because we're defining the front entry as the one up top, that one does not qualify. But if you did qualify that as the front entry, it wouldn't, and it, it seems like the current, you know, the developer of this property is doing exactly that, where you're coming, now their front entry is that door next to the garage, and you go up a short flight of stairs, and then obviously you're going down to a basement at some point. I, I can see why there's a lot of contention here on both sides. But unfortunately, I'm just going to pause there and let other people ask some questions. Thank you.
Chris, this is Andy Porter. It might help Commissioner Bennett to show that video. Mr. Porter, why don't you do that when, when it's, that probably would be helpful. Why don't you do it when it's your turn? Would you be able to play that? I don't think I can play it, but I think Chris can. Okay, well, why don't we do that when, during, during your presentation? Are there any further questions for Planner Acker? Okay, I have a few. Where to start? I didn't take great notes. First of all, I think there's a few things, I'd like to try to establish a few facts here. I think this is a complicated matter, and I'd like to establish a few facts. First of all, the the issue here is whether, correct me if I'm wrong. The issue is whether this house, the, or the former house, the primary issue is whether the former house was a split level as defined under edine ordinances. Is that correct?
Correct. The claim of appeal is that the house proposed to be built was issued a building permit without fully complying, given that the former house was a split level dwelling, and-
As defined under, I'm sorry?
As defined by city code.
Okay. Second, it seems to me that the former house was a house with two doors on the front of it. Is that correct?
It has two doors on the, or it had two doors on the front, yes.
Yeah, and then the city code, oh, and, and, and whether this is, whether the house that's proposed to be built qualifies or doesn't qualify for a variance, doesn't really matter. Things like massing doesn't matter for purposes of determining whether the former house was a split level, what, you know, right?
Correct.
Whether, that just doesn't matter. All this stuff about fill is all interesting, but if, if this, if the, if the administrative decision is approved, no variance is needed, so no decisions regarding whether it's appropriate for variance are needed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and if we decide, if we decide to reverse and overrule the administrative decision, at that point, the home, the property person can apply for a variance, right? The developer could apply for variance. If we say no, you know what, we, we don't agree with staff's decision. They can apply, and we do 25 to 30 variances a year, right? It's not a big deal. Is it right?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, okay. Here's some things we, here's some, and then I guess one other thing that I see is, okay, a split level dwelling, the first sentence of the code says a split level dwelling means a dwelling that has two or three shorts of stairs and two to four levels. Well, I guess everyone's agreeing that the house, the previous house had two to four levels. And I guess the debate is whether there were two or three shorts of set of stairs or one long set of stairs. Is that correct? With, with an interim landing?
Staff believes it's a rambler with a basement with a stairway that accesses the lower level to the upper level or the upper level to the lower level. It's one continuous staircase that has a landing, but it's one staircase that accesses both of those levels. It's not a situation where you have a landing with a set of stairs going up to one level and then another set of stairs going down to another level. It is one continual staircase with a landing, but it's the only staircase that accesses the, the main floor and the basement.
Aren't all split levels, though, aren't all split levels, like, I live in a split level, and that's kind of how ours works, and we have landings in between each level, and some landings go to other rooms and other landings kind of, you know, until we remodeled, actually, only went to the garage, but it was still considered, that was still considered a level.
Well, with a multi-level home or a split level home, generally the floors do not have a full floor underneath it. You don't have a full basement and a main floor. So it is one level above and one level below. There's usually a short flight of stairs to one level and another short flight of stairs to another lower level, and they are not a full floor below an upper floor.
My house is.
Okay, and in this instance, you-
When I was younger, I had cousins that weren't- weren't very well off and they had a split level, but their house was. I mean, and it was a split level and they had a, they had floors stacked. Um, so, um, we'll, we'll discuss this further with the applicant, but can you explain the city's reasoning why thi- why this property applicant? This is a public hearing. We're a public body. Why this applicant is able to keep its materials, why the city agreed that the, this applicant doesn't have to demonstrate its materials and every other applicant that's ever come before us has had to. Um, I, I, I actually spoke with a former law clerk to the United States Supreme Court who was a long, longtime, very successful litigator. And he wasn't familiar with this either, so I'm just wondering how we got here and what the, wh- why the city was okay with letting these materials be kept confidential.
Well, the city staff does take advice from the city attorney. And we did. So that might be a question that you might want to ask the city attorney?
Okay, I see the city attorney just came on. Hello, Mr. Kendall, could you, could you respond why we agreed that this applicant could keep its materials, you know, non-public in a public hearing for a public body? I, I've dealt with a lot of confidential materials in my life too, with the FDA, SEC, and IRS, and I've seen other processes. I'm just wondering how we got here with this one. And I, I'm particularly worried about the precedent, the precedent that we're setting.
Well, Mr. Chairman, thanks for the opportunity to, uh, answer that question. So part of this, I think, has to do with the fact that, uh, we're handling this over a video conference platform. So the owner of the plan has asserted a copyright interest in it. Um, my concern advising city staff was that if those plans are displayed on a computer feed, uh, they could be screen captured. Now, that would be done without the authorization or permission of the city. But, you know, it's possible someone could allege that the city was somehow at least complicit in, uh, you know, a copyright violation. So the planning commission and staff and obviously the parties all have copies of the plans, have fair use of the plans for purposes of this hearing. Uh, the only thing that we're not doing is displaying those plans on the video feed. But all members of the commission do have access to the plans, fair use of the plans to review this issue and perform their job, make their decision. So uh, maybe it's a conservative approach, but, uh, I just didn't want the, there to be any possibility that someone could make any unauthorized copy of the plans off of the video transmission over the computer uh, and have the owner of the plans allege a potential copyright violation. So that's.
We, uh, ho- ho- hold on, Commissioner Bennett. Thank you. Do you have anything further, Commissioner Kendall, on that? I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I, I have nothing further. I guess I would just say that, um, often individuals don't assert a copyright claim or are willing to waive a copyright claim when it comes to having public bodies review their plans. So I certainly agree that it's, it's not at all unusual for city councils and planning commissions to display copies of plans. Um, just because people don't assert their copyright interests or waive their copyright interest. In this case, the, the owners of the plans have explicitly asserted their interest, and that's the reason for the position that the city's taken on this particular case.
So we've been, our, our, the planning commission meetings and council meetings have been done on video for at least a decade and they've been available on computer replay for that time. I mean, just because we're meeting by WebEx doesn't change any of tho- that, that risks you mentioned. I mean, I, I don't understand why that matters. Are you familiar with a city ever being sued for, uh, displaying plans?
I'm not familiar with the city of Edina ever being sued for it, if, if, if that's your question. I, I'm.
Anywhere, anywhere. Has a city ever been sued for displaying plans in a public hearing that are the subject matter of, uh, 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 a, a deci- a, the decision by a public body?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. I know that, um, they do have the ability to assert a copyright claim. I don't know the history of, of who has asserted it.
Copyright isn't the same as confidential though, right? I mean.
No.
Like, 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 like I got a book here that has a copyright and I can, I can show it to everybody. I can't resell it.
Chair, Chair Nemiroff, Chair Nemiroff, can I just, in the interest of time, can I just make the point that everything that's blocked out that was presented by the applicant or the appellant is in our packet? So we are seeing.
That doesn't matter though. That doesn't matter. We represent, this is a public hearing for the city of Edina. Commit, where, whereas Attorney Kendall can identify a claim where a city has been sued for copyright violation because someone else. But I'm sure Mr. Schooler will discuss this in a moment too. I'm sure he's familiar with many times cities have been sued for making decisions with information that isn't public. And now basically we're saying, hey, just say you have a copyright right and we won't require you to show all your plans. I'm, I've never heard of this. And I think that that's a much bigger risk to the city. So I'm going to ask regardless of how we decide tonight, that all these materials are made public, unless there's some kind of memo where I can show that. Uh, I, I'm looking for Mr. Schooler's report. I mean, I see he's getting geared up, but to understand why uh, wha- what, 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 what we're going to be sued. Our, our job is not to make sure that app people developing, I mean, all respect to the applicant and Mr. Schooler, but our job is to the the residents of Edina, and that includes acting as a public body. It doesn't matter whether we have all the information. We can tell the public that, yeah, we have the right information. So we feel comfortable with our decision. What matters is that we have an open meeting where all residents of the city understand what we can see. And now we've created a precedent where somebody can just say, oh, hey, I have a copyright, which isn't even mean confidential. You can put copyright at the, the, Channel Four News can present copyrighted materials. The Star Tribune can present copyrighted materials. The New York Times. I mean, copyright, I'm looking forward to it, but I'm, I'm lost and I, I'm, I'm concerned. So, I don't know, Mr. Kendall, you have the last answer on that. And then, but I, I'm really concerned about it.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll just say one more thing, which is, I, you're correct. I'm not uh, saying that this information is confidential. The, the city has it on file and any member of the public who wants to inspect it, uh, is allowed to inspect it and will be allowed to inspect it. The city just can't allow them to make copies of it. So this is, I'm not saying that the, this information is confidential or not accessible to the public. Uh, it is. I just advise staff not to display it in a way that it could be copied without permission, but it can still be inspected.
We've had for the last ten years, everything can be copied from our screen. So, so unless you're recommending that we change all our processes or, or also you're recommending that we favor, we never change it again, but we favor this particular applicant. We've worked on pretty big-time plans.
I, I'm not recommending that you favor this particular applicant. No, I'm not.
Okay. I, I beat this horse. Any other commissioners with anything on this one? Otherwise we'll bring all the applicants to speak. Mr. Schooler, Mr. Porter, I don't know. Welcome. And we look forward to hearing your piece.
Um, I can't wait to speak. I listened for an hour and we are out in the weeds. I represent Refined. I do not represent their client. Um, we're going to divide this into three pieces. Um, I'm going to speak first and then Mr. Porter's going to speak second and Mr. Basina is going to speak third. So let's focus first on what this hearing is and what it is not. This is not a variance hearing. We are not a party to this. We are here on three simple issues. And, uh, the issue is the only thing that is part of this appeal is whether or not this is a split level. And how do we know that? Because that's what they notified the city of. And after they notified the city, Ms. Acker said, you need to clarify what the scope of your appeal is. The scope of the appeal is listed in our letter that's part of your package. And attached to that letter is the clarification, um, that Mr. Basalis prepared on his appeal. If you go to the inclusion, I'm not going to read it all, but it says, according to the language and the clear intent of the code, that Amalish House is a split level dwelling and the proposed house is not. That is the only issue of the appeal. So all of this other stuff about plant, flood plan and this and that, it's irrelevant. It is not before this commission. We talked about the copyright issues. We're not asking for any favors. In fact, um, we provided detailed plans in connection with our application for a permit. The city had those. If the city would have rejected those plans and we had a variance, then you would have the plans. Our objection is that we provided notice to miss through the city attorney that we're not a party and we don't want Mr. Basalis copying our plans and using them for public use. That's not his decision to do. So let's go back to the issues at hand. Again, now let's compare and contrast for those of you who have not been through this process before. When Builders, uh, Great Neighborhood Homes, uh, presented earlier, that's a variance hearing. He is a party to this. You're going to have a discussion. Should he get a permit or not? That ship has left the station. The city properly gave my client or gave, uh, uh, a permit to Refined, and that was long ago. And let me orient you to a timeline. So here's a timeline, and this is critical. And it also gets to, and I will address in a minute, why when Mr. Nemiroff says it's not a big deal, it is a big deal. My client relied on the city to its detriment and we are nine months down the road. Let's talk about what happened. So first we had a, a permit, refined. And by way of background, for those of you that don't know about Refined, they've been a major builder in the city of Edina for over a decade. They've built over a hundred homes. They've gone through this process with the city over a hundred times. They're an upstanding business. They know the rules. They follow the rules. And after they submitted their permit on October twenty-seventh of 2020, on behalf of their client, they specifically said, my client does not want a variance. They do not want to be in a position where they have to get a variance from the neighborhood. So they went to the city. The city reviewed the plans, detailed plans by a sophisticated architectural outfit, and you have those plans. You don't get those for five thousand. You don't get those for ten thousand. Those are thousands and thousands of dollars that a top builder in Edina got from a top architect to make sure a house that's in compliance with the codes was built on that spot. And what happened? On November twenty-fifth, the commission, the Edina commission. And let's talk about who's there. These people are experts. Ms. Acker was on this commission when I applied to get a variance for my house at fifty-five twenty-one Oak Lawn in two thousand and one. All of these folks know this code coming and going. They know what a split level is. And that issue was presented to these experts. Then these experts came out with an email on November twenty-fifth and said, this is not a split level. That is part of the package. It's attached to our letter to Mr. Nemiroff. And it is, uh, an email dated, uh, uh, November twenty-fifth. Now, there was a sleight of hand by the neighbors. What's the sleight of hand? They submit an email earlier in the morning in which, um, one of the individuals, I believe it was Kerry Teague, was saying, I don't, I think this is a split level. We have an email that Andy got from uh, from Ms. Acker, and it's dated April twenty-third. And if you want that part of the record, she can add that. And Andy said, I just want to confirm that you had, uh, what happened? So this email dated April twenty-third clarifies what happened. So in the morning, uh, Kerry Teague is saying, I'm, I think it's a split level. All of these experts, all of these people who know this code coming and going, sit down and they meet after that email. And three hours later, they issue an email to Refined saying, it's not a split level. Why is that critical? That is an administrative decision. And that is an administrative decision that Refined and the Basinas relied on. Now, Ms. Acker framed the issue, which is this is an appeal of a permit. I respectfully disagree with her. Why do I say that? Because if you go to Edina's own code, the appeal comes from section thirty-six ninety-six. And it says, "A person who deems himself aggrieved by an alleged error in an order, decision, or determination um, made by an administrative officer, yet uh, in the interpretation and enforcement of this chapter, may appeal to the board by filing a written appeal with the planning department within thirty days after the date of such order or determination. The appeal so fully state the order to be appealed." This was a determination. It says it right in the email that's attached to our letter. The city has made a determination. To the extent that an aggrieved party has to appeal, you have thirty days. They have until December twenty-fifth. That is the first reason why this commission can reject this appeal outright. It's untimely as a matter of law. And there's no dispute about that. No dispute whatsoever. Let's look at the second basis, why you can just get rid of this claim, um, which we believe it's a frivolous appeal without any merit. An aggrieved pardon. Again, go to your own court, your own code. What does it say? An aggrieved pardon. Okay. So why is that in place? If Refined or the prior builder has a variance request that is denied, guess what? They're aggrieved. They want to be able to apply, uh, appeal and say, we don't think we need a variance. You're aggrieved. The homeowner is aggrieved and the builder is aggrieved. How in the heck can Mr. Basalis and the other gentleman, whose name I can't remember, how can they be an aggrieved party? They don't have any injury. They can't demonstrate it. They have no standing whatsoever. Now let's play this up. Let's assume for a moment you decide that in fact they need to get a variance. Keep in mind that the homeowners bought this property. They got a city decision from experts who know this code coming and going. And then they relied on it. The hole was dug after the permit was issued. And the permit was issued on February twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-one. Again, contrast that with Great Neighborhood Homes who's seeking a variance. They haven't done anything yet. The homeowners in this case relied on the city, the experts who had said this is not a split level, the only basis of this appeal. They took the home down. They dug a hole and put in footings. And then after that's done, Mr. Basalis, who, he didn't tell you this in his fifty-one page PowerPoint, he's a builder. He has a conflict of interest. He's a direct competitor with Refined. And if you want to know what he does, he's not only a direct competitor with Refined, I would say that he's a hypocrite. Go look at Fifty Forty-three Euin. That's a house he tore down and built a huge duplex next to a small, tiny garage. So not only does he have a conflict of interest, not only does he have no standing, not only is his untimely, not only did he steal information and put it over on display after we notified the city attorney not to do that. He's a trespasser as well. He was on that property nonstop and we said, you're not.
Mr. Schooler, I'm going to interrupt you for just a moment. I definitely want to hear you have to say, this is very interesting, but please do not personally insult the other member. Please.
I, I'm, I'm simply pointing out, i- i- you know, if I were in a court of law, I would point out if there's a conflict of interest. I would definitely do that. And I apologize if it's insulting, but this entire process, if you look at it from the perspective of Mr. Porter's client, um, is insulting. And we asked the city attorney to dismiss this because it's baseless and without merit. And I understand his decision. We disagree with it, but here we are. So let's get to the issues. He doesn't have standing because he can't demonstrate that he's aggrieved. It's untimely because he did not do it within thirty days. The one issue he has is. The one issue he has is claiming that it's not a split level. We have five experts from the city who have been doing this forever, who know the code, know what a split level is. And they determined that it was not a split level. My client relied on that. And he's telling you that he wants to stand in the shoes of the experts, people who've been doing this for years and years and years. People who also know every single split level that has come in front of the city for a permit. And they know the difference between a split level and not a split level. And he wants you to accept his determination that it is a split level. There's no basis for that whatsoever. I want to play this out for a moment. And let you think about the consequences if you decide this is the precedent, that a neighbor who doesn't like the design of a house can come in and appeal. Use me as an example. I started at 5521 in 1999. It was a bunch of ramblers and split levels on that lot. During the time that I was there, and I just sold the house last July, there were six teardowns. I could have single handedly mucked up every single process. All I had to do was, as soon as they go for a permit, and as soon as that permission is issued, I wait for them to dig a hole and I appeal. There's a three, four month delay and it's $100,000 with the damages. That's the amount of damages that Andy Porter and Refine's clients has already sustained because of this. I could have done that to all six houses and damaged everybody. And that's just simply not, that cannot be the contention of the code. It cannot be. Finally, I would say this. And if you, by the way, if you want to know what the basis is of the appeal, it's pretextual. They claim that it's because it's not a, it's, it's not a split level. If you look at page four of his PowerPoint, it says, we did not oppose a two foot first floor height variance of 89 woodland circle because it fits into the neighborhood. He wants to be the arbitrator and decide what fits and what doesn't fit. That's, neighbors don't get to do that. The city planners and commission and Ms. Acker and her colleagues get to do that. He does not get to do that. He does not have standing to do that. My client attempted to talk to him and resolve it. And an email was sent out and essentially Mr. Busalis said, well, you should have come to us and involved us. And because you didn't, that's why you're here. Refine does that routinely. They go to the neighborhood, just like Builders Great Neighborhood of Homes did. When there's a variance, this is not a variance. There's no obligation to go to the neighbors and say, hey, this is what we're going to build. In this particular case, we asked that there be a roll vote. It should be a clean nine oh. And all you need to do is decide this. He doesn't have standing, it's untimely. And the experts, your experts, the city of Edina, the people who've done it 100 times, probably more, they know what a split level is, they know what's not. Nobody on this commission does. And certainly Mr. Busalis is not in a position to outthink them. And to the extent that this commission might say, hey, well, let's send them back to the drawing board and make them get a variance. My client is invested, well, actually, Mr. Porter's client has invested tens of thousands of dollars in reliance on the city. Making them go back to the drawing board will continue to add up damages that they've sustained in reliance on the city and in reliance on this process. I'm going to let Andy speak next, but we think this is a clear cut situation. And the city needs to put an end to this frivolous appeal here, here and now tonight. Andy?
Hi, everybody. One second. Is that better?
Yeah.
So I'm Andy Porter. I live in Edina at 5905 Fairfax Avenue. As Dave mentioned, I'm here on behalf of my clients, the Pascina family, and I'm their general contractor. First of all, I want to thank everybody that's put their time in on this, especially the city staff. We've been working on this a long time, trying to understand all the rules. And certainly you guys for sitting in on this, on this meeting. Real quick about refined, Dave talked a little bit about it. We've been building homes in Edina for a decade. We know the code. We know where to get answers if we're confused about the code. And we have a very strong and professional relationship with Chris and Kerry and the others over there. So a little bit of history here. Back in April 2020, which is over a year now, we sat down with Chris and Kerry to understand exactly what can be done on this site. My homeowners were very, very specific. They said, we don't want to go for a variance. We want to build to the code. So it's a difficult site from that perspective. And we spent a lot of time, a lot of time, understanding what the city's interpretation of the code was. And we spent about $80,000 in pursuit of this plan based off of what the city had told us were the rules. One thing that stuck with me through the, through all these conversations was, Chris Acker said to me at some point, and I'm paraphrasing. She said, "Character the neighborhood is dictated by the four corners of the code." Okay? Character the neighborhood is dictated by the four corners of the code. Once you leave the four corners of the code, you need a variance which provides special permission. That was the previous hearing you heard tonight. They need special permission to build what they want to build. You guys talked about driveways, you talked about all kinds of things that you get to weigh in on because it was a variance hearing. We did not go, this is not a variance hearing. We stayed inside the four corners of the code. And we were given a building permit. Dave kind of ran through the timeline. I think it's really critical that there was an administrative decision, which is a critical term here. And that was made on November 25th. The appellant had 30 days, which takes you to Christmas, to file an appeal on that decision. And that decision was, the city determined that that was a, not a split level home that we were tearing down. Okay? The appeal was filed on March 9th, 104 days after the administrative decision was determined. That's 74 days beyond the window. Now, that sounds like, hey, you're just technicalities. No, it's not. What it is, is if on December 25th, we had an appeal that we had to deal with, we would have stopped what we were doing. We would have gone and started to redesign, or maybe we would have appealed the split level decision. But we don't know that. So we spent, we spent all kinds of time, money, emotion pursuing this because that 30 day window has closed. And Dave mentioned it. This is, from my perspective, this is open and shut. If we're not going to adhere to deadlines, what are we doing? He didn't adhere to the deadline. He missed it by 74 days. Administrative decision, that's what that is. The other part that gets me a lot is the grievance piece. It's clearly stated in the code. It's written in black and white, couldn't be clearer, that you need to be aggrieved. You need to be damaged by this. He has not stated how he's damaged. It's a requirement for him to file the appeal to have an grievance, and he hasn't done one. To me, that's, that's absolutely unacceptable that we're even sitting here talking about this. Now, to my clients, who have been the most patient people I've ever met through this, they, unlike Mr. Busalis, have been extremely damaged by this process. What this process is forcing us to do is to pause this project for four months. Just to give you a little financial, besides the emotional impact on this family through the pandemic, through homeschooling, through two parents working, all that stuff, like we're all doing right now, there's emotional impact on this family. The financial impact is striking. To carry this house for the extra four months this appeal process is going to take is $5,000 a month. If anybody's paying attention, I know the appellant probably is, lumber and trusses alone to build a new house today are skyrocketing. So if you take the carry costs to carry this project and just the lumber and trusses, let's leave out all the other costs that they're incurring, we're over $100,000 of added cost to the Pascinas. $100,000 for this ridiculous, I'm sorry, with all due respect, this ridiculous process that shouldn't even be happening. Now my, I'm a pretty optimistic guy. My pessimistic view is, because Mr. Busalis is in the industry, does he actually know that? That he's doing this, this financial damage to his neighbor? I don't know. I think he probably is watching lumber pricing like I am. So that's, that's, to me, that's pretty rough. So he's not aggrieved, but my clients are severely aggrieved by this process. Now, you all know, if you're paying attention in Edina, there is a small handful, small handful of anti-new home activists. Okay? Not a lot of them, probably less than 10.
You're approaching your time limit. If we could ask
They want to slow this down. They want to inflict as much damage on people like the Pascinas so that this stuff stops. No more new construction in Edina, no more remodeling. And this process, whether you, whichever way you guys go on us tonight, I think you need to look at this process. Appellants get to sit here, not spend a nickel and tie everything up, muck it up for four months while Mr. Pascina gets out his checkbook and does this. This is incredibly important decision you guys are making tonight. And the precedent that it's going to set is going to change and shake the whole thing. Just so you know. So I'll, I'll finish now. This is my written statement. I am respectfully requesting that the planning commission right this wrong against my client and deny this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Because we hit the time limit. Mr. Pascina, I want to clarify a couple of points.
Hold on, Mr. Schooler, please.
This is very, very important, but I want to read the email again. It's in your materials.
Mr. Schooler, I'm going to get to the Pascinas in just a moment. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Porter. Thank you, Mr. Schooler. Is my understanding is the time limit for the developer has run. But I would like to give the Pascinas just a minute or two, if you, if you can, to just, to just share your thoughts. I mean, if, if there's things you'd like to share. Are you on the call?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Hey, good, good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Pascina. I am the potential owner of the home. We're also Edina residents. We live here on Casco Avenue with my wife and two middle school children who go to Southview. We, this is a mess, as you guys can see. And I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a developer like Mr. Busalis. I'm not a, you know, I'm not a builder like Andy. I'm not a city planner and I'm not an engineer. I'm not on the planning commission. I'm a normal guy who wants to build a house on a great lot. And we wanted to be great neighbors with the area. And we knew the lot going in was going to be challenging. As you guys mentioned, we had to get, the current house was in the, you know, the basement was in the flood plain. We had to get up, we had to make the ceilings shorter in the basement. So if you haven't heard and saw that, the basement ceiling height is like eight and a half feet, I think. I think Ms. Acker was correct there. It's on a hill, it's on a creek, it's on a cul-de-sac. There's a lot of challenges with the lot. And we really did want to make sure we, we built to the code. And so we, we asked Andy, we asked the architect to work really closely with the city and check in along the way, three, four, five times, just so that we could say, look, let's not put any more resources, time and energy, by the way, during a pandemic, as we're all going through. And make sure we, we were on track. And, and I got to be honest, the city was absolutely fantastic in giving us guidance. We changed our plans multiple times along the way to make sure concerns. And look, I, I don't know all the definitions and stuff and, and I don't pretend to. But the thing that was important to us was to try to do this the right way. And, and so we were really, really excited when we finally got the permit through. And we, you know, we tear down the house and the family was there. We were super excited. And, and then we were devastated as a family when Mr. Busalis and filed the appeal. And, and again, it was challenging for us emotionally as a family, as they mentioned. Financially, it's one thing, but the two, we were looking forward to it. We have a limited amount of time with our children left in the house. And it's something that we really were looking forward to. And, and so I actually reached out to Mr. Busalis and Todd and we met. And I said, look, what can I do to, to try to move this along? And, you know, at the end of the day, we talked for a long time. And the, the summary for me was, he just wanted to have a complete say in what the design of the house was and to build a smaller house. And I think, as you heard Chris mention, we, we tried to do everything we could. And we are within the code according to all the experts. And so I guess what I would, what I would simply ask the city, and I want to be very respectful all the time, is to rely on your experts. I did financially and as a city employee, I thought they were phenomenal to work with to try to sort out a very complicated situation. And I don't want to set the precedent that, that you can really change all that just because someone has a different opinion of what the experts at the city have said. So I really respect the city and what this group has to wrestle with on a day to day basis. Thank you for letting me say a few words. And I, I hope that you can see that we have tried to do things the right way with everyone and that we can proceed, hopefully, without too much more financial, emotional issues with our own household and, and build the house of our dreams within the neighborhood. So thank you for, for the time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pascina. Thank you, Mr. Schooler. Thank you, Mr. Porter. So that, that concludes our presentations right now. I have a feeling that there may be questions for anyone. So I'm, now I'll invite the planning commission if they have any questions for the homeowner property developer. Okay.
I am, can I, can I actually ask Chris Acker a question or are we past that?
Yeah, no, 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 no. I'll, yes, most definitely you can ask the city staff questions also, or the appellant, certainly.
Okay, thank you. I have two questions, Chris. Can you, first, can you help clarify the discrepancy in the dates and whether this appeal did fall within the requirements of an appeal?
That was reviewed by the city attorney and the city attorney said that the appeal could go forward. So everything that was reviewed in terms of in November, when we were looking at the building permit application, plans, whether we could show copyright plans and whether the appeal has standings or could go forward, all of that was reviewed by the city attorney.
Can I just jump in? Could I just jump in for a second? Can I clarify this question? The 30 days comes from an order requiring decision determination. Was that then triggered as referenced in the staff report? Excuse me, I got a lot of tabs open. Was that, is the city considering the, the decision to be the staff, whatever, the February 27th date or something? I'm, I'm not finding it quickly here.
Yeah, I think that was the issuance of the building permit as opposed to an administrative decision, which the developer's lawyer, I think, is suggesting that it was, that decision was made back in November.
Yeah, yes. So, so there, Mr. Kendall, I might have the February date wrong, but Commissioner Agnew's question, you know, and if I clarified it all, please.
Yeah, Mr. Sherman, thank you. My response to that is that I didn't feel I had the authority to dismiss this appeal without the planning commission being allowed to hear it. I would also, you know, taking the view most favorable to the appellant, I would say the official action by the city was the issuance of the building permit. The email, I would not say was a formal official action. There's no way that anyone, whether you believe that Mr. Busalis is genuinely aggrieved or not, if, if someone were aggrieved, I don't think they would have noticed of an official action by an email sent to an individual. So I didn't think it was appropriate for me to dismiss the appeal on that basis without allowing the planning commission to hear it. Now, if the planning commission believes that, that email from Ms. Acker was an official, the official determination, then I guess the planning commission can the official determination, then I guess the planning commission can dismiss it on that basis. But I didn't feel I had the authority to do that because I feel like it's a factual question whether the email was the determination or the issuance of the building permit was the determination. I would say the official action would likely be the issuance of the building permit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. Commissioner Agnew, do you have further questions?
Yes, the second question that I had for the city, um, is the basis of this appeal, whether this is a split-level house, so is it definitional? Or whether the city should have required a variance because the house was issued a building permit without fully complying with Edina zoning code?
Well, the basis of the appeal was that the house proposed to be built, um, did not fully comply with the zoning code based on the fact, according to the appellant, that the former home was a split-level dwelling and that the first floor elevation should be at no higher than one foot above where that entry or lower level elevation is. That's what they were appealing.
Okay. Uh, the, this just feels very confusing, I think, in a lot of ways. And I, I think that, you know, one thing that is potentially confusing to me as a commissioner is, um, in the, the, uh, presentation that the appellant made today, it talked both about that split level as well as just like, what are we defining as that first floor and what are we defining as that main level? Um, and I, I think that, you know, those are both valid questions, but those are different things, and I want to be, um, aligning to the nature of the official appeal process. And I want to make sure that we're considering facts that are in alignment with what we're submitted as a part of that official appeal. And so that's where this question is really coming from, is, you know, should we as commissioners be evaluating, you know, how should the first floor be defined in these plans that were presented? Or should we as commissioners be really thinking about, is this a split level because that was what was a part of the original appeal, um, that was made to the city? And I don't know who can answer that, or if, if there is even an answer to that, but I, I feel like that's where a lot of my confusion is coming in right now.
Well, Commissioner Agnew, I, I could take a, make an attempt at answering that. Um, I, I think one thing the commission should look at, uh, is what you feel is the front door to the property. So this, the previously existing property. The previously existing property had two doors on the front of the house. And the definition of split level talks about the front door opening to a split staircase. Well, it's, so it depends on which of those two doors you believe is the front door. If you believe that, that door closer to the garage was the front door, that door opens to a split staircase, and maybe you believe that old, previously existing home was a split level, and that would set the standard for where the floor of the new home could go. If you believe that, that other door at the end of the sidewalk, which opened into the living room and the kitchen and the great room and all those areas was the front door, that sets the standard where, uh, you set the, the floor level for the new home to be built. That, that sets the comparison. So I don't want to oversimplify the issues, but I think a lot of it, it starts with the analysis of which of those two doors you believe is the front door. Because that determines what you believe is the main level, and that determines where the standard is set for where the floor level of the new house can be built. So that's my best attempt at answering your question, and I hope it was helpful.
Could I, Commissioner, do you have something to do here? On behalf of, uh, Refined?
Sure, sure. I'd like to hear from you.
Um, so a couple of things. Um, Mr. Kendall, who I've had numerous pleasant conversations with, he's not a judge. He's simply advising you, and I'm telling you, I disagree with him. And I think his interpretation of when the appeal had to be filed, um, I think I have a better interpretation. I believe I have the right interpretation, and I believe that his interpretation can't work.
Thank you, thank you. Well, do, do any other, thank you, Mr. Schooler. Is there any other information you'd like to share?
This is an important point, because I think Ms. Agnew has, she wants to know what the issue, setting aside timing and standing, the issue is, did the city council, these five experts who are professional experts, none of you are-
Mr. Schooler, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We have a big agenda tonight. You've made these points, and, and we've, and we've noted them.
Make sure that you understand that issue.
And now you're just reasserting that you disagree with the city's attorney, which is fine, but we need to, we need to cover new ground. So I'm going to ask if any other commissioners have questions for anyone else? Because we have a big agenda tonight. Commissioner Bennett?
Yeah, so I, I was able to find the video link, and I guess, um, what's missing, and maybe I'm just missing it, but all we have of the, you know, the, the proposed home is that exterior elevation sketch, correct? We don't have floor plan? Or was, like, I can't find that in our packet. Am I missing that?
Um, we can show the video. Um, Liz has that, uh-
No, no, I, I don't care about the existing house. I'm talking about the proposed house? Is that the whole copyright issue?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm just, I mean, I guess from the elevation and what we're seeing, um, what's qualified as the main floor looks, I mean, just very similar, where there's just a door next to a garage, and then obviously it goes up a short level of stairs and down somewhere else. But we don't know what any of that, so it's hard to make.
So-
I don't know how that applies.
Can I help with that, Commissioner Bennett? Um, from, I've read the plans, I've seen the plans, I've looked at the plans as an architect with twenty-five years of experience. I could tell you, I would, if you could, you can't have bo, it can't have it both ways, and that's what I'm seeing right now. So the main, I'm, I'm, I can be in agreement that this is not a split level, because the main floor level from this picture is great. You see the door open, that's the main level, that's where it exists. What they're using, though, is the, they want to use that, their, their argument is they're using that as their, their existing first floor, but then when they bring in the new house plan, they're new, if you look at the side door to the garage, they have the exact same-
Commissioner Bartling, Commissioner Bartling, Commissioner Bartling? Can, can, we'll have an opportunity later to explain our positions. I, I think it's really important, this is a really complicated thing-
I'm trying to explain to him what's happening, though, with the-
Yeah, yeah, no, but that's not, that you'll have, we'll have, not, not right now, though. Um, I, I, I did, I don't know. I'd like to let people get their questions.
State facts.
Well. Okay.
But, go ahead, where, where, where you want to go.
Do, do, does any, does, Commissioner Bennett, would you like to restate your question?
No, I just wanted to make sure. All we have of the proposed house is that exterior elevation sketch, correct? In our, in our materials?
Well, with the exception of the portal that you can-
In this meeting, when we're making a decision, if someone's listening and they want to call in, they don't have the benefit of reviewing the plans, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
But the commission has a, a, a complete copy of the plans.
So Commissioner Bennett, which portion of the plan would you like to see?
Am I missing a link to those? I must have missed it. I'm sorry. In the, in the link of attachments, where is it in there? Can someone please instruct me?
Well, Commissioner Bennett is looking for that. I'd just like to make the comment that when I look at that house, and when I look at the materials, and I look at the video, there is no way that's a split-level home. It's just not a split-level home. You, you don't look at that house, you don't enter that house, you don't think of that house going in the side door, you go in the front door. It's not a split-level home. And so I think what we're talking about here-
Do all commissioners have had a chance to re-
Well, we're kind of going around in circles here, and I think it's-
And I'm trying to avoid going around in circles. That's what I'm trying to do. Has anyone had, has everyone had a chance to ask all the questions, to get all the information they want before we give our positions? And all positions are valid. But has everyone had a chance? We haven't had public testimony yet either, so I'd like to hold off on our positions before, until we get the public testimony. Has everyone had a chance to ask all their questions?
Ian, I have one final question. Um, so if we were to look at, and I think that, Jimmy, this is getting at what you were looking for, right? Um, if we were to look at that main floor, so thinking about where the, um, the kitchen is, the living room, the main living space of the first floor of both houses, do we have information from the city on what the difference is in those elevations from the, the previous house compared to the new house that is being built? Or maybe that's something that the, the developer could provide?
Uh, let me wait, let me weigh in on that. Um, can you turn that down? So this is not a variance hearing. This is not a variance hearing. The only thing this is about is, was the existing home a split-level home? Once that decision is determined, then the, the architect designs a house based on that decision. That's, that's what this whole thing is about. It's not about what's going to be built, it's about what was there. That's what the appellant appealed. That's it.
Does anyone have any further questions? I have one. Um, I'll set this up a little bit so you understand where I'm coming from. I recently toured a home for sale that had two kitchens. Can a house have two front doors? Like, like if you tell your guests to enter, do you sometimes tell your guests, enter at this door, sometimes tell them to enter at that door, depending on like, whether it's January or July, for example? Can a house have two front entries?
If that's the question to me, I think Chris Acker tells you that there isn't a definition for front door, or for, for first floor. I don't think all this stuff is defined. I think that's up to the homeowner to do what they, the way it's interpreted.
Okay. So a house could have two front doors, so, Chris, do you want to?
No, that is correct, and there is no definition of first floor. So when somebody is setting their new first floor, there isn't a definition of what that is. There isn't, it isn't in the, the zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Acker. Does anyone have any further questions? Okay. Hey, this is a semi-public hearing. So, people that are watching, that wish to comment, this is the opportunity for people who are watching tonight, who wish to comment on this matter. If you wish to comment, here are the instructions. Please call eight-hundred-three-seven-four-zero-two-two-one, enter conference ID four-three-six-three-five-eight-eight. Press star one, and staff will, you'll be placed into queue, and staff will meet you to the meeting. You'll have up to three minutes. We ask that if, you know, please don't repeat comments that have been provided previously by other callers. We received one comment from Better Together that, you know, might have been more relevant. It was opposed, but it might have been more relevant to discussion whether or not a variance, uh, should occur. Um, so with that, I will ask Dan, hello, Mr. Reesig, do we have any callers?
We still have several callers on the line, and we do have one in queue, it looks like. Uh, it looks like if the operator can unmute the line of Ms. Lori Groats, uh, when she is placed into the, uh, open line, she can go ahead and start speaking.
My name is Lori Groats.
Hello, Lori.
Five-five-one-three, hi, five-five-one-three, Park Place. Um, I also, in looking at this, had wanted to take a look at the plans for the new house. It was not available for the public to look at. In our situation, we live on a corner, we have had two tear-down and rebuilds on either side of us. So we have run into the situation with the copyright situation on plans. Back when we wanted to take a look at some plans for the house, at one of the houses that was going to be built next door, we were told that they were copyrighted, and we were not allowed to purchase those, even though they're, they're submitted, uh, as public documents as part of the permitting process. My husband was, uh, forced to go to iPad to get a soft ruling on that, and essentially what iPad said, that they were public documents. The only time you run into a problem with a copyrighted document is if the person that is purchasing that document uses those documents to build a house. And then the civ, it becomes a civil issue, and that doesn't involve the city. It would be between the person using those plans and the person that owns the plans. And I have seen this issue happen with other builds in town. There was a situation in Morningside, there was a tear-down and a rebuild, and somebody came to me and said, I wanted to purchase those plans. They told me I couldn't purchase them because they were copyrighted. Well, it wasn't too much longer, there was, uh, a variance hearing on it, and all of those documents were made public when it went to the planning commission, and all the documents were online. I think that this has to be addressed. We were finally able to purchase those documents, um, after the iPad ruling on that soft ruling. But other people after us, the city went back to calling, this is, um, copyrighted, and these are public documents, they're submitted with a building permit, which is public. And right now, the public can't even look at any of these documents, the city hall is closed. The city can put these documents online for the public to view, but they have chosen not to. The builder can take a look at them, but, uh, this just has to change. And whether or not you determine this is a split level or not, from looking at those photos, it doesn't look like it belongs into the neighborhood, just like the house that was to the south that the builder wanted to build there. Um, the city council determined that that house couldn't be built there, and that one went to court. I don't know what the resolution was on it. But I thank you again, Ian, for bringing this forward about, um, public documents and copyright, and like you gave the example for the public library. The library is not in violation of copyright law when they loan out a book, or if somebody loses the book and you need to purchase it. This has to change. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Dan, do we have any other callers?
Several callers on the line, uh, no one in queue right now, so if you're comfortable waiting about thirty seconds, just to give a chance to catch up, I will, uh, let you know if anyone jumps on. No one, uh, in the queue, feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Dan. So that ends, would, um, would you like to close the public hearing now?
Motion to close the public hearing?
I second that.
Thank you. I think that was Commissioner Alkire and Commissioner Berube. Uh, Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote to close the public hearing?
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Berube? I don't know if she's on the call anymore. Um, Commissioner Olson?
I, I said aye.
Oh, my apologies. Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Karen Numroff?
So that brings us to the planning commission. I'm gonna open it up in a second, but before I do that, I want to say something. So we, we had training about a month ago and this comes out of our training program about a month ago. And I wanna, I wanna say this publicly before, before we get into the planning commission discussion. So, a planning commission is made up of Edina residents that have been appointed to this commission by the city council. We base our decisions and recommendations to city council largely from the city zoning ordinance regulations, the city's comprehensive plan and small area or district planning documents. Public feedback from Better Together, Edina and testimony given at public hearings and other forms of public feedback is also very important and does factor into these decisions and recommendations. But I wish to reiterate that our decisions are based on the ordinances, the comp plan and the small area plan and district plan documents. Our purview of what the planning commission takes action on is, includes single-family residential variances, administrative appeals, recommendations to city council on other matters also such as commercial and multifamily residential development proposals. So I just want to make that clear. You know, we're, we're kind of guided by the facts of, within the documents. So now I know those people have opinions. This is a great opportunity if planning commission members have opinions, if they wish, if they have any further questions or if they'd like to make a motion. So I'll open the floor. Commissioner Bennett, I see you, but I know Commissioner Berube and Commissioner Alkire had things they wished to say earlier, so I'd like to offer them the first opportu- excuse me, not Commissioner Alkire, Commissioner Bartling, excuse me. Commissioner Bartling and Commissioner Berube, but if one of you would like to go first, I'd like to invite you to do so. Or if you'd like to wait, you're definitely welcome to do that also.
Well, if what we're deciding here really rests on whether the current, the original home was a split level or whether it's a rambler, I think this is a really easy decision. And we spent a lot of time going around in circles. It's not a split level home. It's a rambler. And so the, the level at which the first floor can be should be based on it being a rambler from the beginning. It's, I think it's very straightforward and there's no question in my mind.
Commissioner Bartling, would you like to say some things?
Yeah, so I agree with Commissioner Berube that I would agree that this is also a rambler and that the, the first floor level should be taken off where the original first floor level was taken off per the code. It seems that it is not being taken off that, that number at this time, however. So that is, I guess, the, the caveat to what Commissioner Agnew was saying too, is, is this about, do they need a variance? Or is this about being a split level? In my opinion, it would require a variance because it does, it's not fitting, it is not going, abiding by that, using that first level as a rambler.
Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Strauss, okay?
Thank you. So man, this is a messy one, right? I just want to say, all things considered, I'm in support of, I guess, denying the appeal based off of the code. Unfortunately, how it's written and how it was navigated successfully, not necessarily by the homeowner, but, but by the developer, the builder, abided by the code, it doesn't feel good. Looking at, at this and obviously if this home were set at one level equal to that garage level, it would necessitate no basement. And, you know, that's not good for the homeowner. And while that might be better for the neighbors, yeah, we probably wouldn't hear this appeal. So unfortunately, these things kind of happened and triggered different things, but when it comes to just the code, they stayed within it. Even though it doesn't feel good or look good and these look like similar situations, they were somehow not considered that based off of administrative decisions. And then just two other points, just since we're talking about a couple other things here. The timing, I disagree. If someone sends an email, Chris Ocker sends an email to someone with a decision, that's not public knowledge to anyone. You know, there's no way anyone could make an appeal. You have no idea that a decision was made until something official is, you know, put out there like a building permit. So I agree with this coming before us. I'm glad it did. Apologize to everyone involved. And then second, yeah, if, if this, and since this did come before us, this, the plan should be public. I mean, if the grounds were, someone can copy this, all of our stuff is televised on YouTube and has been for like the last decade and people could watch things. That's aside from this decision, but that also doesn't make this process feel good either for probably anyone involved, but that's kind of where I'm at.
Then Commissioner Strauss?
Yes. As Commissioner Bennett, you know, and, and others, there was a lot of stuff thrown at us. But I, I guess I would like to come, go back to the, to the comments made by the city attorney, Mr. Kendall. I think summarized, you know, the issue in front of us. You know, do we agree it was a rambler? And if yes, it seems to me the decision is very simple, straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
This is Commissioner Olson.
Oh, hi, hi, Commissioner Olson.
Hi. And I also agree with Commissioner Berube and, and others that I think it is, we have to focus on that. It's as simple as it's a split level or not. And I believe it's not. And so I am in favor of staff's recommendation.
Sure. Any other commissioners?
Sure, just, I meant to ask. When we posed the, the, the issue, could you perhaps make clear how are, an a, a yea or nay? What, what we're actually, because, you know, I don't want to be, I, I would just hope that it's, the instructions are very clear as to what a yea or nay.
Yeah. And I would, I would make a, you know, if I could, I could, I would just make the recommended action as that it would be to uphold city staff's administrative decision, approving the building permit number ED 183412 for a new home plan for the property located at 5708 Woodland Lane. I would put that motion out there and, you know, that we could second and then we could have discussion. I see others want to talk. But Jerry, that would, that would be, you know, if you agree with that, that would be a yea versus a nay. But I'll just put that out as a motion and see if there's a second.
I will second that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Alkire, did you wish to share something?
Yeah, I just wanted to share, to note that I, I agree with other commissioners who've spoken that this is not a split level home that, or the home that was taken down, the, the existing home was not a split level home. And that does seem to be the most important decision for us. I guess I'd also mention, you know, a lot of, a lot of times when we're running into questions or concerns about elevations, the overall height of the building is in question and it, it made it, it was significant to me anyway that the overall height of this new home that's being planned is under the, under the city spec. So it's, it's not adding to the over, whatever the elevations are, they're not adding to the overall height of the building. Thanks.
Good, Christian Alkire. Commissioner Agnew, were you raising your hand?
Yes, yes, I will, I will say. I mean, this is a tough one, others have, have addressed that, right? Like, this isn't clear cut. And I think for me, what is ultimately making my decision to uphold the decision of city staff is that it is very nuanced on how do you define that first floor? Because what I, what I'm seeing is this distinction here is that in one situation, the first floor might be that higher away from the garage and this new house that we're proposing, they're looking at that first floor as that mudroom connected off of the garage. And I think that that's what's leading some of this to not feel really great is in some ways it feels almost like, like a loophole or like, I, I fully understand that like the, the family came and they wanted to do this without a variance and like, I commend that. Like, this doesn't feel like a good situation for anyone. But my understanding of the, this, the zone and the way that a first floor is defined does leave that decision up to the developer. And so based off of the rules and regulations that are in place today, it, it does feel like they are within alignment. And so that, that's kind of where I'm seeing this today. Thank you.
Any other commissioners would like to say something?
Just a quick note, I wanted it to be no, I wanted to be noted that in agreement with Commissioner Agnew that this, again, well, many of others have said, with following the code, perhaps, I, I would, I would disagree. Again, maybe it's the, it is more of a loophole than, and, and so that is something I think that the, the commission and, and the city probably need to clarify in future because this was, this could set precedent for lar, like creating large homes. Cause in this case, it's only three feet up, but it could create six, seven feet situations. And I just wanted to be noted that, that in following and so, and like it does not feel good, it feels very manipulated. But I, I also think that it's something that we should be careful about for future precedent.
Bartling, anyone else? Okay, I'll say a few things. Just follow the 30 days, I think Commissioner, excuse me, Attorney Kendall is exactly right on the 30 days. That the decision was the granting of the permit. And I don't think that people should be tied to the first communication from city staff, you know, especially if those aren't public. I also think that the appellant clearly is in, his, the appellants were clearly in their rights to bring this case. There was discussion about standing and deems himself aggrieved. Standing, hello? Standing, this is not a lawsuit where someone has to prove damages to sue. This is a public matter. Deems himself aggrieved i- i- is a, is a term of art that's often used in public matters. Basically means someone who doesn't like something, doesn't like the decision and believes it affects them. They don't have to prove an injury in fact, like a monetary damage to deal with something with the, with the city. So I think that's right. I think the ordinance is a poor ordinance. I think the copyright argument is completely wrong and terrible precedent. And I would ask that those plans be displayed. I, 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 that was a terrible precedent. And I think the ordinance wasn't well-written. I think we have a lot of ordinances that are not really, hell, you know, they could be improved. I think we have ordinances that are, that are opportunities for improvement. Also, in our training a month or two ago with the city council, it was recommended by our outside expert that we get on a more regular course of reviewing our ordinances and Carrie and I talked about that and it's something that we're probably gonna start figuring how we can calendar and look at ordinances. That said, I think if you look at this with a, with a, with a, just a normal person's, reasonable person's understanding that previous house wasn't a split level. However, being a lawyer, I don't always know if you can look at things reasonably. I think you have to look at them in terms of what the ordinance said. I think there's a good case that that house was a split level as the ordinance was defined and as a lot of split levels are. So I totally get what everyone else is saying. I'd like to understand Commissioner Bartling's position a little bit more. Is she saying that it wasn't a split level, but that the, the ground level should be established by where the garage was as opposed to where the higher or where the, where the lower door was as opposed to the higher door?
Yeah, so I guess just to clarify it to me, so if you want to, if you want to read the code as such that it is not a split level, in fact, you know, is only used as a stairway, whatever, and it wasn't the main level of the house and you want to use the main level of the house and, and think of it more of as a rambler? I mean, it's kind of, it's a soft spot, right? But to me, you could argue that. However, you can't come around and build a new house and not argue that same thing. So in this situation, I feel that they're putting, there's a little bit of a mudroom there, but really it's not their main front entry and their main level of their house. So we're, we're creating a place in the way it's written and being interpreted that it is a, not a split level, but then this, but the new house is kind of a split level and they're able to use that, you know, entrance as their main level. So I don't know, it's to me, so that's where it's, it, to me feels very, it doesn't feel good at all because we're, we're allowing, it's using the advantage to both sides to win. Or they're using the advantage in both arguments to, to create what they need. So, but I mean, again, it, it's not written clearly enough and, and, you know. So.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bartling. Does anyone else have any further comments? Or questions? So Commissioner Olson, you made a motion, it was seconded, I believe, by Commissioner Strauss. Hello? Commissioner Bennett, did you have a, something further?
Yeah. I just wanted to reiterate, you know, staying with the code and if there's ambiguity or it's unclear where things can be construed, like we've learned, we need to err on the side of the, the property owner, not this, not the governing body. So, you know, that is, that is entirely why I'm in support of this. Although I just feel like the code is written poorly and this shouldn't be allowed, but, you know, we need to address that later, but right now we have to err on their side. I, I just, we have to.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett.
Our, our country was founded on property rights, right?
Let's, let's avoid politics at this public munisance. So Commissioner Olson, you made a motion which I basically believe is to uphold the city administrative decision. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And Commissioner Strauss, that's what you seconded? Upholding the city administrative decision?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So Ms. Olson or Ms. Ocker or, or Mr. Teague, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm going to recommend at this point that we have a roll vote and that an a is agreeing with the motion to uphold the administr, administrative decision. And nay would be to deny or, or disagree with the city administrative decision. Staff, would you, are you okay with that?
That's correct.
We would agree.
Okay, is it all the commissioners, are you all good with that? Okay, Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote, please?
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Karen Nemrod?
I'm going to vote nay, but I'm still going to congratulate the property owner and developer and, and your attorney, you know, and I, I think this means you can go forward, although I'm going to turn to Planner Ocker. What is the process now that we've voted to approve the administrative decision? Is, is that conclusory or what, what happens next?
Well, like any application, there is a 10-day right of appeal. So if anybody feels aggrieved by the decision of the planning commission, they can file an appeal with the city clerk within 10 calendar days. they can file an appeal with the city clerk within 10 calendar days.
Well, thank you, Planner Acker. And I will say that this has been a robust and fulsome discussion. So thank you to everyone and, but we do, it is now 9:51 and we have many other matters. So I'm going to try to segue into our next public hearing matter, which is a variance request for no basement at 5312 Halifax Avenue. And appearing for the city is Assistant City Planner Emily Botticker.
Yes, thank you. Let's get this pulled up here. Okay. 5312 Halifax Avenue is located on the west side of Halifax Avenue between 54th Street and 52nd Street West. The applicant is requesting a variance from the minimum basement requirement in order to build a new two-story home without a basement at 5312 Halifax Lane. Due to the 100-year flood and 10-year flood plane elevations, the lowest floor for this property cannot be below 879.5 feet. The proposed home has been designed with no basement to accommodate the lowest floor elevation requirements due to the floodplain. The city of Edina zoning ordinance requires that all new homes have a basement. Basements are required to have a gross floor area of at least 50% of the gross floor area of the story above it. The city's engineering department has reviewed and had this application and has submitted comments that were included in your packet tonight. As you know, Minnesota statute and the Edina zoning ordinance require that certain conditions must be met for a variance to be approved. Um, the proposed use is permitted in the R1 zoning district and complies with the zoning standards or all this project complies with the zoning standards with the exception of not having a basement. The current code requires that 50% of the new home's first floor have a full basement below. The practical difficulty is caused by the floodplain elevation and the need to keep the lowest level of the proposed home outside of the floodplain. The circumstances are unique to the subject property and are not self-created by the applicant. There are not floodplain elevation limitations on every R1 zoned lot in the city of Edina. Granting the variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood. If the applicant had to comply with the basement ordinance, the first floor of the new home would have to be raised substantially. The applicant wishes to not construct a basement and is not asking for a first floor elevation variance or an overall height variance for the new home. Tonight's staff's recommendation is to approve a variance to the basement requirement. So a new two-story home can be built without a basement at 5312 Halifax Lane based on the findings and conditions listed in the staff report. And with that, I can take any questions and I believe Alex Lang with City Homes, who is the applicant, is also on the line.
Thank you, Ms. Botticker. Do any commissioners have questions for Ms. Botticker? Very none. You can ask later. I, I believe you said it was Alex Holmes from City Homes?
Alex Lang, I believe.
I'm sorry.
Actually, actually it's David Egger, the Director of Construction at City Homes. Um, Alex is with us right now.
Hello, Mr. Egger. Would you like to share anything?
Um, very little, really. Uh, I think it's pretty straightforward that, um, our clients want to build this home. Um, and are, you know, complying with every other setback, building height. Um, you know, the lowest floor, uh, as well as not raising, uh, the new, uh, main floor beyond a foot above. So essentially literally complying with, with every other, um, applicable, uh, regulation. So really, um, it, it just does come down to, uh, the floodplain level and simply not being able to build a basement, um, in this scenario. Um, we've provided, uh, ample, um, water retention, uh, as well as far as, you know, not disturbing any of the floodplains and not pushing any water back to the neighbors forward. You know, in fact, we're, we're actually helping the neighbors to the north, um, in, in slightly as far as slowing that water down, um, keeping it to this property. So, um, simply put, uh, we really don't have a lot of choice. As far as, uh, whether or not we can build a basement if, uh, if we want to go forward with building this home. So I hope that, uh, everybody agrees and that, uh, we can get approval on this.
Thank you, Mr. Egger. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Bartling, is your hand? No? Okay. Um, then this is a public hearing. And if anyone is listening, would like to comment on this matter, please call 800-374-0221. Enter conference ID 4363588 and press star one. And you'll be placed into queue and city staff will admit you, uh, when we have you. And then you'll have up to three minutes. We just ask and, you know, you've probably heard me say this a few times. We've been on for a while tonight. Please try not to repeat any previous callers. Uh, Dan Reesig, do we have anybody? Nobody at the moment. Uh, if we're comfortable waiting about a minute, uh, when we get to 9:58, we will proceed. Mr. Chair, we do not have any callers, um, at this moment. I believe you can feel free to go ahead. Thanks, Dan. Thanks. So, uh, could we get a motion to close the public hearing then?
Move to close the public hearing.
I second that.
I agree.
Commissioner Bennett, Commissioner Berube, I believe was ahead of the wire there. Uh, Ms. Olson, could you do a, uh, roll vote to close the public hearing?
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Chair Amrav?
So that brings it back to the planning commission. Do, uh, does anyone have any questions? Any fu, you know, after comments, Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, um, thank you, Chair. Um, you know, we've probably looked at three, three or four, um, of these within the last two years. And, um, the, the fact of groundwater issues and the floodplain elevation, probably the best reason of all. So I mean, it's sort of, um, yeah, I don't, I can't see that be any, any concerns about this. And I just, I know we perhaps mentioned about putting this on a, part of the work plan, discussing maybe not, you know, the, the idea of requiring basements, maybe that needs to be looked at. Maybe it's an issue for our work plan. So that was, that was bringing up, because it, these seem to be such routine requests and. Okay, thank you.
So, Commissioner Bartling, did you have something? A comment?
Um, no, I was, I was just gonna say, I think, um, this is like, let's change the code night, I think it's turning into. But, uh, you know, I think, you know, in many communities with the aging population that we have, um, people want to have, uh, single, you know, with, with no basements. They want slab on grade, one-story homes that they don't have to navigate stairs. And we need to be respectful of that. And I think especially with Edina, uh, we have a very, a very, a population that lives here forever and ever. So I, you know, I think that's only going to become more popular and we, we should be changing that. And I make a motion that we approve this variance and move on.
I second.
Hey, Commissioner Bartling, uh, who, Commissioner Agnew seconded. Uh, anyone else's comments? Commissioner Berube, I see you, you, did you have something?
I was gonna make a motion. So.
You got the drop on you.
I'm, I'm, I'm good for the I.
Thanks. Anyone else with anything? I just want to say one quick thing, and that is in all seriousness, one of the, one of the more interesting things, I mean, if you just like hearing interesting things, is Commissioner Bennett's explanation of why people used to have basements and why they may not be as needed in the future. Maybe when we have, let's change the ordinance night, we can give him a couple of minutes. Because it actually truly is interesting and not everybody's heard it. So, um, but with that, unless there's anything else, I'll offer, I'll, I'll ask Ms. Olson to do a roll vote. Commissioner Bennett?
I'll, I'll keep this short, but you know, we should get on changing this one particularly because the previous applicant, they, they might've considered that, but it would have required a variance. So this, we need, we can't act slow.
Anything else? Ms. Olson, can you do a roll vote, please? When I would be approving the variance.
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Berube?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Chair Amrav?
Aye. Well, congratulations, Mr. Egger. Thank you for your presentation. And, and now at 10:02 on my, uh, iPad, go to our next public hearing, which is a preliminary rezoning from PCD1, Planned Commercial District 1, and APD Automobile, Automobile Parking District 2, PUD at 4917 Eden Avenue. And welcoming him for his first presentation tonight is Planner, Cuny Development Director, Kerry Teague. All yours, Kerry.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. I'll try to get through this fast in, uh, respect of your time so we can get to the public hearing. So this property is located in the Grandview, uh, district. It's kitty corner from City Hall, just west of Golf Course. Property has a planned commercial district, uh, zoning designation. Parking lot to the south is zoned automobile parking district. It's guided in our, oh, there's a height limitation of four stories and 48 feet. Uh, the site is, is guided in the comprehensive plan for, uh, mixed-use development with a maximum density of up to 100 units an acre. Here's a quick shot of the existing site. Within the Grandview transportation plan, and we talked about this at sketch plan, there is a plan for reconfiguration of some of the, the, uh, entry and, uh, off-ramps for Highway 100. Uh, the graphic here, you can see, uh, the on-ramp here. This next graphic shows it a little differently. So in one option, there would be this off-ramp off of 100, a new frontage road. There's also an alternative for a flyover. That would, this is, um, way in the future. Um, but to be respectful of this option, the applicant is, is suggesting, um, providing that easement for the city to potentially build that in the future. This is a proposal that the city does have complete discretion on. This is a rezoning. So the city, uh, does have discretion to approve or deny. So what the request is, is to tear down the existing Perkins in the office building and build a seven-story, 196-unit apartment with a 300, uh, 3,700 square foot restaurant. They've reduced the number of units from the original plans. They're suggesting 196 from 208, which was indicated in their, uh, submitted plans. Uh, 20% of the units, they're suggesting for affordable housing at 60% median. So that they are pledging to meet the city's affordable housing policy within the project by providing the units within the project. The parking would be below the building. There would be 29 surface stalls on the west side of the building, uh, to serve that restaurant. There's also some on the east side as well. They did go through sketch plan. You may recall that there was an office building proposed where that road, uh, is, is to go through. They have eliminated that. Uh, the general building plans haven't changed. So again, they've eliminated that office building from sketch plan. They have added that restaurant and coffee shop. That was a recommendation by both the planning commission and city council. Provide a more mixture of uses here. And again, that, that roadway easement. So I'll just quickly move through the, uh, the plans. Sorry, I should have made that bigger initially. Um, this is a look, uh, from Wilson uh, from Eden Avenue. They are suggesting, uh, uh, solar garden on the top as well as some planner boxes on the roof. The building would be 76 feet tall. And again, the request is to rezone the site to planned unit development. Um, they would be asking to vary from setbacks, floor area, floor area ratio, and, and building height. PUD ensures that the affordable housing would occur on the site as that would be written right into the ordinance. Uh, just quickly reviewing the site plan, I mentioned the access off of Wilson. Uh, in this turnaround here, access to the garage is also off of Wilson. Uh, there's that west parking lot landscaping far exceeds our city code requirement. There would be an underground filtration water retention area underneath the parking. Um, staff had some initial concerns about the setback along Eden. And we had, um, asked the developer if they could take a look at shifting the building to the south to provide a little of that relief. So they have indicated a willingness to shift it five feet to the south. That provides a little extra room here. Engineering had some concerns about the entry on Wilson, the proximity to the intersection to the north. Um, they are acceptable to this arrangement with that five-foot shift. Also, they needed to maintain a 10-foot setback along the south lot line in order to provide, uh, window openings, uh, per, uh, building code. Building would be, uh, brick and stone. A traffic and parking study was done by, um, Ed Terhar of Winkin Associates. Ed is here with us this evening and he's, and he's gonna talk a little bit about the study. Um, but the study does conclude that the parking that's proposed, um, is adequate to serve the site, including the restaurant, and that no roadway improvements are needed. So with that, I will turn it over to Ed Terhar to talk a little more about the, the traffic and parking study. Ed, I assume you're still with us?
Yeah, I still here, Kerry. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Ed Terhar. I'm a traffic engineer with Wink. And we completed the traffic and parking study for this site. I'll give a brief overview of it, uh, at this time. Um, the traffic portion of the study included 10 intersections, uh, surrounding the site. Uh, intersections along Eden Avenue, 50th Street, Vernon Avenue, um, Grange Road and Arcadia. Um, at five of those intersections, we had, or the city staff had previous traffic data uh, that was collected in 2019, uh, pre-pandemic. So that was determined to be our, our baseline starting for the traffic volumes. We were going to use the 2019 as our, our starting point, um, to avoid the impacts of the pandemic, which have reduced traffic volumes at certain locations. Um, at the other five intersections, there was no previous data. So we did collect new traffic data at those intersections in March, uh, when school was in session and not on spring break. And we did that because that gives us a, a baseline for those intersections. Uh, and also gives us an idea of the turning movement percentages at each of those intersections. That data was then adjusted upward, um, using the 2019 data from the, from the other intersections as well as, uh, daily traffic volumes that are, that are available in the area and trip generation information for residential areas to make sure that we had enough, you know, the volumes collected there were, were adequate and adjusted properly. So with that, we are able to adjust those volumes to a level that, um, gives us a good, um, estimation of the, of the 2019 or pre-pandemic, um, of volume levels. So those volumes are then used to develop traffic forecasts. Uh, the traffic forecast included a background growth, which also increases the volumes to account for other development in this area outside of this particular site. And then the site itself, um, the trips generated by the, on the site itself, the uses on the site. Now, this is a redevelopment site. So you have two parts to the trip generation. You have the new trips that are generated by the, the residential, proposed residential and restaurant. And then you have the trips that are eliminated, um, once the, you know, with the, the removal of the Perkins restaurant and the office. So we end up with a net number of trips for the site. And in this particular case, the, the site, um, would generate uh, a net of 57 new trips. 57 new trips would be added to the roadway system in the AM peak hour. 88 trips would be added in the PM peak hour. Eighty eight trips would be added in the PM peak hour, and one thousand one hundred and ninety would be added on a twenty four hour weekday basis. Now, those are based on the two hundred and eight dwelling units. I think Kerry did mention that it has been reduced slightly to a hundred and ninety six. So these numbers would be slightly lower. Uh, the trip generation numbers will be slightly lower than than what we have in the report. Those trips were then assigned to the roadway through all of our analysis intersections. And what we found, um, once we we ran the the capacity analysis for each intersection, which gives us level of service, uh, level of service A is is minimal delay, level service F is is um, unacceptable delay. We found that the the addition of these trips from this site, the net number of trips, uh, had minimal impact on on the ten intersections, the intersection analysis, the intersection results. So the intersections have capacity to accommodate the trips from the site. Now, the the analysis did show that there are some individual movements at four intersections that um, operate at poor levels of service under existing conditions and and also future conditions. Um, starting on Fiftieth Street, the intersections with with Sunny Slope and Dale. Um, the movements onto the roadway um, are difficult in the AM and the PM. They do experience delay, and they operate at poor levels of service. This is due to the amount of traffic on Fiftieth Street. Fiftieth Street is a an important east-west corridor through the city, and it carries a high traffic volume. So at locations, you know, along Fiftieth, at at these intersections, at other intersections to the east, um, trying to access Fiftieth Street from a stop condition is difficult at times in the AM and the PM. Um, and that's, uh, like I said, that's a a a result of the amount of traffic on Fiftieth Street. The other locations that had movements that operated poorly were the intersections of Grange Road and the uh, exit ramp from Highway one hundred. The eastbound left turn in the afternoon, the PM peak operates poorly. Um, we did look at that more closely and determine that the queue length for that movement does not back up onto Highway one hundred. So it it's, while it's a poor level of service, it is not an operational issue for the for the freeway, and therefore it's not a a big problem at that location. And then the other location that had some um, delay was the intersection of Arcadia and Eden um, on the far western, southwestern portion of the study. That intersection, the eastbound through operated poorly in the AM and the PM. That intersection is actually going to be reconstructed soon to roundabout. Um, and that does solve those problems. That intersection with a roundabout operates um, at uh, basically a little level of service A, both the AM and PM. So there will be additional capacity there to handle handle this project and and other traffic in the future. So that is the summary of the traffic. Uh, the parking piece, as Kerry mentioned, we did also look at uh, the parking generation relative to the number of spaces provided. Um, we calculated the peak demand using IT data. And we found that um, for the residential, and once again, this was the two hundred and eight units, um, and the restaurant, uh, the peak uh, demand is uh, is less than the the number of spaces provided. So the number of spaces provided can accommodate the peak demand. We don't see an issue with the with the number of spaces provided um, being inadequate. We did also review the pedestrian and bicycle uh, facilities in this area. Um, there is sidewalk along most of the streets here. Um, there are some gaps, and the the pedestrian plan did show new sidewalk along Grange Road and Fiftieth and and Vernon in the future, which would help connect those areas together for for pedestrian routes. Um, and then it also did identify a buffered bicycle route on Fiftieth and Eden at some point in the future, and that also would um, you know, improve the connection, the bicycle connection in this area. So we are recommending that the, you know, the project include pedestrian and bicycle amenities, um, bicycle parking in the parking ramp, bicycle, you know, outside parking, short term parking for for the restaurant use, for for resident use, and then pedestrian amenities, you know, street level that that would encourage those alternative, alternative modes. So with that, that's my summary at this point.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Terhar.
I will continue on. So some of the flexibility that they are requesting here in terms of setback would be the setback on Eden by pulling the building back. The the main building would be fifteen feet uh, back, uh, thirty feet back from the curb. Also, from Wilson Road would be fifteen feet, thirty five feet to the curb. And also that south lot line where there would be a ten foot setback. Building height, as I mentioned, four stories, forty eight feet is the maximum that's allowed there. They're proposing seven stories and seventy six feet. Uh, we do have a regulation um, for a seven story building. The code suggests that a setback of four times the building height is required. So given that a three hundred and four foot setback would be required to the closest property to the north, I have a graphic that I'll show in a minute. The density here would be ninety four units per acre, so on the higher end. And the uh, the parking, um, as mentioned by Mr. Terhar, uh, there would be adequate parking. So the primary issue for consideration of the Planning Commission is the proposal to rezone to PUD. Are um, is it reasonable for this site? So staff is recommending approval. We we do believe uh, that the proposal is reasonable to justify the PUD. Um, the location of this site, as I mentioned, is in the mixed use center in the Grandview District. And actually, the current zoning of the of the site also allows the uses. A restaurant and multifamily housing is considered a conditionally permitted use. The project uh, would provide affordable housing within the project to meet the city's affordable housing policy. Um, they would be providing that easement that would give the city the and the and MINDA the opportunity to construct those potentially a new off ramp uh, off of Highway one hundred. Uh, we also believe that the proposal for seven stories here is reasonable. Um, the height's justified in order to provide that affordable housing to uh, the the additional height is needed, the additional height um, and density is needed in order to provide the the affordable housing to offset those costs. As I mentioned, the nearest single family home, so measuring from the closest property line to the closest property line of an R one district is five hundred and forty feet away across Fiftieth. So there's adequate separation based on the code to the nearest single family homes. Um, and we do believe that the proposal meets the PUD criteria. Uh, would create a more efficient and creative use of the property, mixture of uses, high quality design. Um, buildings brought up to the street, parking underground. The the one surface lot is adjacent to Highway one hundred. Uh, the corner would be designed as a public art plaza space. And but most important, um, the provision of the affordable housing units and an easement uh, for the future roadway. Um, and there's also policies within the comprehensive plan that would support project. Um, so again, staff is recommending approval. However, be because uh, this is a a project where you could make a case for approval and denial, um, as is our our standard, we've provided an option if the Planning Commission doesn't agree with staff. We've provided some findings uh, for a denial of the request. In terms of uh, Better Together, we did receive a lot of feedback on Better Together. Up until about four o'clock this afternoon, we had received forty five contributors uh, to the to comment on the project. We had thirty two that were in favor of the project and twelve that were against. Some of the concerns that were raised um, for those that were not in support of the project, main concern seems to be with uh, with traffic and height. A lot of comments about a desire to keep Perkins on the site. Um, architecture was another concern, concerns about uh, tax increment financing, which is more for the City Council, not so much the Planning Commission. Um, this is a dangerous area for pedestrians and pedestrian safety. I do want to mention that the plans do show sidewalks right along the curb. Uh, within the engineering memo that's provided in your packet, one of their conditions is that that they install the boulevard style um, sidewalks where there would be a a small buffer strip uh, that would separate traffic from the sidewalk. Uh, those that were in favor of the project, uh, liked the replacement of a new restaurant on the site. Um, they felt that the site needs to be redeveloped. Um, the distance from residential, um, positive comments about the architecture, the mixed use. This is a good location for for redevelopment, um, buffer to the freeway um, and the affordable housing elements. So with that, I will stop there and answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also ready to make a presentation as well.
Thank you, Planner Teague and Mr. Terhar. Great presentation. Do any members of the Commission have questions for either Planner Teague or Mr. Terhar? Commissioner Bennett.
Yeah, so uh, actually brought up in one of the specific uh, comments from Better Together, Kerry, I was wondering if you could address the history of the one hundred dwelling units per acre for density added on this site and how that changed in this comprehensive plan.
Uh, well, the current comprehensive plan, um, that density range is between twenty and one hundred units an acre. I believe the comments were in regard to the previous comprehensive plan, so I guess I'm not sure what your your specific question is.
I guess the question was, um, when that was upped to a hundred was, I guess, the the process by which that was increased to a hundred seemed to be tied to a specific project elsewhere in the district that then triggered it just to be kind of blanket applied to the mixed use centers in the whole district. I just wanted you to uh,
Oh, yeah. So if if my memory serves, um, it was with the Trammell Crowe project, the one just west of the public work site. That project required a comprehensive plan amendment, and so that's when the density was was increased there.
Oh, so I guess because the density was increased on one site, it increased it for?
It increased it for the for the whole district. And so when we did the comprehensive plan here in um, our our latest update here in twenty twenty, um, that remained in place, the the one hundred units per acre maximum.
Okay, yeah, the the history just seemed a little unclear and seemed a little out of place, I suppose, of, you know, for one project, we made an exception, and then that granted an exception for all similar designations across the district. That just didn't seem right to me, but.
That is, that's how we traditionally had done comprehensive plan amendments. When there's an increase in density, it's for that entire area that the project is located in.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, okay, so I just want, I have a few questions, just flying up on Commissioner Bennett's question. Planner Teague, I I believe that's correct what you just stated is that what's typically done when density has been increased in one area is that the whole area, the density was increased, um, and that this was also reviewed during the comp plan process. Uh, one thing I would say is, although it was typically done that way, my memory is not always. There were times when we said, for this, this time, we're only gonna do it for this parcel. So there are times when we've done it both ways. Is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
And 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 this time, we chose to do it area wide as opposed to parcel specific, which is what we did probably, I'm not, I don't want to guess at numbers, but I'm comfortable saying more than fifty percent of the time is how this was, this increase in density. Is that correct?
I I believe that to be true, yeah.
I don't, I mean, I don't want to say ninety percent, but you know. Um, uh, Mr. Terhar, I had a few follow up questions for you. Unfortunately, for some reason, I wasn't able to open your reports yet. I was able to open it earlier before the meeting. Um, I want to talk about three intersections with you, the Grange intersection, the Dale intersection, and the entrance to Highway one hundred north. Um, because I can't open your report, uh, can you give an estimate as to what the current time delays are there and what the impact of this project would be during rush hours?
Talking about the intersection itself or what?
Yeah, yeah, how you would measure it. Yeah, for for that, for the Grange intersection, the Dale intersection, and the entrance to Highway one hundred north.
So you're talking the the Grange, the what, the intersection that had the level service issue that we were talking about?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, hold on a second. Let me see if I can find this. So if we have, let's see, so you're talking the difference between the no build and the build in the future, I I would think, the future numbers?
Yeah, just, yeah, just, yeah, yeah, that that's, that'd be great.
To, let's see, if we look at twenty 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 four, no build at Grange and Grange and the ramp. The intersection itself had twenty two point six seconds of delay. That's in the no build. And then if you go to the build, which means we're adding on the net trips, right? We're just making a a change from no, no development to development. And it changes, it changes from twenty two point six to, hang with me here. Uh, twenty two point six to twenty three point three. It goes up slightly.
That's Grange. And what about Dale?
Yep. So if we go to Dale, Fiftieth and Dale?
Yeah.
Uh, no, and I'm just looking at the PM here. I'm not looking at the, the PM is is the most critical. Uh, so Fiftieth and Dale, the intersection delay is five point five seconds uh, in the P, in the no build. And then once we add the development, it goes to it stays at five point five. It actually doesn't change.
And is that, is that the same for people trying to enter onto Fiftieth from Dale?
Uh, no, that would be different. This is for the intersection itself.
What about people trying to enter onto Fiftieth from Dale?
From Dale?
Yeah.
That goes from uh, forty one point one. So that would be the people from the north trying to get on to Fiftieth. It's forty one point one, and then it goes up to, or it is uh, forty one point four.
Thank you. And then one final one.
Yep, go ahead.
Entrance onto Highway one hundred north off of Fiftieth.
Off of Fiftieth, oh, the the, well, that entered, so you're on Fiftieth and you're going to go north? That's a free right turn. So there's no, there's a, that's an entrance ramp. There's no intersection there. There's no, that wasn't something we looked at.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Thank you. That's all I had. Does anyone else have any questions?
Just a quick, Commissioner Bartling. Um, just a quick clarification. So if we approve the the PUD, um, does that mean that this is the plan that's going forward, or is there another process with that? As I'm just getting on board and trying to understand this.
Yes, so if the property, so if a if a PUD rezoning is approved here, we establish a new zoning ordinance specific for this site. That that's a draft of that ordinance is included in the packet as one of your exhibits. So we're setting the standard that this is the only project that could be built on the site. We establish what those setbacks are, what the parking requirements are, and the uses that are allowed. So this would be um, the the preliminary phase. So this would be the preliminary phase for rezoning to PUD. So in a sense, it's an ordinance amendment also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartley. So in other words, Kerry, approving the PUD tonight would approve this plan?
Correct, on a preliminary basis. Yeah, they still have to come back for final, but yes.
Not to us necessarily, though.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, okay. Did anyone else have any questions for the staff?
I have a, I have a question either for staff or for the traffic specialist. And that is, as Kerry mentioned, there were some people in the Better Together who were concerned about the traffic. And some of that was talking about 50th. Not necessarily in front of this property, but you know, 50th and how this traffic would move into 50th. And I just wanted to clarify, is 50th any Dyna Street or is 50th a county street?
50th is a city street. To the, from Highway 100 to the east, it's a city street. To the west, where it's Vernon, that's a county road.
Okay, so the city could control traffic coming between Highway 100 east to 50th?
Yes.
And that would be under their purview? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Well, I see Mr. Walton here and perhaps others with you. If you'd like to speak, we'd love to hear from you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Thanks for having us back and for working so late. For anyone that we didn't meet back in January, Nick Walton, President of Reiter Walton Development. We're a local development company that works almost exclusively in the metro area. And we specialize in multifamily projects like this with high design. Since we're back for a second time and staff was so detailed in their report and presentation, and it's getting late, we're going to be as quick as we can tonight. So first, you're going to hear from Chris, the architect from BKV, who was with us last time. Then Kyle and I will each share a couple of quick points from our firm. And then we'll be ready to respond to any questions that anyone might have. And then we just want to let everybody know tonight, we also have our civil engineer, Mike, in case there's any technical questions that people might have. And then Carol, our land use attorney. So with that, we're just going to get started. Like I said, we'll be as quick as we can. Chris, you want to run through our updates?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Nick. Good evening all. I'm Chris Pelkowicz with BKV Group, Architect and Partner. Going to share screens here. Just give a few updates. So a couple of the items where, as we were developing this plan that really informed us overall, was we looked at the comprehensive plan and we looked at the Grand View Development Framework. And through that, a couple of things started to inform us overall. The allowable units per acre was one item that we looked at. And really trying to create a high quality project here that would be as one of the Grand View elements, a stepping stone that could start to, as there's a lot of great development on the, on the west side of Highway 100. We wanted to bring a little bit to the east side and be a nice complement to City Hall overall. And then with that as well, we are looking at some of the Grand View Framework plans. And it talks about walkable and active street fronts, the inclusion of affordable housing, which is, we're reading that the regulation has noted primarily using structured parking, incorporating sustainability features and all those elements we've incorporated into this plan overall. As just a quick reminder, one element that happened on the site was that we are preserving the west side of the site for the potential future roadway as well. And I'm just going to see that as we get into it. The, the first floor plan here is an active street front along Eden. And that was part of our reasoning to minimize the setback along Eden. That we have a short, only half of the, less, about a third of the overall site is really against the, right up near the street. And then MINDOT owns this triangular chunk of land here. So we felt if we were to create a little bit more of an active feeling of the street front, if we could push the building a little bit closer to the edge. And then in this pink area is our, I'll zoom in here, is our lobby and leasing fitness center here. And then the, the restaurant space that was mentioned is on the northwest corner of the project here as well with a drive in and parking lot dedicated for that. So really, as you'll come across the, the bridge, which really is not a pleasant experience right now, we're really going to have an enhanced landscaping. Perkins currently has an agreement with MINDOT that they're doing up enhanced landscaping on their land and improvements there. So we'll continue that trend. And you'll see that a bit more in our renderings. The other pieces of this, as we come around the site, we have our, our main, we have a vehicle drop off here for just visitors, Uber's lifts, things of that nature, food drop off. So we just have a little bit of convenience drop off area here. And then we have our entry drive down at the south end of Wilson here for the two levels of below grade parking. And as just a reminder, the building configuration opens up towards the, the country club as we really studied some of the, the projects around it to inform some of our thinking. And really wanted to be a neighbor to the country club and open up and continue that open space toward it. As mentioned, we have the two levels of below grade parking here. That's, and that's one of those Grand View items of primarily focusing on structured parking. Levels two through six are pretty standard stacked levels at this point. And then level seven is our, our top level. We're incorporating some larger units in here. And as Kerry mentioned, we were previously at 208 units and we've reduced to 196 now. So we've reduced that a bit. And then we have some stepping back at that top level to reduce the height of the building or the feel of the height of the building overall. And then the top, the, up on the roof, the north side, we have garden boxes. And we're looking at having an outdoor amenity space and then having a solar ready roof on the south side of the building. The, the design of the exterior is really inspired by the immediate neighbors. And we really look to the City Hall, the Country Club, the neighboring multifamily buildings, and then the, the custom single family homes in the area. And the, the City Hall is one element that we, we tended to pull from quite a bit. As actually BKV was the architect on that project, you know, a few years back, that we really looked at the homes and just the tradition of the city and we, we built upon that again. And you'll see some of those materials of the buff stone here at the base and then the copper and a two-story entry element. And then the country club is, it really has this beautiful patio and trellis opening up towards the golf club was just another element that, that caught our eye. And then one more element on this sheet is on Grange Hall. The, the more vertical style windows with, with muttons incorporated into it. That you don't see, you see that a bit in some of the other multifamily, but you'll see we're doing it as a divided light to, to bring in a little more richness. We're further just inspired by the, the overall richness and character of some of the other multifamily context in the area and the, the higher level of detailing that you see in some of the nearby projects. And then lastly, as I mentioned, the homes is a, is a piece that we really look to as well. That homes near the golf course and the materiality of the homes, looking at the, the stone on the homes, copper accents on, on the, above the bay window here, usage of, of white as some of their, their main facade elements as well. And I'll show you how that is kind of working into our design then. So bringing that all together, we have a traditional architectural style on this, but done so in a contemporary manner. So we have a, a strong base, a two-story base around the project. And then the main corner here, at Eden and Wilson, we have a two-story veranda piece here as well as the art plaza at the corner. And then we have a middle of four stories with white brick around it and then cement board as the infill. And then the, the seventh level of step back is mentioned before, really on the street sides. And you can see some amenity space to, to create some further stepping back towards the, towards the golf course side as well. This is moving a little bit further along Wilson. You can see the opening to our courtyard here. And one of the elements that we did was to reduce the size and feel of, of the scale of this was to create two wings connected by a glassy link. And the glassy link goes all seven stories of the project. And will allow light to flood in from the west to give a little more light as, as you get some deeper shadows as the season goes on. View moving west down Eden a little bit. And this is a newer view that we haven't shown before. We showed it to the neighborhood, but of what the restaurant may feel like overall. And just giving that a sense of an active vibrant corner here. And if that, you know, future roadway comes in, it will certainly help anchor that corner even further. Just a couple more slides here. The updated bird's eye that Kerry shared as well. And a little bit sense of the entry. And then lastly, just the, the materials of a white brick, cosona stone, so we're looking at some cement board. And then the copper accents as a metal panel that is kind of pulling from the City Hall as well. Turn it over to you, Kyle.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, Kyle Brasser here with Reiter Walton Development. Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm a developer with Reiter Walton Development and I would like to just quickly talk about the neighborhood process and the neighborhood meetings that have taken place on this development. We have, we've held two separate neighborhood meetings with members from both the Sunny Slope and Gulf Terrace neighborhoods in attendance at both meetings. Each meeting was attended by about 27 or 28 people. We commonly just do a single neighborhood meeting. But at this one, at our first meeting that was held back in February, it became clear pretty quickly that traffic was a question that came up repeatedly. And that was a big focus of the meeting. And we knew that the city would be engaging a traffic study to review as part of this development proposal, but one had not been kicked off yet. So we committed at that first meeting to come back again and present the traffic study conclusions once they were available from the city's study. So then again, in this month of April, we came back, had a similar, similar turnout in both members from Sunny Slope and Gulf Terrace again. And we were able to share the same conclusions that Mr. Terrar just shared with Wank. We didn't quite have his level of detail on some of the specifics, but we were able to present that the development proposal as proposed would have a minimal impact on traffic in the surrounding area. And then further, the development as just apartments, not including the 3,700 square foot restaurant concept, would actually have a net reduction in traffic trips when compared to the site's current use as a full-service restaurant. And so again, mostly heard about traffic at the neighborhood meetings. We did get a couple of comments about height at the most recent one. And the two that I can think of were really about height leading to density, people on the site, and then as a result, more, more traffic was really what was kind of at the root of that concern. And I think that, you know, Ed's conclusions speak to, again, the traffic specifically. After, you know, no one was, people weren't talking necessarily about, you know, shadowing or obstructing views or anything like that. After the neighborhood meeting, when we saw the, the draft staff presentation for tonight, we did read through the public comment and we saw one about questioning about whether or not the building would shadow the golf course. So we did put together a shadow study to try to address that. And we can get into that at some point if anybody would like. The, the kind of quick conclusions are that the shadowing on the, on the golf course to the east is minimal. And only really do you get into any kind of shadowing on the golf course in the winter months in the evening when it's effectively dark outside and the golf courses closed. But again, happy to kind of circle back on that later if people would like. And then one other height related comment that we heard at the second neighborhood meeting, and it was a one-off. And I think I was understanding it correctly, there was a discussion of precedent. And then somebody said, you know, will, will rezoning this to seven stories set some kind of a precedent? Chris, could you, would you mind actually pulling up the, the diagram of the potential future off-ramp? Because this is, this is the slide that it really relates to. I think there might be some, some questions that, that were arising about. Does, you know, on this diagram to the right, Site A is our development site. And then potentially down the road, as Kerry mentioned in his proposal or in his overview, there's a potential that the Highway 100 off-ramp gets rerouted. And that could then result in a Site B and a Site C creation that could provide some development potential in the future. And I think there was a question of, well, does, does allowing a seven-story building on Site A, you know, set that precedent for Sites B and more importantly, C, which is right on 50th? And so I just want to touch on something Kerry mentioned earlier, which is, you know, we have to, in order to achieve the seven-story height that we're proposing, we have to abide by a minimum 304-foot setback from the nearest residential home. We're actually 540 feet, so we're substantially beyond that. But using Site C as an example, that's clearly much closer than the 304 feet to get to that kind of a height. So there are already, I believe, and as I understand it, restrictions in place that would prevent that from happening if that off-ramp were ever to be reguided. I just thought that that was something that I wanted to touch on because we kind of heard it at one point. And I think that really kind of summarizes what I'd like to touch on, on the, the neighborhood and the public engagement. I'd like to, now I hand it over to Nick Walton, who I think will wrap it up.
Thanks, Kyle. I did two more quick points. One is a clarification, and then I want to talk just briefly about this restaurant idea. So regarding the affordable units, which is condition number nine on the report, as we've said all along, we plan to include the affordable units in the building versus using the buyout option. We are developing an affordable project in an adjacent suburb right now. And after doing a bunch of market research, it was clear that 50% AMI units are largely missing in the overall market. So on that project, we actually switched our plan to include more 50% units since they offer a deeper subsidy and are more impactful. So even though number nine references the 60, the 60% option, we're going to end up actually doing the 50% option. We'll, we'll update that. We made that decision after we'd already submitted. And then the last piece is just the restaurant. Ed, if you don't mind, can you just clarify, Kyle just said it, but because I want to present something to, to the commissioners here. But can you just clarify, just make sure we understand it right? If we were to do the 208 units, now 196 units, and not do the restaurant, is it a decrease in park, in traffic from what's there right now?
Based on the 208, I'd have to rerun the numbers, but I, I think it would still be the same. In that case, the, if it was just the residential, that would generate less, fewer trips than the existing Perkins and, and office use on the site. It would be a reduction.
So the last piece that I want to throw out there, if everybody remembers, you guys have a lot of meetings. In January, we talked about our, how we've done 32 projects in the metro area, how we try to be super collaborative. And Kerry pointed out a bunch of changes we've made along the way. One of them was the restaurant. Well, first it was the big removal of the office building. And then in, in January, Planning Commission and Council actually brought it up too, said, would you consider a restaurant? Restaurants can be a real pain to have in buildings, but they can be a great amenity. So I didn't want to do it. I told you all I'd consider it. We did consider it. Now we like it. But if, if in this whole process, removing it and putting three or four units back in, in its place and just going back to residential is what helps enough people get comfortable, we would offer that. That could be a condition. It's not our first choice. We like the suggestion. We like the ad. We think it's going to be an amenity to the residents and an amenity to the neighborhood. So just to be clear, first choice is leave it as designed. But I want to just put that on the table. We'd offer to remove it because then we're truly under the current traffic use if that ends up being helpful. So I just want to kind of end my initial piece with that. And then if anyone has questions for, for me or the development team, you know, we're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Walton and the, and your team. Thank you for a nice presentation. Do any members of Planning Commission have a question for the development team? Commissioner Agnew?
I, I have one question now and maybe I'll reserve my right to think of more later. But can you speak a little bit more to the restaurant? And I ask specifically because I think it was in the, the parking study component where I saw reference to a fast food restaurant. So what type of format are you thinking and do you, I mean, I'm sure you don't have someone in mind yet, but can you talk more just about what the look and the feel of that restaurant should be?
Totally. So we don't have anybody in mind yet. The idea... The idea, though, we had a group that came to us that we could have based it on. So I'll explain this group's idea only because I've heard from them, then we heard that someone else had something similar, and they didn't know about each other. And I like both of them. The idea at the time was picture, like a punch pizza, but more of a sit-down situation. So it's pizza salads. There would be a full bar, or at least beer and wine, there's alcohol. And it's meant to be sit-down, simple menu with high-quality ingredients, but not fast food and not even like punch food or punch pizza quantity of people coming and going. More of a sit-down, but just that type of menu and more of a limited menu with salads and pizza with fresh ingredients, something like that. But it's totally up in the air. It's, but it could be a condition. It won't be fast food.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barubi?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. We had a lot of feedback, as Planner Teague mentioned. It was about four to one positive. One of the citizens, though, mentioned concern about apartments being built, not necessarily only in Edina, but within the area, and vacancies. And it looked like she had done a ton of work on figuring out which buildings have vacancies and adding up all the numbers. So tell us why you think there's going to be demand for these apartments and why you're willing to put your money on the line to build apartments now when there are apartments, apartment buildings that have a lot of vacancies.
Thank you for putting out the money on the line because I would have ended with that because that's how much we do believe in it. If you, back to our first presentation, we talked about a lot of our buildings have been in even more urban locations, and we have more smaller units and then less larger units. In this case, we started with 54% of our building being larger units because the feedback that we had received and what we had seen in the market, and then since positive comments that we've got speak to people wanting to stay in the general neighborhood but downsize other single-family homes. And that's not happening. The odds of that happening into a 700-square-foot unit are a lot less than into a larger two-bedroom. So that was part of the original thesis. And we've continued to do a market study, which is actually one of the reasons our unit mix has changed. We have even more two-bedrooms than when we started. Because if you look, there's more vacancy in the, in the general area in one-bedrooms than there are at two-bedrooms with people following that same logic. And then one of the questions, just to add on to that, that we got asked at the neighborhood meetings, how would we market to the neighborhood? A lot of it's done with social media. In this case, a lot of it would be done with direct mailers and then local real estate agents, making sure that clients who may be considering selling their home knew that this is an option. It's amazing how many buildings, people drive by and someone says, I think those are condos, or I think those are rentals, or I think that's got, that's an affordable building. It ends up not being what they thought it was. So we want to make sure that obviously people will know about the building, but they know what the building is and what it has to offer. So that's the plan.
Anyone else? Commissioner Bartling?
Hi, yeah, thank you for your presentation. I just have a few questions. So the open space that you're speaking of, is that going to be accessible for public?
Hey, Chris, you want to pull up that plan? Just so we can clarify. There's the, there's like an art plaza on the corner. And then there's, on the west side of this, when you say open space, just which one?
The courtyard.
Inside the actual courtyard, that would be for residents. Chris, go back, if you don't mind, to showing the site. So there's just maybe circle with your cursor the, so the courtyard is, once you're in the courtyard, once you're west, we can't see where I'm pointing, yeah, west of the roundabout or the turnaround, that's inside a courtyard for residents. Everything outside, including the corner that's kitty-corner from City Hall, where we plan to have an art plaza, that is public. And then we plan to actually bend the landscaping and the same materials around to the restaurant, which is public as well.
Where are you putting an art plaza?
Chris, why don't you go to that corner? Right, just want to actually go to that rendering. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So where's the art going?
Where that, where it's pointing to sculpture. This is a little less exciting than if you, it's hard to, there you go, up front.
Oh, so it's just essentially a sculpture or something? So it's not real, it's pretty small. It's not really a green space.
No, not green, no, it's not. It's meant to be more than one. It's not, we're not saying it's courtyard. It's meant to be a little bit of green space, benches and multiple pieces of art, but like a few, not a dozen.
Okay. The other thing is, to me, the restaurant seems like it wants to be right here. You know, to really establish what the comprehensive plan is about pedestrian use, you know, intersections, create life. Why are you shoving it in the back versus putting it up here where it would seem to make more sense?
Well, we were thinking we were shoving it there. This is, from the pedestrian standpoint, this is where we see all the people coming and going, the residents that are going to live here. So we took that piece and said, that's where the majority of those pedestrians are because they're living here. So that we put that on this corner. We saw the restaurant fitting on that northwest corner because there will be car traffic coming and going from it. That's where we can fit a lot, which every restaurateur we've talked to said, if we're going to go in, we have to have an adjacent surface lot. It can't be where we share an under, a lot of failed restaurants have come where restaurants go in a mixed-use building. The people have to go through the same ramping that the residents do. And the residents, once they do it once, it's their home. They know how to do it each time. The idea of going in off of Wilson, down into a ramp, and then trying to use like wayfinding signs to get to the restaurant, we felt like would just be a disaster. And in this scenario, when we don't put in the office building, we leave the room for the potential off-ramp someday, we can create a surface lot here. Urban design wouldn't have us building lots of surface lots. I think all of us would agree with that. But the idea that it's on the Highway 100 side of the building could also serve as the restaurant sort of checked a lot of boxes. So part of it is just how we backed into it, but that's the logic.
Okay, well, I think you could still, the surface slot makes sense. And I do understand that navigating in a ramp is sometimes challenging. But I'm still probably, I still feel that you could get to the, you know, to the other corner outside. But that's here and there. The other thing, I guess, I have a concern with is that you have two residential units on main level on Eden Avenue. That, to me, seems like it should be retail or restaurant or something, not residential. It feels not right to me. And it, you know, again, a lot of the comprehensive plan is really creating that urban walk, you know, pedestrian, and who wants a pedestrian walkway and having people look into their house? So that feels a little off to me. But overall, I mean, in general, I would say the elevation, I have no problem with the height. I have no problem. I think it's great that you've opened that centerpiece to allow some light into the courtyard and connect through. To me, the materiality is getting a little busy, but at the same time, I think it's nicer than many I've seen. Not particularly from you guys, from BKV, but some of the units that are being built. Like the Avidore, I wouldn't use that as your precedent. I think that's one of the uglier buildings than Edina. And actually, really, on record, one of the saddest things, because I live a couple of blocks away, and pretty sad that was built. But nonetheless, I think yours is handsome in ways. I think it could be simplified a little bit. And then my, yeah, my biggest concern really is just that really building what it means to make this pedestrian. And I like this ideas of thinking about the bikes trails and the sidewalks, and because I think that's very important. But I just really think about how you're doing everything along Eden Avenue there and really even along Wilson too. But the Eden-Wilson corner there is more, like more of a concern to me because that hopefully will become a main bike pedestrian pathway down through the, and the future development on the Grand View side as well. So.
If I could ask you a question, one question back, I really appreciate your comments. If we took those two units and we put them across the hall, so now they're in the courtyard, and we put, so not retail, but also the restaurant, the part of this was sizing to the parking lot. So there's a relationship between those two. But we just put at least like amenity active space here, which we've done on other projects, to at least more of a street activation. It's again, not retail, but maybe with that, how do you feel about that versus?
I think that's much, much better, yes. I just, I think it's very uncomfortable for the resident of that unit and then for the people, you know, that aren't residents, to have units on that first level. Because if you think of any city, and I know we're not New York, and I know we're not downtown, people just wouldn't do that, you know? They don't, you're always going to have a retail, you know, some of the, even the brownstones are lifted up quite a bit, right? So that their main access, their main entry is not rate. And obviously, this isn't main access, you come inside. But, you know, their main, their main entry and windows is out to the world.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
And as far as the restaurant go, I just, one last comment on that is I'd like to see a liquor license in a much more robust restaurant. This is a food island here in this area. And we, you know, to get some life and whatever, I think you guys have the opportunity to really elevate that and even go bigger than, you know, a punch pizza or whatever. And maybe it's two different restaurants, right? If it is a smaller, if it's a sit-down, it's probably one. But to me, it seems like it wants something with activity and life. And, and, you know, I don't want to say that booze is what brings it, but it doesn't hurt. So.
That kind of feedback's really helpful. We're, I'm coming into this like very sensitive to traffic. And I just, but if others could comment on that, if that's something, I mean, we, we can explore that. I just am kind of nervous to explore it right now.
My comment on traffic is that you, people say they don't want it, but then they want restaurants and bars and whatever. They just want it in someone else's neighborhood. This is a, this is a commercial area.
Commissioner Bartling, Commissioner Bartling, just getting into it. This is our time for questioning the applicant. We'll have more time after we have the public hearing to give our opinions. But I'd like to offer other commissioners the opportunity to ask any further questions they have about the applicant, if that's okay. We'll get back to your thoughts.
Oh, I'm good.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay, well, we'll have an opportunity later too, but I'd like to offer the opportunity for a public hearing. And that means people who may have been waiting on the phone for four hours have the opportunity to call in and give their opinion on this. We did get a lot of comments on Better Together also, which were really helpful. If anyone's still on the phone or just joining and would like to call in and give testimony, please call 800-374-0221. Enter conference ID 4363588 and press star one. And the operator will then place you into queue, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak. We do ask that if other people give the same message you do. Like if someone says, well, I don't like the impact on the intersection. We, you know, we ask that you not repeat that comment, you know, because if we hear it once or we hear it four times, it won't affect our decision. Hearing it once is good information for us. Now, with that said, I will turn it over to Dan Riesig of our staff and ask if we have anyone in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We currently have four callers in the queue. Our first caller is Kim Nelson. If the operator can please unmute the line of Kim Nelson and there, free to speak.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Kim Nelson. I'm with the North Central States Regional Council of Carpenters. We represent 25,000 construction workers. You'll also have in your file written comment from our Government Affairs Director, Adam Dunick. Just wanted to take a brief moment to verbally give our support to Reuter Walton on this development. We find that Reuter Walton is a responsible developer who listens to the community, takes seriously the feedback that they get from community stakeholders to really not only build beautiful buildings, but they also build, have some of the best-designed buildings and build to last. Also important for us is the fact that they hire locally. They pay good wages, and in turn, our construction workers spend dollars in the communities they work in. We wholeheartedly support Reuter Walton in this development, including the height variance and the rezoning. And we ask that you take the necessary measures to move the project forward. Thank you.
Nelson, Dan, do we have anyone else?
We do. Our next caller is Ann Russ. Ann Russ, if the operator can please unmute their line so they may speak.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Ann Russ. I live in the Sunny Slope neighborhood at 4929 West Sunny Slope Road with my husband and two children. My house directly abuts West 50th Street and Grange Road. So for instance, if you are at City Hall and you look at the traffic lights, my home is right above the hill. And I say that because I'm probably one of the closest homes to this development. I oppose this development. The height is incredibly too tall. A seven-story apartment building does not belong in this neighborhood. Well, seven stories plus 76 feet, which I don't really know how to judge how tall that is. But when I go sit in my backyard at my pool and lounge on my lounger, the only thing I have to gauge is the flagpole at the Perkins currently. So if you could tell me exactly how tall is this building going to be? And if I can see the flag on the flagpole in the Perkins building, then the residents and the open spaces at the apartment building will be able to see into my backyard and my home. So as Commissioner Bartling so eloquently stated, nobody wants people looking into their home. Well, I'm a resident here and I'm a property owner. And this project is going to have a detriment effect on my home, my livelihood, and the value of my own property. I know other members of my neighborhood are going to speak on other issues, such as the safety and other issues that I also agree with. So I will leave it at that.
Russ, Dan, do we have anyone else?
We do. Our next caller is Julie Risser. If the operator can please unmute the line of Julie Risser.
Hello?
Ms. Risser? Hello, you're on.
Hello, okay, great. I have several points. One, do not let a single developer drive zoning changes. Don't do it. It's not good practice. It's not fair to developers in the region. And we do it way too often here in Edina. We do it so much. I really hope that we're tracking stats, okay, on it. Number two, there is no safe pedestrian crossing for residents of Edina who come from the south and want to get to City Hall. I experienced this last week when I went to vote. Sidewalk puts you I experienced this last week when I went to vote. Sidewalk puts you on the corner where the Perkins site is. There's no marking, none whatsoever. When I listen to the conversation, you've met with Gulf Terrace, you've met with Country Club, you haven't met with anyone from Concord. Uh, have you thought about all the schools in the area and the reality that people at Southview, people at Normandale, people at Our Lady of Grace, people at Concord cannot safely walk to City Hall. I could safely walk on sidewalks and get, um, crossing lights and marking in the street if I start from my parents' home in southwest Minneapolis. But me as an Edina resident, I don't even have that infrastructure. The city continues to build more and more units. We are going for density, but we are dropping the ball on sidewalks. We did this with the Bowers. Look at the Hazelton and France Avenue intersection. Consider the reality that there is the base of a crossing signal implanted into the center of the sidewalk on France. You can't get through on the sidewalk if you're in a wheelchair or, you know, if you're using a walker. It, so why are we moving forward with more density and completely failing to make up for the failed pedestrian situation that exists right now? Um, you know, I hear the enthusiasm for restaurants, more booze, traffic violence is way up, um, even though we do have fewer vehicles on the road. And, you know, when you think about developing this project and the fact that you're going to have more and more people there right next to City Hall and what that means, you know, we really need to reflect on that. It just, it doesn't really make much sense in terms of the well-being and the democratic access to City Hall. Once the pandemic is over and more and more people are going to physically want to go there, you know, I remember going to meetings where there was spillover parking in the Perkins lot. Where are people going to park? It just doesn't make much sense at all. So there's a lot of things that I am really concerned about, but process is so completely broken here in our city. And I, I really think we're at the point where we need to get into our code language that says we don't change zoning for a single developer. Um, thank you.
You're at three minutes?
Thank you. Uh, Dan, do we have anyone else on the line?
Right now we have two more callers. Uh, our next caller is Steve McCready's. Uh, if the operator can please unmute Steve's line.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Great. Hello, uh, Planning Commission. Uh, my name is Steve McCready's and, uh, we live at 4916 West Sunny Slope Road in Edina. I'm speaking on behalf of my family and, and part of our recently created Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association. Um, uh, let me start by saying we, we are for development. It just needs to be smart and address the impact that that development creates on existing neighborhoods and the underlying conditions. We spoke into the city council and staff with those concerns. Um, and, uh, we oppose the proposed rezoning of Perkins due to its size, scale, and the impact it on a right, already congested and dangerous portion of Edina. We have five concerns, traffic, safety, noise, the use of TIP dollars, and the Highway 150th Street interchange that will alter the character of our neighborhood. These underlying issues, uh, exist and any new development at the boundary between a single family residence and mixed use development only makes those things worse. In addition, the use of, of TIP funding to, to, uh, fund a development at the expense of, of our neighborhood feels unethical. So first, traffic, 50th Street is intended to be a pedestrian, bike and car corridor. It serves the Edina community, but also connects South Minneapolis and the freeway system. The new traffic study was completed, uh, during the recent COVID lockdown and really Edina spring break impacted that as they were told to go home and resume distance learning before the break. It really hardly seems representative of the existing situation. Our neighborhood does a traffic study every day as we try to exit our neighborhood. The traffic and the excessive speeds that we face as cars on 50th Streets, um, that we have, uh, that existing tap traffic study that the study actually acknowledged, um, but seems to say there's little they're going to do about it. Um, safety, all council members that we spoke to and the mayor acknowledged the dangerous stress, uh, stretch, uh, between Wooddale Park and Highway 100 with, according to the traffic data, is the second highest traffic count in the entire city of Edina. One council member stated he would not walk down that stress, that stretch to the emotional stress he would experience. We in our neighborhood don't have a choice and experience that same stress as we come and go from our neighborhoods. Um, our, our, our daughter in particular was one of many that have been rear-ended, um, as she's trying to enter and return to her own neighborhood. Second items around noise, traffic noise is already an issue, um, that will only get worse with any future development. As a neighborhood, we've been seeking help for this for over 20 years with no resolution to date. Uh, this neighborhood predates Highway 100 and the increased traffic contributes to that noise and we see newer developments in Edina benefiting from sound wall protection. The TIP, I mentioned, and we'll cover, uh, in more detail with, uh, some other speakers, the, the, the other is the Highway 150th Street interchange. The Grand View Comprehensive Plan shows considerable redesign to the interchange and potentially adding new developments adjacent to the northbound Highway 100 exit ramp. This concept would significantly impact us and the entire area and would be, um, that, and should not be accomplished ad hoc by closing ramps and redirecting traffic that are currently in the plan. This issue needs to be properly engineered, budgeted, and prioritized with MINDOT before, uh, projects in the area are developed. We're not into development, the project needs to be properly sized and scaled. I, I, I want to, uh, expect a little extra time based on the technology and the lag here.
No, no, I'm, 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 I'm sorry. We, 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 we can't do that.
Extremely unfair. We were told the developer, we were told that the developer would be also phoning in, that we would also be able to be physically present or, or we would have the same situation. We are at a disadvantage by not being there and the traffic timing of the traffic report did not allow us enough time to write a written report back.
We, we were following our normal procedures. It's not, it's nothing, there's no intention to be unfair to anyone. I, I, we appreciate your feedback. Um, thank you. Dan, do we have someone else on the line?
We do have one more caller on the line and Mr. Chair, if you'll allow me, I just do want to remind anyone who's listening, if they are still interested in joining the queue, it's star one. Uh, but otherwise our last caller for now we have is Mr. Marcus Pirano. Um, and actually we did just have someone else join. So right now, Mr. Marcus Pirano, if operator can please unmute his line.
Good evening, Commissioners. I wanted to add a personal effect to what you heard about the traffic study. I've been a 10 and a half year resident, homeowner in Sunny Slope. My family and I, my son in September of 2018 was struck going on, on his bike on West 50th Street on the corner of Brown Dale and West 50th Street. Police, Edina Police and, uh, Edina EMT were called. We had a nice visit to Fairview Southdale. Uh, I just want to let you know that I didn't know when I bought this house that I lived in a gated community and I couldn't let my kids get over to Wooddale to see their friends or go to the Edina Country Club that we belong to. So I'm a little bit miffed about that. Also with this Reuters Walton project, the traffic on West 50th Street is just ridiculous. It's like Talladega Speedway and I, it's just very illuminating to me. My late wife wanted to walk from our Sunny Slope neighborhood to Gulf Terrace when she was, uh, undergoing a brain cancer treatment, a little exercise. I took her on a new, uh, crosswalk that looks like Abbey Road in the back end of City Hall in the middle of the flashing lights and there was people speeding by well over 30 miles per hour and going in the crosswalk, not in the crosswalk that we vacated, but the crosswalk that we were walking into. So I just think the current scope of the Empire State Building that Reuters Walton is building on top of Route 100 is just ridiculous with 196 units, only 39 of them, uh, for, um, a low income or affordable income, which gets to my other point about TIP financing. I just don't think we need to incentivize a builder for that, that very desirable two acre lot in a nice area that is now a seven story towering Hulk over the highway into our looming into, uh, our neighborhood. And also, uh, it just doesn't do anything for the public amenities. Sidewalks, the building in that area is great, but you can't get to it based on a current construct. And I don't think it's a very prudent use of fiduciary responsibility of TIP financing. And it doesn't even remotely come close to what we've done at Grand View with the library, the senior center and Edinburgh Park and Centennial Lake Park. It's just ridiculous. And I'm very, very upset with Reuters Walter because I was all for the original scope of four story with a coffee shop and now it's a seven story Empire State Building on Route 100 with a full restaurant on a bottom level. It's just ridiculous. Thank you. I'm done.
Dan, do we have anyone else on the line?
We, we do have two more callers, Mr. Chair. Uh, the operator can please, uh, unmute the line of Kirk Adlin. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing the name.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hello?
Hello?
Thank you. Um, at first I want to, can you hear me?
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you. I'll just go ahead if that's okay.
Yes, please.
I want to thank the planning commissioners. I want to thank the planning commissioners for the opportunity to speak on the Eden Avenue project application and proposed zoning change. Uh, my name is Kirk Adlin. I live at 4800 Hilltop Lane in Edina. Uh, I actually grew up in this neighborhood and moved back, um, and built a home here. My home is in the Sunny Slope neighborhood and therefore will be directly affected by any redevelopment at the Eden Avenue site. I'd like to start by saying that I do expect the Eden Avenue site to be redeveloped. I would propose that the core issue for the commission tonight is what is the appropriate size and scale of any new project for this location, specifically with regard to the height, mass and scale for the location. This project seems very out of place in my opinion. I'm signing to this application to change the zoning for this property with a number of questions for the commissioners with regard to the proposed, uh, Eden Avenue project, and then I would voice my opinion. Number one, is the planning commission voting tonight to approve the change to the zoning for the Eden Avenue project alone or, or just to do the zoning change or both? It's my understanding that it would do both. Um, number two, if Eden Avenue site was not rezoned, what could be built there? After talking with the city planners, it's clear that a four story building, mixed use could be built on this property without the use, without the need for rezoning, something on the power of Nolan and Mainz or Excelsior Iran type property. I would, I would voice my opinion. I think that seems like a much more appropriate, uh, uh, scale for this property. Is our current infrastructure to support a project of this site at the proposed site? In my opinion, the current property is a bit of an island. It would require cars for people that live there to try to get to work school or participate in recreational activities. Uh, number five, the existing and future projects in the Grand View area, how many current and future projects and parking spaces are proposed? We're talking about one project, but Nolan and Mainz was recently built. There's a new building going or there's also a high rise going across the, on the northwest corner of Highway 100. The Avidor next to Jerry's, Edina Flats. There's also proposed projects that are already under construction in the, in the direct vicinity. From a safety perspective, I can say that currently trying to get in and out of the Sunny Slope neighborhood from a traffic perspective can be described as treacherous at best. My family has been in two car accidents trying to get in or out of the neighborhood at Dale Drive. Final thoughts and please bear with me. Let me just finish this up. In my opinion, the current proposed project at Eden Avenue in no way fits into the height, mass or scale of the current location. In my opinion, it has the potential to set a precedent for more projects on the east side of Highway 100 that do not fit the current location. The developer even tonight mentioned he hoped this project could be a quote unquote stepping stone for projects on the east side of Highway 100. As I previously stated, I'm fully aware of the fact that this site is going to be redeveloped and I think it should be. In my apparent, in my opinion, the current zoning would allow for a site to be redeveloped at a size and scale that would be much more appropriate for the Eden Avenue property. Finally, for many people that responded favorably to the project online, I would like to know if you could tell us how many of those people actually live in the adjoining neighborhoods. Uh, thank you all for your time and attention.
Mr. Adlin, Dan, do we have anyone else?
Our final caller in the queue right now is Paul Porter. If the operator can please, uh, place him into the act of speaking.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Yes, hello. Hello, thank you Commissioners, uh, for giving me this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Paul Porter. My wife Kathy Laberan and I live at 4928 Dale Drive, uh, on the corner of Dale Drive and 50th. We're 540 feet away from the proposed development. I want to talk about several issues. The first is traffic on 50th. Commissioners, uh, we heard the traffic forecast would have minimal impact. I totally agree with that. The level of service in our neighborhood, Dale Drive and 50th, Grange and 50th, level of service LOS is currently an EF undesirable. It'll continue to be an EF, maybe minimally declined to an F. Is that acceptable? No, we would like a, a livable, uh, community, one where we can, can walk and bike safely. Second issue, um, the city of Edina owns a property along Grange Road that has no sidewalk from 50th to Eden Avenue. Look out the front door of City Hall and you'll see this. It is ill advised to approve construction of an apartment complex when there is no sidewalk access for the residents of that complex to the bus stops on 50th Street, only one block away. Again, we want a walkable, bikeable community. We have currently inferior infrastructure, um, that needs to be improved prior to the development of the Perkins site. Did I mention we can see from my bedroom window the Perkins building? From our deck, we can see the Perkins building. That means seven stories of people will be able to see us. Uh, third issue, and that's the proposed northbound exit ramp off of Highway 100 to Eden Avenue. It is in the comprehensive plan, but we are told there is no time for it, for if and when it will be constructed. Quote, "Right now it is just a red line on the map," unquote. This is what we are told and it is deceptive. Wright and Walters has planned for that exit ramp to be built because the city of Edina has, has asked them not to build on a portion of the property. In exchange, the city will allow a zoning variance and TIP financing. This off rent project is not a project generated by MINDOT. It is a state aid project, meaning it is an Edina owned project. The city of Edina designs the project, advertises the project, receives the bids, awards the contracts and manages the project. The proposed northbound exit ramp doesn't stop at Eden Avenue. It extends northward to 50th Street, creating a frontage road parallel to Grange Road. The resulting rearrangement frees up two additional lots for future development. See page 269 in your packet.
You're at three minutes?
Further development of two lots. Okay, one more sentence. Further development of two additional lots. That is what is being decided. If you and the city council approve the Reuters Walton plan, we know this, see, staff knows this, city staff doesn't want to acknowledge it. I'm pro-development, but smart development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Dan, do we have anyone else wishing to call in?
We, we do have two callers, uh, yet on the queue. Uh, so the next person in the queue, if the operator can please unmute the line of Lori Groats.
Yes, my name is Lori Groats and I live at 5513 Park Place. I think the setbacks are too close for this project. If you take a look at Avidor, that's awful. When you walk past that, it's right on the street. This is going to be a busy project. It's far too close. And for the transportation, did the transportation consultant take a look at the southbound entrance from Eden onto Highway 100? The city has plans to shut that access and then the public will need to go up to 50th Street to access Highway 100 to go to the south. Right now they're planning to put a roundabout in at, um, Arcadia and Eden. If that entrance going south to Highway 100 is closed, you're going to be sending everybody up to 50th Street, up to 50th to get onto Highway 100 to go to the south. Way too busy. Um, and it's, if the project is just way too close to the street and right now I would be against any project that was put in there because this is a preliminary step to the lid. Like the previous caller said, the road going through for the exit off of the freeway, you don't put in a new exit off the freeway unless you're going to be building on the, the other one that's currently existing. And it's not a big accident site and the city can't afford it and they'll do it with TIP. Um, thank you so much. And I also wanted to make a, a comment. I tried to get on starting at about 11 o'clock tonight. I bet I called 10 times and then. And then it would ring through and then you would hold and after about fifteen seconds it said, "Call ended." So I had to actually email staff tonight to contact that conference center to keep it open so that the public can call in and make comments. Very, very disappointing. This is not the first time it's happened to me either, to call in to make a comment, not to this meeting. Thank you so much for your time and assistance and, uh, thanks Carrie for your help.
Any, uh, Dan, do you have, uh, anyone else?
We do have two callers and I do apologize for the, uh, it seemed to be technical issues, but I did get assurance that the call center is still open and accepting calls. So if there are any residents interested in calling in, that is still available to them. Uh, our next caller is Stephen Lundberg. If the operator can please, uh, place him into the active queue.
Hello there.
Hello, Mr. Lundberg.
Nice to, uh, speak with you again, Commissioner. Uh, I think we met once before and, and, uh, thanks to the rest of the, the commissioner team there. Um, you know, I just have a few things to add to what my neighbors here in Sunny Slope on the forty-eight oh one Hilltop, uh, uh, said. Um, luckily I'm usually the, the hothead, but I think I've been waiting so long, I'm half asleep, so I've calmed down to, you know, medium level. But, um, you know, my principal question for, for, you know, on this project is, who is thinking about the residents of the project who want to ride their bike down Fiftieth to the Wooddale Park? Or want to ride their bike to Fiftieth and France? Or want to go play tennis at, you know, at, at Wooddale or play basketball or go to the, over and play a baseball field? Nobody's going to be able to ride their bike unless they ride on the sidewalk, which is pretty bad because it forces people to, you know, uh, even leave the sidewalk sometimes to let them go by. So, you know, you've got, the elephant in the room on this development is Fiftieth has no bike lane. It's uncomfortable to walk on. Um, we, you know, so that's a huge problem. You've got to get that connected to this site or you're really going to have, uh, a failed endeavor when you talk about living streets. And I've heard everyone talk over and over again about how important it is to walk places, but the bike lane only goes up to the end of Eden Avenue and then what? You're supposed to walk your bike down the sidewalk? I mean, we got to get a grip on that. Um, some facts about Fiftieth. Um, I won't let my elderly in-laws drive here. They drive all over Edina. I won't let them drive into my neighborhood. There's traffic going routinely at forty to forty-five miles an hour heading west. There's never any traffic enforcement and even if they did, there's always another knucklehead around the corner that doesn't know that there's police ahead. Uh, when you're making turns, you have to account for the fastest traffic, not the average speed, which makes them pretty, uh, white knuckles sometimes. And even on a good day, you've always got to worry about that forty-five mile an hour, uh, driver that's coming around the bend and sometimes fifty. And I know these speeds because they've actually clocked them. Um, and I'm sure the city knows that people speed through there a lot. So it's dangerous to drive in and out of the neighborhood. Uh, it's not safe to walk down the sidewalk, um, you know, for children. Um, it's barely feels comfortable if you've got a couple of dogs because you're worried they might dart out into traffic. There's traffic going forty-five that's six feet away from you. There's no buffer. So the whole thing's a disaster from connecting that site to the most typical destination, Fiftieth and France and the park. Who wants to go into, you know, over into Grantview? There's nothing there. You know, there's a couple of restaurants.
You're at three minutes?
There's no park. Okay, thank you. Good luck.
You. Dan?
I believe this to be our last caller. Uh, if the operator can please, uh, put Dwight Bonwell into the, uh, active queue.
Hello? Hello?
Hello? Yes, you're on. But thank you for calling.
Okay, great. Great. So my name's Dwight Bonnywell. I live at forty-nine twenty West Sunny Slope Road. Uh, my house is, uh, we've all talked about this new exit ramp off of a hundred going north. And you've all seen the red line on the diagrams. Where that comes up to Fiftieth, that's about fifty feet from my back door where I eat breakfast every morning. Um, th- this is going to have an unbelievable impact. And I, I'm just sitting here listening for the last four and a half hours through this whole evening. And I'm, I'm quite confused because I'm hearing the planning commission praising this building, whi- which does look beautiful. Um, but did we not hear the traffic experts talk about our two intersections coming out of our neighborhood? Our, our fails. Their Es or Fs, their fails. He said forty-one and a half seconds to turn out of our neighborhood onto Fiftieth. What happens if you're the fourth or fifth car waiting to get out of our neighborhood? It's a five or six minute wait. It's crazy. So this, this whole development, I understand the need to do development and we're not anti-development here. But what we have to understand is the infrastructure that exists here does not support it. This needs to be addressed before we start looking at doing these seven-story buildings that are going to be looking into people's living rooms in our neighborhood. It, it just seems crazy to me. And it also seems crazy that we're going to be driving all this extra traffic up here onto Fiftieth and there's no sound protection whatsoever for our neighborhood. If you look across the highway, they have sound protection. If you look north of us, there's sound protection. But for our neighborhood, we have no sound protection and we can barely get out of our neighborhood. And I will tell you that I, I called into this line thirty-five times to get through. So I suspect there's a lot of people that were not able to get on to this call to make their points. Thanks for your time.
Thanks. Dan, do we have anyone else?
At this moment, there are no other callers in queue, so I will, uh, leave it to your discretion if you feel comfortable moving forward.
Well, let's wait a minute. I want to think for a minute. We'll let people load for a minute. So while we wait, um, I want to say if you do wish to call in and you're watching, uh, please call eight hundred three seven four zero two two one. Enter conference ID four three six three five eight eight and press star one to be placed into queue. Um, can I give it another minute or two based on our hearing, the, um, difficulties people are having calling in and, uh, clearly the interest in this matter? Um, that said, during this interim moment, I will note that my laptop says I have tw- it has a battery left of twenty-three percent. And I suspect that several people on the call, their batteries may be lower than that. Um, so I want to discuss with you while we, while we do this just briefly. We have a fifth public hearing on the schedule tonight. I want to talk to the commission staff about whether we should move that to our next meeting. Anyone have any opinion on that?
Well, if they've been, if you're waiting for four and a half hours, uh, um, maybe ask them.
Well, we're going to be a, you know, anyone who's been waiting, I, Dan, are there people still waiting who haven't punched in? Is there anyone?
From what I can tell, there, there may be one or two callers who, who may be just listening to, through the intercall system, uh, but there is no one else who is at star one to get into queue to ask a question.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that input, Jimmy. Anyone else have any thoughts?
I think that's a great idea. I think, um, continuing to pursue that at this time, we're going to be less than a hundred percent and maybe not able to give it our full effort. So I would propose we postpone it.
Anyone else? Thank you, Shiva. Carrie?
If you're referring to the parking ordinance, I assume?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, you, I would just ask that the commission, when that item comes up, that you continue it to, to the next meeting.
Okay.
Continue the public hearing to your next official meeting.
Okay, well, let's come back to this mi- matter right now. Thank you, uh, Ruder Walton team for your patience while we discuss that for a minute. I wanted to take the opportunity to let, let anyone else call in that had the chance, so we don't. So, Dan, is there anyone who wishes to still give testimony?
No, I believe you're, you're safe and moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Thank you for everything you've done tonight. I, 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 I'm sorry for these technical issues. I'm sure you are too. They, they happen. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I moved to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Uh, thank you. Um, Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote, please, to close the public hearing?
Commissioner Strauss?
Hi.
Commissioner Brubie?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson? Commissioner Olson?
I believe Commissioner Olson had to, has a very early meeting, so she may have left this meeting.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Commissioner Burtling?
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire?
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Your number of.
Hey, uh, I'd like to make a quick effort to, uh, follow up on, on the comments you see from the public. I, I'm going to make an effort if other commissioners feel like I missed something, please, you know, follow up. Uh, the first thing I want to ask is to staff. We had a few people ask about TIF. Um, and TIF's a valid thing for people to concern themselves with, but what relationship does TIF have to tonight's issue? Not necessarily the property, but if TIF, let me ask this another way instead of being so ambiguous. If this property were going to be, go through a TIF process, how would tonight's decision either way affect the TIF decision? And how would the TIF decision, what would be the timeline for dealing with a TIF decision?
Yeah, so this evening you're asked to make a land use decision, not, not considering TIF. The, the whole TIF discussion, that's more, that, that is for the city council and the HRA. To my knowledge, I don't believe they've made a TIF application yet. I, they believe they do intend to. Um, but that's a separate process, uh, with, uh, with the HRA and city council. So you're, you're asked to just take action on the land use request.
So even if we approve this, that doesn't move them one inch closer to getting TIF?
That's correct.
Okay, um, secondly, it's got some comments about rezoning based on development applications, individual project applications. Could you comment on that? I mean, isn't that kind of the only time that you ever really would look at something unless you did a master plan?
Um, well, in terms of, well, I don't believe the city can prevent someone from making an application for a rezoning or a variance. Developers, residents, they have the right to do that. It doesn't mean that the city has to approve them. As was, was mentioned this evening, this is a rezoning request, so the city does have discretion to approve or deny.
Okay, um, we received several comments about, about, um, pedestrian bike transit, uh, in two areas. One is the, well, in a few areas. One area was between this immediate project, like between the Perkins site and City Hall, for example. Is there anything that can be done to improve the safety of crossing there for people accessing City Hall? Particularly at night, I guess I would even say that's enhanced. Is there some, is there something that this project will do to enhance it? Um, you know, to make, make, if people want to walk down the frontage road and access City Hall and people have concerns about the safety there, what can be done to improve that?
So you, you could, um, make a recommendation, you know, if the planning commission is inclined to recommend approval, you could add conditions about, um, pedestrian crosswalks, something to that effect, uh, to get residents from the site over to City Hall.
Okay, uh, what about pedestrian between, pedestrian access between the Perkins site and Fiftieth? That came up. Is there anything that we can do related to that?
Yeah, that, that's more, I believe, a city issue, as was mentioned, that, that property is owned by the city. You know, the city could consider putting in sidewalks. Um, I believe Mr. Terhar referred to what some of those bike and ped plans, uh, have planned. Uh, perhaps maybe Ed wants to expand on that?
Yeah, Carrie, that actually is, the, the item in the ped plan is that sidewalk along Grange from Eden to Fiftieth. It is in the, the long-term, uh, plan. And then it also extends along Fiftieth and Vernon, all the way across the bridge. So that is part of the plan. To my knowledge, it's not something that's, um, has a timeframe on it.
Okay. Um, traffic. Well, finally, uh, bike and pedestrian, just finishing up bike and pedestrian. I think people also talked about areas a little bit away from this, crossing over to Eden, I believe, across a hundred, I believe they were referring to. If, or I'm not sure, maybe they meant what we were just talking about. And bike and pedestrian on Fiftieth. Any response to concerns about bike and pedestrian on Fiftieth? Yeah.
Other than that, that's not really necessarily tied to this project. It's an existing issue that could be taken up, you know, with, with, um, the, the safety committee or the transportation commission.
Some people seem to think that we shouldn't be doing any further development until we resolve those issues. I mean, how does that fit with like our comprehensive plan or how, how should we, how do we respond to that? Is that a decision we could make and just say, "Look, we don't think any," I mean, how do other cities handle that? Case by case?
Yeah, so that's a difficult one. You're really asked to make a land use decision on this site and your findings for approval and denial should be more focused on, on this immediate area. It could be a recommendation to the city council to take action on those issues.
Okay, um, several people were concerned, and maybe this is the same answer, but several people were concerned about the, the fast speed of traffic on Fiftieth, which is interesting to me because having run the Fiftieth France Mall area plan, the feedback I got was traffic was much too slow. So, um, is there anything the city, I know, I know we're looking at doing a traffic study in Fiftieth, at, at around Fiftieth, is there, do you have any update on that? I mean, we were going to talk, talk about that. About whether is traffic too slow, is traffic too fast, or?
Yeah, that, I, I don't have specific answers, uh, for that. That would be another one for potentially the, the traffic safety committee. Um, just from my office, looking at, out at Fiftieth all day long, I know the police do enforce speeds because I see cars pulled over quite often outside my office window. But I, I think that would be more for the traffic and safety committee.
Thank you, Carrie. Um, a question came up. If we revise the zoning for this project, is that revision of zoning specific to this project or is it more general?
The rezoning is just for this site specifically. So as was, was pointed out by the development team, you know, those setback requirements are still in place in regards to potential, again, it's a very long-range plan, the potential for those sites to the north, um, should that frontage road happen. Those, uh, those existing setbacks are, are still in place.
Okay, um, discussion of, uh, the applicant brought up and showed an image showing two other spots that could be redeveloped north of this spot across the street from City Hall and a few people, um, brought that up. Does this, does this, approving this, does this change the zoning for those locations? Does this?
It does not.
Okay.
No, this project wouldn't impact those, those sites at all.
Is, is, to, to your, to your knowledge, other than, hey, here's something that could happen, is there any, any plan that's more specific than, oh, hey, here's something else that could happen on these other sites?
That, no, that's it. This project just provides that opportunity in the future, for those roadway improvements. And again, it, it, it's a min-dot project. A lot of things have to fall in place before, before that's even considered.
Um, has improving that roadway there, has that been something that's been on the city's agenda for a while, or is that just coming up with this project?
Which roadway?
Uh, the, um, the circular entrance onto Highway 100 North and the exit off of Highway 100.
This, this is part of the Grandview Transportation Plan that was approved a, a few years back.
Revising those roads?
Right.
Okay. Planning commissioners, I think I only have one more, and I'll, I'll open up to you. Thank you for bearing with me. Traffic noise. Have there been any studies on traffic noise? Is that something else we, we could recommend looking into?
Yeah, not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any other follow-up from the public comment that you'd like to ask either staff or the developer? Okay. Then, I think we've closed public hearing, right? Is my memory not failing me here? My battery's on 18% now. And, um, so that, that means it's now an opportunity for planning commission for further discussion. You know, if you have further questions of information you'd like to understand, here's a good opportunity. If you have, things you'd like to explore, or comments you'd like to make, or, or a motion you'd like to make, here is your opportunity. Uh, before we do that, I do want to repeat one thing I said a little earlier tonight. This is for everyone. So, as we make our decisions, I want everyone to remember that the planning commission is made up of Edina residents that have been appointed to this commission by the city council, and we, we function as volunteers. Uh, we base our decisions and our recommendations to city council largely upon the city's or, zoning ordinance regulations, the city's comprehensive plan, and small area or district planning documents. Data collected through the process is taken into our, we take into account popularity or unpopularity is, or, or business factors aren't necessarily as related to, does this fit, does this land use fit with our understanding of zoning ordinances, the comp plan and the small area and, you know, the traffic studies? Public feedback, that said, public feedback from Better Together Edina and other feedback we receive, including public testimony, or testimony given at public hearings is also very important. We got, we've gotten a lot of really helpful feedback on this matter. It does factor into the decisions, recommendations, particularly, you know, more data-driven. So then finally, we, we generally, the role of the planning commission is to take final action on single-family residential variances and make recommendations to city council on other matters such as commercial and multifamily residential development proposals. So, now, thank you, everyone. What, what do you, what other commissioners have to say?
I'll, I'll just start off by saying, um, I empathize with the callers who were concerned about traffic on 50th. It is, I imagine, so frustrating to turn in and out of the Sunny Slope neighborhood. Um, and I can appreciate their concern for the potential for more cars. I don't really see evidence that this project will bring many, if any, additional cars in that area. I do think it's something that's really important for the city council to address because it affects not only the people who live right there, but really anybody who travels up and down there. I, I would say, though, that it doesn't affect my view of this project. Um, I think the project is a good one. I think it's a, a good design. It's an appropriate scale. It's appropriate, um, density. I like the 20% affordable. I think that's really important. And I am pleased to, to hear that the developer plans to actually have people use affordable housing instead of just using the cash out. So I applaud that, and I, I hope that you'll stay with that commitment. The public art space is a good, um, thing to have, stormwater, um, solar-ready, gardens on the roof, native planting, um, primarily underground parking, um, and the surface parking being hidden and closer to Highway 100 makes sense. The, um, outdoor courtyard, I think it's in the right place, far enough from residential, and I support this, uh, proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Brubie. Other commissioners? Anyone, anyone with a motion or further questions?
I, I have a comment, sorry.
So, Commissioner Miranda, hello?
Sure, yeah. Actually, I have a, a bunch of comments. I just want to point out that, you know, our use for traffic studies is kind of meaningless in the era of climate change or climate emergency. I mean, we should not be planning to optimize travel in automobiles in the future. Now, that era has kind of passed, and worrying about, you know, how much traffic we're gonna have, or how many lanes we need, or whatever, is just something that we just shouldn't really be concerned with anymore. Um, we need to plan for transit, walking, and biking. As, as we get more dense as a city, when our single-family home areas aren't really changing, but our nodes like this, Grandview, are changing, and, um, we're adding a lot more density, which is a great thing, but you can't add density in cars. It just doesn't work. So, um, we should be in discussions with, you know, Metro Transit. Is the 46th bus gonna be BRT anytime soon? I mean, those are the kinds of questions we should be seeing answers to in, um, you know, any kind of traffic study around here. Um, I agree with a lot of the callers that biking and walking is terrible in this area. It's, it's tragic. Um, and it's not part of what we're deciding today, but, um, if we want to continue to have, if we want to continue to approve projects like this, we have to, as a city, um, recommend to the city council that we think about transportation in a very different way than we're thinking about today. In, in light of that, I wanted to note that, uh, nothing has been done regarding the Grandview Transportation Study. Even the short-term goals, which were five years, and that project is now five years old. So, um, I, I imagine part of that is due to the fact that the, uh, public works site has not been redeveloped yet, and I'm sure, you know, there's TIF money from there, that would be used for this, but, um, you know, we have met zero goals as a city on what was supposed to be done for transportation in, in the Grandview area. Um, in terms of this project, the height density, far, they're all fine. Um, especially in light of the affordable housing that we'll be getting out of it. I really do like the project. I mentioned that last time. Um, I think, I think it's a wonderful, it's mostly a wonderful project. Um, we do need the boulevard between the sidewalk and the street that was mentioned, uh, once before. Um, that's absolutely crucial. I mean, you, you can't have a sidewalk that butts the street directly. Um, it's great they're keeping the space available on the west side for the redesigned on-ramp and off-ramp in the highway. In terms of the restaurant, I agree a lot with what, uh, Commissioner Bartling had said. Um, I suppose it makes sense on the west side for signage, so that motorists on Highway 100 would see it, but, um, it really turns the project into having a split personality. So, the east side of the project is very, you know, urban and walkable and up against the streets. And then it's like the western half of the project faces the highway. It's got part, surface parking, and, you know, a restaurant there. I mean, that restaurant couldn't possibly have outdoor seating on the west side because it'd be way too noisy next to the highway there. So, um, if they wanted any kind of outdoor seating, I would, I would think the corner by City Hall would be nicer. But, you know, I get that that's harder for them because there's a golf course across the street, so there's not much activity going on. And then the city hall has a parking lot there. So, and then it's, you know, highway on-ramps and off-ramps. So, I get that it's kind of hard to do right now, but, um, if that's what we want as a city, be more urban and, and, uh, in our nodes, to be more urban and, uh, have more vitality and interest, then we, we have to have the, the, uh, restaurant up against the street and really on the corner, and not really buried behind the building where there's convenient parking. And then, uh, let's see. So, one of the, uh, someone from the golf course, the, the, uh, uh, club wrote in about, uh, they didn't want something towering over the golf course. They mentioned addressing shadows and whatnot. I mean, I don't think that's something we should even consider. It's not, no, shadows on a golf course is not something that we should be worried about when we're approving housing, especially affordable housing, um, in our, in our node. So, so overall, I think it's a, a great project. I think the, the restaurant really kind of splits it into a dual personality thing, and that kind of ruins part of it for me. But, um, if we do want these, these great spaces, we have to make our, our corners especially very vital. And, uh, and that ties back into the, to the walking and pedestrian. You know, we got to have great sidewalks and, and safe crosswalks, and islands if, if we need them for people to cross. It's just got to be, uh, a really great street. Um, so that could be, I guess, a recommendation to the city council. But, anyway, thank you.
Commissioner Miranda, anyone else? Any other commissioners?
Just a quick thing. This is Commissioner Bartling. The thing I, I think I ha, I mean, like I said, I don't necessarily have anything against this project per se. I'd say even a couple of single-family residences being built on this would, um, strike for me because I disagree, I would disagree with the fact that we shouldn't think about the safety of what 50th is right now. And if we're gonna develop at all, we have to solve the issue of what 50th is right now. It's unsafe. It is not pedestrian-friendly. It has to be resolved. And whether it's part of, whether it's, you know, the developments issue, I don't know, but it's, to me, I don't think it would be, it'd be irresponsible to develop without resolving some of the street safety issues because it is a real concern for many, including myself. I mean, I'm part of that. I use those. My daughter, son, they all bike it. And so I think we have to think about that.
This is David. I'd like to build on what Rachel just said. In addition to the, to the safety issue to the east, there's a great opportunity to the west, which is, you know, from my admittedly naive perspective, probably easier to solve. I mean, it's only a, it's a two, from, from Perkins, it's a two-minute bike ride to Vernon, and a five, six-minute walk. We're not talking about miles and miles of distance between this potential new building and the, the, most of the, the Grandview neighborhood as we've come to know it over the past 10 years. It's just not that far. Um, and I think if we, as a commission, it, could make a very strong statement to the city council, Carrie. I don't know exactly what that would look like. Um, but I think it's, I think it's conceivable for us to say, look, we have, if we're gonna bring 200 new households to this location, we have a responsibility to, to do some of these things. Uh, to have a, to have a safe path to a bus stop, for example, or a safe way to get to Grandview just across the highway where we've invested so much time, uh, and energy. Um, and once you get to Vernon on your bike, you're only 10 minutes from Bretton Park, which will connect you to the, to the boardwalk in Nine Mile Creek. I mean, you could get a pretty decent bike ride from Perkins if you could just get over the highway. So, um, let's look to the west, too, in, in addition to the east, when we're, when we're trying to build capacity for the people who are gonna move into this building. I don't have a lot to say on the building. I think it's a, a good project. Um, it helps Edina solve many of the important problems and opportunities that we face around density. It's an attractive building. Love the affordable housing piece of it. It's a, it's a good project, but it, it creates a mandate or a requirement for us as a city to do a few things to support the people who are gonna live there, I think. Thanks.
Chris Agnew?
I, I won't repeat. I agree with a lot of what the other commissioner said. I'm, I, I do think that this is a good project. Um, but it can't, like, we can't approve things like this in a silo, or we can't just move forward with things like this in a silo because it is going to be a part of our, our community, and it's, it's broader than this one single development site. Um, so I, I do really like it. I think it's a great project. I think it's beautiful. Um, I'm really gonna implore city council to think about traffic and the transportation components, and to Commissioner Miranda's point, right? Like, not just traffic, but what is the pedestrian experience like? How are we building out bike paths? How are we connecting this tissue to the rest of the Grandview area? Um, it needs to be done cohesively and not just site by site. So, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And then Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you for your time. The development team, especially, um, all the residents who called in and fellow commissioners. I mean, it's a late night, right? It's already tomorrow. Depending on when we started, so, um, I just want to kind of focus on the bigger picture, the bigger pictures here, so not get too lost in the weeds with some of the specific details. I think most of those were covered. And oftentimes when we're, um, and this is, you know, more as kind of informing the public who might be tuning in to, um, just to remind you, we have this pyramid of discretion. So when we're up for rezoning, we, as commissioners, based off of our experience, um, which is a compendium of a lot of things, have a lot of discretion here, um, to make a decision. And so when it comes time to these bigger projects and these nodes, we look toward these development frameworks, transportation plans, and the comprehensive plan especially, uh, which is rooted in, you know, the vision that we have for our city. So, I'm gonna tie in kind of some pros and cons that I see with this development, how it ties into the vision as well as kind of the vision for Grandview. So, the pros with this project, we're already covered. The aesthetics, it's, it's well thought out. It's beautiful. It pays homage to a lot of the surrounding infrastructure. It looks really nice. Um, it gives, um, that unique sense of identity that we hope for a change in Grandview. This is bringing us up to the 21st century. It is, uh, future-oriented. It's gonna keep Edina competitive and relevant. As far as the uses go, um, I really support the multiple uses here. Um, if we're getting rid of the restaurant, that really is the only thing that keeps that east side alive, it's good to keep a restaurant there and to supplement that with residences. So that, uh, and, and especially so because that fulfills the vision, right? Something that's inclusive, connected. So, people from all ages, all backgrounds can visit the site, use it to live there, you know, it's affordable as well as patronize those stores. So that's awesome. Um, it's affordable, as we talked about. Um, and probably one of the more important big-picture things is the infrastructure on the specific properties, okay? Um, but how it can play a vital role in the district infrastructure and completely rethinking and reorganizing, that is huge. So, part of our long-term plans for this area is to have that frontage type of access road to get on and off of Highway 100. And that, if you look at this on an aerial map, there is plenty of opportunity, and it doesn't need to be crazy dense or something big, but there is just wasted space for automobiles. And, and just a spaghetti intersection on that east side, that we have the responsibility and, and just a spaghetti intersection on that east side that we have the responsibility, um, as residents who use that all the time and want to bring our city's infrastructure to the future to get rid of that, make it safer. And that involves, you know, less free right turns, loops, all that kind of stuff. So this plays a vital role in providing an opportunity for that because if we build something different, that building's going to sit there for another 50, 100 years and we won't have that chance. So for some of the cons, and I alluded to one of, one of them in the question to Carrie earlier was the density. So I don't think this is the developers' issue, but having this in our comprehensive plan set to a range of 100 dwelling units per acre. I watched that meeting from 2017 with the Trammell Crowe project as well as the councils. Based off of the comments from Better Together, I, it wasn't clear to me or probably anyone else deciding that night that that was going to be a comprehensive plan amendment to the whole district area uses. It seemed pretty specific to that site. Um, so my litmus test is, well, how does it look and feel, right? I feel like if you had this development, you know, where the Avidore is, that makes sense because it's in the middle of the hustle and bustle of the Grandview area. But you move seven stories and that type of density over to this kind of sleepier side now that's not ready for it yet, it's a little out of place. Um, and while it's pushing the, the envelope and bringing us there, I, I don't know if we're quite ready for that, that much mass over there. Um, so is it built to scale? I just, I don't think it quite is. And perhaps if there were more pedestrian bicycle infrastructure interwoven into it or an outdoor gathering space, make it more pedestrian scale, that I could be convinced otherwise. Um, sustainability, I think there's some aspects, but it didn't really start with that. Um, I wouldn't say this is a sustainable development. So it kind of misses the mark there. Um, how it responds to our community of learning, if, if this is pursued as TIF, it totally goes against that because that's money going away from our schools. Um, there's no way this development wouldn't happen but for the use of TIF. So, um, I would not want to see that happen at all. And as for traffic and transportation, I think this is the double-edged sword. I don't think there's a better place for more density in the city than in these neighborhood nodes, especially Grandview where you're right off a freeway. So you add people that can just get on and off, that's a good place for more traffic. Um, but at the same time, we can't just look at just the land use for the site. How does it fit into the bigger picture? And so I think there, we're a little cart before the horse. And I think it's irresponsible and it's unfortunate for the development team, but I just don't think we as a city have our infrastructure in place to best support this currently, um, without damaging surrounding neighbors and the experience. I mean, Commissioner Miranda and other people have talked about it. We've parked on this for years. We need pedestrian and bicycle experience better in the Grandview area and our commercial nodes, but especially here it is so unsafe. I mean, all of your sidewalks are right on the road. That was what was originally proposed here. We need to change that. And I don't think we're ready for it. So I might be in the minority tonight, but it's a balancing act. I think there's some really great things here, but I don't think we're quite ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Anyone else? Everyone, anyone have any follow-up thoughts or any further thoughts? Commissioner Strauss, did you have an opportunity? I can't remember.
No, uh, no, thanks, Chair. Um, I don't really have anything, you know, that hasn't been covered. It's, um, Commissioner, um, Agnew's summary was very good. I, I believe this is the right project in the right place, but this idea, this development in a silo, I mean, we do, we do need to address, you know, the transportation, the traffic issues. That's got to be part of the overall, um, consideration. But, um, I, I like Jimmy's reasoning, though I kind of tilt saying I do think it's worth, uh, going forward. But those issues that the, uh, people called in, you know, are, are very, very important and critical that this all gets addressed.
Thank you, Commissioner Strauss. Anyone else, anything further? Commissioner Berube, did you have something else?
Well, I would, I would like to make a motion, but I want to include in the motion something that gives, um, the city council indication of the seriousness that we're taking, you know, the, this transportation issue. And, and I, when I say transportation, I don't mean just cars, but the pedestrian and bicycle experience as well. And so I'm thinking about how to word that.
I think, I'd be glad to assist a little bit.
Because what I'd like to say, I'd like to say I moved approval.
If I, could I, would you be okay, before you do that, sorry?
Yeah.
Can I just give my feedback before we figure out?
Sure, yeah.
The wording on that? I mean, uh, so maybe this is helpful, maybe it isn't, maybe it's just me talking. This is a really nice project. Um, I don't usually say that. This is a really nice project. It's a good location for height and density. Um, developer did a really nice job at taking the feedback we got, we gave in the sketch plan process and incorporating it. And, um, no, I'm a little, you know, the affordable housing and it's going to be a real benefit to the city. Um, I think the restaurant would be a benefit to the city if it were placed at the front corner. As Commissioner Bartling initiated, I, I actually think putting it in the back there is, is damaging to the quality of this project. I, I think it just, uh, it just enhances the car-centric nature because now you're going to people driving around to go to the back of the project and driving back in front of the project. So I would actually prefer, if you're going to put the restaurant there, I would instead say, let's not make this a mixed-use project. Let's just put it, make it all housing. Um, I would prefer that because, um, I, I, now, that said, those are the positives and those are things specific to this project. Um, now I'm going to give a little speech. Um, there's only one reason this, this decision is hard, and I'm going to be fairly blunt here. That's just, that's because of the city's lack of proactivity regarding these known issues. And you can word this however you want about how important we feel about it, but the world is changing at a faster pace and we aren't. And we did the Grandview study five, six, seven years ago and it was, everything's known and there's no proactivity to implement any of that. We did the 44th and France parking ramp structure a few years ago. There's been no proactivity to deal with that, not even setting up a, setting up a call was like moving heaven and earth to have the city call landowners. Um, traffic was an issue came up in the 50th and France small area plan a few years ago. I can't even get an idea of when the traffic study that was called for is going to be done, which I would think would be an easy, you know, it was called for, everyone agreed to it. Um, the, the, the need, the living streets policy was created before I came on the planning commission seven years ago, you know, and I'm a biker. I mean, I've been bike commuting for, since elementary school. You know, I remember having a joke with people that got, you know, some, they were trying to talk about how great their, you know, they were so proud of their Prius and how, you know, they're economically sensitive and I, and what do you do? How do you get to work? I said, I ride my bike. I mean, you know, and that, that, this was years ago. I mean, I didn't do it every day and I did it less than, much less in the winter, but, you know, I've been bike commuting and the bike infrastructure, and I, I guess told many of you, I, I've done, I did a triathlon in the Netherlands in 2017 where it was explicitly on bike lanes with cars just speeding by it. It was safe as could be. It was wonderful. And, and, and we've had these plans and they're just not happening. And the point, I, I, I'm not raising this just to be negative, I'm just to say, the only reason this project has a chance of not being approved is because of this lack of proactivity. And, you know, we want these things, this is a wonderful project, but I just don't think that, you know, we only talk about it when people call in and they're angry saying, we got to do something about it. And then it just goes in the memory hole. And if this project gets approved, I actually think this might be the last one until this, until there's a real plan to address this infrastructure. And I hate to say that because I really like this project. We really need all these other projects. But, um, change is hard and change has to be done, but you know, uh, General Eric Shinseki was, Shinseki was the first Asian American to become a four-star general in the U.S. Armed Forces. And he said, if you think change is painful, just wait until you experience irrelev, irrelevance. And, you know, I, we're, I'm starting to feel like we're on that, we're right on the cutting, we're right on the edge of that. And so if we don't get, the world is changing really fast and what's, the needs for the, the needs for the world are changing faster than ever. And these ideas that you can create, these plans in 2012, 2016, and, and then 2021, you're looking at a project that everybody likes. I think everybody likes the project for the most part, but we're like, well, gee, I don't know, you know? It really creates all these impacts in the community that we've known about for a long time. I, 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 I think that's a real concern and you can word that, Sheila, however you want, but I don't, you know, it's like, it's like Senator Collins. I think he's learned his lesson, you know? I mean, I mean, uh, it, it, either we're going to deal with these things or we aren't. But if we aren't, I think it needs to be understood that this project might not get approved or the next good project might not get approved and we're going to feel bad because the own, the, maybe not the only, but like 90% of the reason why they're not getting approved, because we didn't do these proactive things on things we said we knew we needed and we wanted. And if we really want to get these kind of projects, it, it, we got to act on them. That's all I'm going to say. And, um, the developer, I'm sorry, you got to sit through this. This is an awesome project. You did an awesome job. And I think the project gave a real benefit to the city. I, you know, there's never anything that's perfect and doesn't have negative impact on people and, you know, we, 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 we aren't in a bubble, you know, although the, you know, but I'm going to support this project, but I don't think there's any way we can word this need to look at these issues, other than just acknowledging that if we don't, this project might not get approved and the next project might, the next awesome project might not get approved. And I think we just need to acknowledge that. So, speech over. Thank you.
Commissioner Miranda.
Yeah, if I could just, uh, assist Commissioner Berube, uh, with her, uh, request for, um, the recommendations of the city council, the, the one nice thing about this project, well, one nice thing about this project in terms of transportation is that we've already done a transportation plan for the Grandview area. In fact, it's the only node, as far as I know, that has a transportation plan. So we, you know, and it, it has beaut, I mean, I was, I'm an author of it. I mean, or I approved it, you know, when I was on the transportation commission. And it has beautiful bike lanes and it has reduced car lanes and it's got sidewalks and trees and it's wonderful. So, I mean, it could be as simple as recommending to the city council, but, but nothing has been done so far, right? So recommending to the city council that they accelerate the short-term and medium-term goals in the Grandview transportation plan. And I think that would go a long way. I bet you keep it pretty simple.
I, I like that.
One thing to that, though, is a suggestion, just thinking, thank you, Lou. Plan's got to have dates and, and, and meaningful things. Can't just be a statement of goals and purpose because a, a plan without, we're going to do this on this date and these are the tangible actions that are going to occur, isn't really a plan. It's just a, it's just a wish. That'd just be my recommendation.
City Planner Teague, did you have, did you have something that you were thinking?
Uh, yeah, so I, I would throw this out and it goes a little bit even beyond what you're discussing here. So in terms of the affordable housing, um, the applicant had indicated they still desire to put the units within the project, but they might go to the 10% at 50%. So condition nine would be the project must conform to the city's affordable housing policy by including the units within the project. I'd recommend that changed and then they have the option per the policy. Uh, condition number 13 is a cut and paste typo. We can delete that one. It's from another project. And I would, uh, suggest you could add that the council fund improvements per the bike and ped plan. Those were the improvements that Mr. Terhar had referenced to get those improvements done in the immediate areas. That was just a thought. And, um, I, although I like Commissioner Miranda's suggestion as well. Um, and then there was talk about at the, at the intersection of Wilson and Eden about making some crossing improvements to that intersection. Uh, you could add a condition, um, to address that issue as well. So those were the general thoughts that I was thinking.
I, I'd like to move approval of the request, um, subject to the findings and conditions to rezone to PUD, subject also to, um, number nine, conforming the affordable housing. Um, Kira, you said 10%, but we talked about 20%.
Yeah, so their application, that was what they indicated in their, you know, in their original submittals, they had indicated as part of their presentation this evening that they might go to the other op, so that there's two options for providing the units. It's 20% of the units at 60% AMI or 10% of the units at 50% AMI. So they indicated they might go to that 10% option rather than the 20%. I think that the key for the condition is they need to conform to the policy and that the units would be within the project.
Within the project as opposed to cashing out?
Correct.
Yes, okay. All right. Um, conforming the affordable housing within the project, as you stated, deleting number 13. For number 14, adding improvements to the car and bike plan as stated in the transportation study. 15, crossing improvement for Wilson and Eden. And then I think we should add something for, um, putting urgency behind the Grandview transportation study. Um, and not having in front of me, I, you know, you can't quantify that or put dates on, so I don't know what kind of verbiage to use, but, um, incorporating this into the whole Grandview.
I think Commissioner Miranda's suggestion is a good one. You know, within the plan, there are near-term and short-term goals. It's accelerating those short-term.
So what does accelerating mean?
Well, that the council, they need to fund some of those improvements.
Okay, okay. We'll put accelerating and if we don't see improvements, next time we're going to put dates.
I think it almost needs to be clarified to me and that they need to be completed before the move-in date for the first resident. That's plenty of time.
So is that, that's like a year and a half?
I think it was 18 months from November of 2021.
Okay, so two years.
Okay. There you go. You got my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Berube. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, who is that?
That was David Alkire.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Alkire. Commissioner Berube has made a motion. Commissioner Alkire has seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Alkire. Commissioner Barubi has made a motion. Commissioner Alkire has seconded. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Olson, so could you do a roll vote? And I is approval of this, you know, of the plan with the conditions that, uh, drafted by Commissioner Barubi and attached to the, uh, staff memo.
Well, could, um, Commissioner Barubi, will you please clearly state the motion one more time? There was a lot of adds and things. If you could do that, please.
Sure. Yes. Um, there were a lot of stops and starts. So I move approval of the request to rezone to PUD subject to the findings and conditions listed. And taking into account that number nine is conforming to the affordable housing within the project. Number 13, we're deleting. Number 14, we're adding improvements to the car and bike plan as stated in the transportation study for this project. Number 15, we're creating improved crossing at the intersection of Wilson and Eden Avenue. And then a new number 16, we are accelerating, um, the Grand View transportation initiatives to be completed before the first occupants move into the building, which would be anticipated two years.
And I would actually like to add that it must remain a mixed use. But I don't know what other people's thoughts are on that. Not that there was that it wouldn't, but I think that that should be stipulated. Cause again, that's part of the grand, uh, comprehensive plan, but I don't know if it's important or not.
And actually, Carrie, I, I am thinking about this now and thinking, sorry, I mean, it's late. This sounds a little spacey, but um, the developer can control and fund much of this? We're not expecting the developer to control and fund the transportation study or the transportation improvements around Grand View. So is it fair to include that? Because that's a city council issue. That's not a developer issue.
Yeah, that could be a, cause the way it was stated, there's a lot of short-term goals in that plan to achieve all of them in two years. I, I don't see that that's possible. So are we gonna not let them move in?
And, and that's really, I mean, the city council needs to do that. This is, we're not gonna settle the developer with working on the transportation for the Grand View area.
Cause that's the whole district. Is it more important to have the council consider funding those improvements per the traffic study where he was referring to the improvements per the bike and pedestrian plan?
I think for, for the scope of what we're doing, we work on, on the improvements that were suggested from the traffic study for this project. Because that will be biking and transportation in the area of this project. And then when we have projects in the Grand View area, we focus on the rest of the Grand View transportation.
I think we could also still add, depending on how we wanna do it, right? Like imploring the city council to accelerate those plans, but not necessarily tying it to the timeline.
That makes any sense.
You want me to say it again? Okay, I'm gonna move approval to the rezone, rezone to PUD subject to the findings and conditions listed in the staff memo. With amendment number nine is, um, the affordable housing, conforming to the affordable housing within the project. Number 13, we're deleted. Number 14, we're, um, adding improvements to the car and bike plan as stated in the transportation study for this project. Number 15 is improving the crossing at Wilson and Eden Avenue. And then finally with a strong message to the city council that they need to work on uh, increasing the deadline, improving, accelerating the deadline for completing the projects and the Grand View transportation study.
One question. Uh, so the Grand View transportation study was completed in August 2016. Which of the items that are in that are we really asking to have accelerated to be completed within two years from now?
I'm gonna turn to my Grand View transportation expert. That would be Mr. Miranda.
Yeah, so they had, uh, short-term, medium-term and long-term goals, or near-term, medium-term, long-term goals. Um, but even the near-term, I mean, the near-term was, I think, two to five years. Medium-term was five, 10, and long-term was 10, 25, I believe. Um, so, yeah, even accomplishing all, and you know, range from, uh, the near-term ones are actually pretty relatively simple and none of them have been done. So the free right, say going from southbound 100 onto Vernon, um, getting rid of that so that people had to just go to Vernon straight to then make a right-hand turn. Um, but there was probably a half dozen items that were in each of those categories. I don't have the document in front of me right now. Um, well, that's why I said accelerate, cause it's, you know, unless you wanna get into the nitty-gritty details tonight of what needs to be done. Um, which I don't think we wanna do.
Well, they're putting in the, the roundabout at, um, Arcadia. Right? I mean, that's, that's already given.
They are. And you recall that there were improvements to the intersection, uh, where the, the new coffee shop went in. I know that's a sore subject with the planning commission, but, um, those improvements were made as well.
Okay, my motion stands.
Commissioner Alkire, do you still second that? You good with that?
Yes, second.
Then Ms. Olson, do you have what you need or do you, and I know you were looking for something that like be completed in under 60 seconds. You, do you have, you know, you have something succinct. Do you have?
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you do a roll vote, please, to approve? Unless there's any further discussion? Thank you, everyone. Could, Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote for approval? I means approving the motion as proposed by Commissioner Barubi.
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss.
Hi.
Commissioner Barubi.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling.
Aye, sorry.
Commissioner Alkire.
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett.
Nay.
Chair and Emrah.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Com- uh, congratulations to Mr. Walton and your team. Um, Carrie, what's next on the timeline for this matter?
This will go to the city council on May 18th.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for hanging in with us tonight. Thank you, the public that called in. Thank you, developer, and good luck with your next meeting. Um, our next matter was the public hearing for the, um, to go with the traffic, I mean, the, yeah, the parking ordinance changes, uh.
I moved to push that to the next planning commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Great. Uh, Ms. Olson, could you do a roll vote on that?
Thank you. Commissioner Strauss.
Hi.
Commissioner Bennett.
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling.
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire.
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew.
Nay.
Chair and Emrah.
Aye.
So, hey, well, well, I apologize to all residents that were hoping to give comment, feedback to that. I know there were many. Um, and hopefully we can get that on. If, I, when I was little, I watched the Tonight Show and Johnny would always apologize to some author who got bumped at 11:50 and hopefully we we'll bring you back on Tuesday. Um, hopefully we have a great parking requirement program for our residents next, in two weeks. Um, next on our agenda is reports and recommendations. We had the attendance log. Commissioner Strauss, did you have a, oh, no, you're, okay, um, attendance log, everyone had a chance to look at it. Is there anything that we should be discussing regarding the attendance log?
It's more just an informational item, so commissioners know where they're at.
Thank you. If we can discuss it in extent. Chair and member comments. Do any members have a comment? Um, I had several. I'm only gonna say, say one thing. Um, also, I think tonight's hearing showed the weakness in our sketch plan review process where we're not getting public comments. And I, I hopefully we'll, we'll look at the sketch plan review process as part of our next year's work plan. Um, staff comments?
Nothing for me this evening.
Adjournment? Anyone make a motion to adjourn at 12:45? Commissioner Strauss?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Everyone's seconds. Uh, Commissioner Olson, I think Commissioner Bartling was ahead of the wire on that one. Uh, Commissioner Olson, can you roll vote for adjournment, please?
Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Commissioner Bartling.
Aye.
Commissioner Alkire.
Aye.
Commissioner Agnew.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennett.
What if I say nae? I'm kidding. Aye.
Chair and Emrah.
Aye. And thank you, everyone, for very good discussions with hard matters tonight. Thank you very much and for your late night.